... First on the agenda, we have approval of the agenda. I approve that agenda be approved. Here we have a motion by Commissioner's Post-Tempera, seconded by Commissioner Laytoner. All over favor, I approve. Next on the agenda, we have an announcement of due date. There are no one else in this time. Okay, this is public hearing. It's now open and we give everyone a chance to speak on the subject at hand. Please limit your conference to five minutes or less. And please don't go obligated to use the whole entire five minutes if you don't have to. And I ask that you don't just repeat the claim over and over and think what someone else has said. You just want to be on record and just say, "I agree with what the other person said." But, you know, keep it straight to a point on the subject. I ask that you turn all your electronics off and refrain from any unnecessary talking in my reading session. First on the agenda, D.P. twelve forty-seven, S.P. twelve ninety-three, Tim Boynton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is D.P. twelve forty-seven, S.P. twelve ninety-three, subject of use and site plan review request of San Frisell, Tim Donut U.S. Limited. To construct a one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three row square foot Tim Hortons restaurant with drive-through, property located at one ninety-seven zero one West Twelve Mile Road, on the south side of West Twelve Mile Road to Evergreen and Southfield, Plaza, and Plaza. With regard to this particular item, legal notice advertising is mandatory for this hearing on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, published in the Southfield One Sixty newspaper on November eleventh, two thousand and twelve. Legal notice is also sent by a first-class mail, all proper owners within three hundred and fifty feet of such property, the Kramer Village Homewards Association numbers one, three, four, and five, Pear Fidge Trail Association, Kingsley and Jake Homewards Association, Wilder and Homewards Association, the Wilder and McCall's Porch Association, Kingswood Pink Association, the South Place Association, the Villa Point Association, and all public facilities. Do you have a show for your presentation for this time?
D.P. twelve forty-seven, S.P. twelve ninety-three, is a special use in site plan or review request of San Frisell, of Tim Donut U.S. Limited Incorporated. Construct a new Tim Hortons restaurant, property located at one ninety-seven zero one, West Twelve Mile Road, on the south side of Twelve Mile Road, east of Evergreen Road, in section fourteen of the base. The subject property as well as the property to the west, the V two land business. The property to the north across Twelve Mile Road is owned R three single-family residential. The property to the south is owned R two single-family residential. And the property to the west is owned R animal single-family low-rise. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with a vacant restaurant. The property to the north across Twelve Mile Road is developed with single-family homes, twenty-nine Hemington Street. The property to the west is developed with the Evergreen Plaza Shopping Center. And the property to the east is developed with a twelve-pipe condominium. The proposed site contains one point four nine acres of land with one hundred and thirty-six feet of range along Twelve Mile Road in a depth of four hundred and seventy-nine point zero feet deep. The special use request is to allow the construction of a free gaming restaurant within the V two planned business district. The submitted site plan requests the construction of a new one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three row square foot Tim Hortons restaurant with drive-through and associated parking. The parking required for the development is seventeen spaces with one hundred provided on-site. Landscape provided conforms to ordinance requirements and the elevation shows an extra brick easier than glass. Issues considered by the planning department are in the review of this special use and site plan work. Standards and conditions of the special use requirements of the V two planned business district regarding the animal restaurant. The petition is to implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Proposeable is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Command to promote original mixed use for the particles.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to this particular item, planning department recommends favorable consideration of special use in site plan review request of San Frisell, Tim Donut U.S. Limited Incorporated. Construct a one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three row square foot Tim Hortons restaurant with drive-through. Site plan dated November eighth, two thousand and twelve, received by the planning department on November ninth, two thousand and twelve. Following commission. Site plan approval including many, the site plan is not constitute landscape plan approval. Final detailed landscape plan must be submitted to the planning department and be approved prior to issuance of any building permit. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent stolen or pirated and rejected property. Owner will conform with zoning ordinance requirement, not to exceed volume of sound of fifty decibels at the property line, that the volume of sound shall not be audible for a distance in excess of one hundred feet from the sound amplifying equipment. Petitioners provide cross-access agreement, which enjoins properties to the west to provide for access across property. Petitioners provide sprinkler system for all landscape areas in the first transection of land area. Petitioners execute essential maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas worked on site in the right of way, which includes maintenance for stormwater retention system. Petitioners will implement recommended areas by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Building is to be constructed in accordance with the submitted elevations attached to site plan. Approval of the site plan, narrow building elevation represented herein, not constitute nor guarantee approval signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained by the building from the building partner or any who opposed sign. Site racks shall be installed in accordance with Article Four, Section five point two, nineteen, paragraph twelve. These recommendations are made for the reasons as noted in this report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This time I'd like to ask the petitioners to step forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. We need the three of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. This is a very exciting project for a big board to rebuild in the property. I think it's going to be a great location for Tim Hortons and also the community. This is one of our new cafe and day shop restaurants. The interior of the building really gets back to our roots at a coffee shop. We have soft seating, a fireplace, flat screen TV, and free body by for our guests. We've reviewed the comments that were from staff report and we're holding returns with those requirements. I'd be happy to ask any questions you have.
Okay. At this time, I'm moving to the public. If anyone have any questions concerning about Tim Boynton Cafe, this is raise your hand. Please state your name and address for the record. Excuse me, there was also a piece of paper right in front of you. Before you finish, just jot your name and address down.
I'm just wondering if we need another fast food restaurant in Southfield. I mean, that's what it's starting to look like. It's starting to look like the way I was born or around here in Atlanta. All we have is now, we don't have restaurants, we have fast food restaurants. And the population as a whole has health issues because of the number of fast foods, fast food. I know it's healthy not to put in the home food, but it is for me, for many studies next door to I eat. Who we know children do not eat well anyway. So, um, we've got something there, we've got little teams on the hand. We've got, you know, another little Indian store there now, a Tim Hortons, I mean, still to see.
Okay. Just state your name and address for the record. No, let's just be on Walmart, so.
Okay, thank you. My name is Diane Anderson. I'm a later girl. I will give you all directly my address, but I'm involved with Supreme Court action and I hope to take your address right now before the State of Michigan, so. My concern is, we were back before this council a while ago about the Golden Corral development on Southfield Road. There are thirty restaurants, eating establishments between eleven mile road and later, thirteen mile road down there where Southfield comes to an end. Golden Corral is going to suck the lifeblood out of all of them, including people that spend this too, for fifty-eight years. I share with you that you're both concerned. I'm concerned about the traffic issues in that area. I don't mean anything disrespect to the high school kids, but to kind of make that intersection carry when you drive by them. I say that some people have been in later since nineteen fifty-one. And I also have concerns about that intersection. There are people pulling out to get to the center lane, from the Kroger store, that sort of thing. And I really am concerned if there's no meshing press that we need on when the businesses are strong, particularly when they have residential areas. One of the concerns about Golden Corral is that we're starting to touch residential areas. So, I think this council really needs to start thinking. I understand that we're hemorrhaging because of the economic decline and so forth. I know housing values are worth a fraction once they were. Our library is now closed four hours a day, Monday through Thursday, and closed Friday. So I understand your concerns, I know where you're coming from, you need revenue, but I do feel you're reverting to cost approach.
Thank you. Okay, any available here?
Hi, my name is Stephanie E. Wish, and I live in Southfield. And I plan to come and speak with on Walmart issue too, but this is very important also. I concur with the other two residents coming in. I happen to have two children that went to Southfield later that don't like bats out of nowhere, trying to avoid eating lunch at school. And he's giving sometimes to go to the other restaurants, the fast food restaurants around his school. My children have graduated, but I still see that as a problem. Not only do I see it as a problem for Southfield later, I have a cousin who recently moved to the tip of Southfield, Beverly Hills. My young cousin, who is sixteen, goes to Grove, and they also appear out of Grove. That would be very close, so there's another high school impact and a magnet attraction to that restaurant. I agree with the woman that spoke before me, looking at the traffic patterns of coming in and out of the Kroger parking lot. We could already use a traffic light just to get out of the parking lot. So adding another turnaround or ride through, I just see major traffic impact that are going to be detrimental. The first woman that spoke, it is not to be fluffed off in terms of the dietary trends that are coming forward for our kids. For whatever reason, they push away from the school lunches. And at this particular time, some of the juniors and seniors aren't able to go on campus to eat. If you have been a parent of a high school or at Southfield later, good school, but the driving impact of coming out for lunchtime is very, very hazardous. And even as a watchful parent, I still, although my children go to both the high school, I still watch other children carrying out of there, and I'm sure that would be a hazard, a potential hazard. So both of the women have points in terms of we need to have another restaurant, but I think that the other impact of the traffic situation has not been viewed correctly. So this one would be more impactful in a negative way. And as I said, I just have a big concern about the children in high school who drive in at lunchtime. That will be a huge magnet order.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Raise your hand for the five.
Henry Lambert, The Place to Village. Tim Hortons sells bagels fifty feet away, a couple storefronts away is already a bagel store. You're going to put a new store in and you're going to put a new one in the community a long time right out of business because they're important, they're going to steal what you can do. So, you pay one store for another, you've done anything positive for the community.
Thank you.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My cell phone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. And I am completely supportive for Southfield. We are only twenty-six point six square miles. We are, like Mr. Anderson said, and the English says, and the people that have spoke, we are allowing too many restaurants to come. Now, we're not hard up for restaurants, because there are restaurants already in Southfield and in the surrounding borders. We have got to stand up a little bit and not just allow businesses to come to Southfield because they want to come or open up in an area where they don't fit. We don't need another Tim Hortons. We got one at Evergreen already. And that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Harman Tucker. I live at one nine one one, D.C., Southfield, Michigan, in terms of the homeowners association. We have, forever, twenty-seven years I lived there, in my house, we have had problems with school kids and other people going to the fast food restaurant. Now, with the economy, I'm just hurt. So, the bottom things are trash, and that's true. It's a big concern because the homeowners association takes care of the trash along, along, along the highway. And part of our cost of maintaining that is the trash picked up from the high school kids and from other traffic that's throwing their garbage out through. That's where my main concern is having another restaurant right there by high school. Because I'm tired of picking up other people's trash.
Uh, please, I ask that you please, please clap me. Someone, please state your name and address for the record.
San Frisell, Texas. Do you want the address?
Yes.
One nine eight two zero West Twelve Mile Road. Another lady, she documented that, didn't she, telling me how was Tim Hortons would be operating? Because it's many things for us to know, whether it's a sixty-hour operation or a twenty-four-hour operation. But you shed some money on that.
Petitioner? If I can say question point?
Through the chair, twenty-four hours operation.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mike. My name is Sheldon McQuarrie. I live in two 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 here on One Fifth Avenue. But I know this family that comes with this new business, quite a lot of things, and now this is a special meeting that gives people today, that pays for the people of Southfield. Every time you let some big company get today, you need to see coffee going today.
Name and address, is it home or is it name and address?
Name and address. Hi, Willie Barris, Seventeen five five zero Everett Avenue. By the way, there was mention of existing Tim Hortons. There's also a Tim Hortons on Green Hill between Twelve Mile and Everett Street. So, there are plenty of Tim Hortons within a mile or two of each other. One of the concerns that I have is that I know that as a position, you guys are going to make the decision to make a recommendation to the city council. And I see the crowd here, and we're all here expressing our voice. But I also want to say to this crowd, if the commission determines that they're going to move forward, it is important that all of you show up like today at the city council meeting where the final decision will be made. The final decision will be made on all of these items on the agenda at the city council, because the commission will normally recommend a go-forward. I don't know the dates. Perhaps the commission can tell you when the dates are for each one of these proposed items. Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other.
Through the chair, I just want to remind the audience to make the comments to the decision, please.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Shabos, and I live in one nine. Some of the three families here, they're diagnosed with dry, and Kramer Village, and Southfield Home Properties, and Kingswood Place, where, you know, I have my daughters living here. And I'm concerned about this because, you know, the proposal is to have both properties. And I'm concerned about the safety and the transit from the high school. And the transit, then over the transit at Twelve Mile, you know, and the Green Hill, I think, for good. And I concur with previous statements, so with the, you know, two Tim Hortons with the, you know, Green Hill, Twelve Mile, and the other, Evergreen, Ten Mile. If there's enough Tim Hortons and enough vehicles around to run all that in a twenty-four hour proposed restaurant, there's a big concern because of the safety issues. And so, just for your record and the public to know.
Okay, seeing the weather, I'm going to close off the public portion and return to the committee commissioners. We'll have our discussions. I'd like to ask the petitioners to step back to the microphone and help answer that question. The commissioners have any portion concerns? Mr. Bill.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I noticed that it shows that there are recommended places that are required. Some spaces provided, fairly, some spaces provided parking spaces.
The project itself is a ground lease of a portion of that larger parcel. And as part of our development, I believe we'll actually have thirty-two parking spaces. The remainder of the property is going to remain in parking lot at this time, which equals the one hundred parking spaces being fixed. So, it's our thirty-two parking spaces plus those that will be remaining will equal to one hundred parking spaces.
What you meant by that is implied that the remainder of that parking could become something else. You said it's going to remain parking for the time being.
The property owner may have some plans in the future to redevelop that property or not. I'm not predicting that.
That's kind of what I'm getting at. We aren't either. And so, thirty-two spaces is what you actually are providing, correct?
Correct.
And that's all that, so this, at the very least, this lead, is it not, to say that there's a hundred spaces provided?
Well, no, we, as part of our development, it shows that there are thirty-two spaces provided. The one hundred, the one hundred spaces is, again, the residual leftover that exists today. We did, I did discuss this with Mr. Spacen, and I think that we understand that it's thirty-two spaces with the Tim Hortons and the surplus of the one hundred that comes from the existing. They would be at this time available for Tim Hortons customers, but they are not necessary for our operation.
Because that's one of the concerns that I have about this site plan is the fact that of the residual piece of property that is going to be somewhat isolated or to be able to be used for anything. And if it doesn't fit with anything that I know about land use to do it that way, that's one of my major concerns. Another main concern I have is the entrance, particularly with the relocation of the entrance being right adjacent to the, to one of the other entrances to that shopping center. The one there behind the strip center, currently, is going to be right adjacent to it, which, irreverible to what the county may have said, or even our traffic engineer, I think that is a dangerous situation. Everything that I've been taught for the last twenty-five years here in Southfield, having curbs attached to each other like that are not safe. You're actually creating that situation with this proposed site plan. It seems like to me that this would be a perfect place to make a common entrance and then use something similar to what's being proposed on Twelve Mile Road for the new Taco Bell that's going in the other side of Golden Corral. Have a common entrance and then an old, an old Twelve Mile connecting street to connect the properties. But that's not what, that's just the opposite of what's being proposed here. And given that, I will not be able to support it.
Through the chair, Mr. Bellis, if I could point out to you, there is a full width acceleration lane that runs the entire length of our property as well as, I believe, approximately a hundred feet onto the Western and Tony property. I think that will alleviate any concerns regarding the proximity of those drive-throughs.
Why this particular location for the restaurant, versus other open land states, possibly in Southfield or outside of Southfield? Why the house uptown restaurant is built at this particular location?
Well, I can't, I can't comment entirely on the location itself. Our marketing folks handle most of that. I can tell you that Southfield is a very vibrant community and it's underserved, in our opinion, from the Tim Hortons. This is a great location for us to, to our business.
I think too, if I want to expand, you know, Tim Hortons, this one being a cafe style different from the others.
Yeah, while the menu items are not going to differ from the old Tim Hortons, quote-unquote old Tim Hortons that you've seen.
Uh, we have seen the property that's anywhere that's not bringing any revenue into the city, is, is not a nice look, because it's boarded up. But looking at this property and having someone in my opinion to come in and want to do something to that property that at one time was a, a bar and restaurant, I think that's why, um, this shows something, that, uh, we do need revenue in the city, and we're just not, uh, rather sample stuff, I'm gonna make that clear. This commission just doesn't rather sample any proposed that comes through here. Uh, what we try to do is look at what a project is, and try to evaluate if that project is an asset to the citizens, all of the citizens, as well as to the city in choice. Having, uh, I guess, a competitive business with the legal place on the corner which I visit, and also some other places, it's, it's competitive business. Uh, I understand that we talked about, uh, the trash, we talked about the kids, uh, this to me is an individual thing that we need to hold if this proposal goes through. And as, uh, one of the presidents said, all we do is recommend to the city council, tell information on why we think we vote against it or for it. So saying that, I say that I will be in favor of this for the reason that it will bring jobs into the city, it will bring added revenue into the city, and as far as our kids eating and doing stuff, we've controlled that. So, uh, hopefully, hopefully, if this is approved, hopefully that they can be a good neighbor and be an asset and not a detriment, and that building will be sealed and we will have revenue. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, what we're trying to do in Southfield builds a walkable community. And I think adding cafes, stores to the neighborhoods is, is taking us down that road for walkable communities. Uh, even though we have other ten mortons, it really is good to have one in your neighborhood. I think it will be an asset to the city of Southfield, if this property, you know, many things, um, you know, it gives people options, if you wanna go, they can, if they don't wanna go, they don't have to. But it does bring another option to the residents of the city of Southfield, and so walkable sites. Uh, any other commissioners who come in, we prepare to vote. We have a motion.
Good job. If I can throw GP one twenty-four seven dash SP one two nine, please.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cole Pepper, supported by Commissioner Dillard. All of them favors?
Aye.
All of those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we, I'd like to point out that this was a, a critical of a recommendation.
Yes, but, to the chair, I think I said I approved GP one two four seven SP, that's what they, that's written, who's written that, who approved that, so I approved it.
I didn't hear the word recommendation, I'm not sure you mentioned that. Okay, we have five, four, one against, passed as a state. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, the gentleman we have, three ninety-eight, VR thirteen fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, with regards to B three ninety-eight, VR thirteen fifteen, the street vacation request and rezoning request of Jerry Yono, Southfield Funeral Homes to vacate one hundred and eighty-nine point nine eight feet of sixty foot of right of way, two point, point two six acres of Kesh Avenue, east of Guy Street, abutting Sidwell Parcels two four one one, four seven nine, zero twenty-five, dash zero twenty-six, dash zero six five, and dash zero six nine, and to rezone, rezonate, vacate at Kesh Avenue, R two single family residential, and R eight single family residential land, key vehicular parking. With regards to the specific items, legal notice advertising matters for public hearing on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve, were published in the South Oakland Central newspaper on November eleventh, two thousand twelve. Legal notice was also sent by First Class Mail, Law Property Org, and seven hundred of the subject property, Bedford Woods Association, Bonny Acres Neighborhood Association, Cambridge Village Association, Canterbury Gardens Association, Cranbrook Village Association number one, three, four, and five, Cranbrook Village number six, Cranbrook Village number seven, Cranbrook Village number ten, Green Trees North Civic Association, Heritage Trail, Oakland Hills, Park at Oakland Hills, Pinewood Manor Association, Spring Haven Point, Kangalwood Association, Wild Turn, McDonald Court, Belmoral Club, Haywood Place, Fall Time, Adult Home Association, Community Leadership, and all public utilities. Just have a short video presentation before you sign.
B three ninety-eight, VR thirteen fifteen, and the vacation and rezoning request by Jerry Yono, owner, to vacate a portion of Kesh Avenue, and to rezone property from R eight single family residential to key vehicular parking, to construct a new parking lot for the Southfield Funeral Home. The property is located at one eight three three eight West Twelve Mile Road, on the northeast corner of Guy Street and Twelve Mile Road in section eleven of the city. The subject properties are vacated street right of way and property within the R eight single family residential and R two single family residential zoning district. The properties to the north and west across Guy Street are zoned R eight single family residential. The property to the south is zoned P vehicular parking. The property to the east is zoned R two single family residential, pending approval of a rezoning request to B three general business. With regards to existing land uses, the subject properties are developed with a vacated Kesh Avenue, a house fronting on Kesh Avenue, and vacant properties. The properties to the north and west across Guy Street are developed with a single family home from Jean Guy Street and Kesh Avenue. The properties to the south is developed with a parking lot for the Southfield Funeral Home. The property to the east is developed with a vacant St. Beast Church, pending approval of a rezoning request and site plan for a proposed Walmart Supercenter. The total acreage of the property proposed for rezoning to P vehicular parking is point seven eight acres of land. The rezoning will allow for the redevelopment of the land for additional parking for the Southfield Funeral Home. There is one hundred and eighty feet of frontage along Guy Street and a depth of one hundred and ninety feet. The vacation request is for a sixty foot by one hundred and eighty-nine point nine eight foot, point two acres of Kesh Avenue, which is a sixty foot by public right of ways located in the north of the existing funeral home property. Currently, this section of Kesh Avenue right of way contains a two-lane paved road that does answer the St. Beast Church property to the east, and provides access to an existing home fronting on Kesh Avenue. The balance of the right of way contains a twelve-inch storm sewer line, six-inch water line, and two-inch gas line. Issues considered by the planning department during review of the vacation and rezoning were, the proposed rezoning will be in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan that indicates local mixed use and moderate density of single family residential for this parcel. The proposed rezoning to P vehicular parking will allow the conditioner to redevelop the property with a new parking lot to suit the needs of the Southfield Funeral Home. The proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects upon any of the adjoining zonings or land uses. The right of way vacation will provide additional land in order for the owner of the Southfield Funeral Home to construct additional parking. The city will retain easements for access to underground utilities.
Through the chair, I'd like to just, um, go over some brief comments before we have the applicant come up. Okay. And, uh, I wanna remind the public that this public hearing is specifically on the Southfield Funeral Homes request to rezone from R eight single family residential and public right of way to P vehicular parking. And on the, uh, map behind the commission, I wanna point out that this is the existing location of the Southfield Funeral Home, which is designated O S. To the north, northern portion of the parking lot is designated vehicular parking, and this is the Kesh Street right of way that is being requested to be vacated, which is a dead-end sub, Guy Street is running north-south. And this is the existing residential property that is being requested to vehicular parking. Now, we're only focused on the rezoning request and the vacation request. And there are a number of, um, standards that, uh, planners and the planning commission will review, uh, with regard to rezoning requests. And the first is consistency with the master plan. Is requested rezoning, requested zoning map amendment consistent with the goals policies and future land use map of the comprehensive master plan, which was adopted in two thousand nine. The future land use map designates the subject site local mixed use for the portion of the site between Twelve Mile Road and Kesh Ave. The local mixed use designation is designed for primary, primarily business and nature, and mixture of neighborhood commercials, service, and office with accessory multiple family uses. The future land use map further designates the subject site north of Kesh Ave as low density single family, which is designed for single family homes on lots twenty thousand square feet or larger, to meet complementary small-scale institutional uses. The master land use plan would need to be amended for that specific portion of the rezoning request, if the vacation of Kesh Ave and the two single family lots area is here. Uh, we also look at compatibility of site issues. So again, vacated Kesh Ave and the existing residential being proposed for vehicular parking. The subject site is comprised of a portion of Kesh Ave right of way, which is a dead-end sub street, and residentially zoned lots contain one vacant house. Thus, there are no significant environmental features remaining on the site. We also look at compatibility with uses, land suitability. The subject parcels will be designated for vehicular parking only. Uh, there are no significant environmental features remaining on the site. A tree survey may be requested at the time of site plan review. Planning department will recommend that low-impact design measures be incorporated wherever feasible. With regards to nature views, the tent of the vehicular parking district is to provide a parking lot for passenger vehicles not exceeding a net weight of three tons, and all parking shall be for periods of less than forty-eight hours. The proposed parking lot is compatible with the existing funeral home to the south and will provide transitional buffer to the residential properties to the north. We also look at traffic impacts as part of the administrative site plan approval. We have talked with the applicant about relocating the drive off of Guy Street for the north, creating backing and queuing on-site, and creating a left turn only out of the site as well as, uh, shared, shared parking, uh, driveway access to the property to the east. And there are a number of, um, a number of, uh, additional traffic recommendations that will be handled during the administrative review of the, of the parking lot. With regards to aesthetics, pursuant to section five point three three of the zoning ordinance, an unpierced masonry wall shall be provided in non-residential districts adjacent to residential districts. Screening issues and landscaping will be discussed at the time of administrative review. Infrastructure, there is an existing sixteen-inch water main in the north half of Twelve Mile Road, sanitary sewers, there is an existing eighteen-inch Oakland County sanitary sewer on the north side of Twelve Mile Road. Stormwater management, Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner has the seventy-two-inch Snyder Drain on the north side of Twelve Mile available for discharge of storm water. Detention will be required for a hundred-year storm event. No additional infrastructures needed for the proposed parking lot. With regards to maintenance of property, the maintenance of property value will be compatible with existing approved uses and requested vehicular parking district. We also look at reasonable return. Uses permitted in the existing district include or are not limited to single family homes, farms, and related buildings. Recreation of the vehicular parking district will provide additional on-site parking for the existing funeral home, and may alleviate off-street parking conflicts on Guy Street and with adjacent uses. Currently, the market for new single family residential homes is depressed. Capacity of the infrastructure, yes, the capacity of the infrastructure is sufficient to accommodate all the uses in the requested vehicular parking district. Existing utilities are located in the site and underground detention basin will be installed under the proposed taken parking lot. Mini impact statement was not required because the site is less than ten acres. Desirable zoning trend, uh, we believe that the rezoning of subject parcels to vehicular park district will provide a buffer between the existing funeral home and residential properties to the north, and also alleviate parking conflicts on Guy Street. Uh, with regards to reasonable boundaries, the boundaries of the requested rezoning may be reasonable if appropriate screening and landscaping is installed as bufferation to residential. As part of this, a wall will be required along the northern piece, and significant screening and landscaping will be required along the western portion of the property. This is not considered a spot zone, and there has been no previous rezoning request submitted within the last year. With that introduction, I'd like to, uh, ask the applicant representative to come up and speak specifically on the rezoning request. I think Mr. Yono here is the owner of the Southfield Funeral Home, and then we would be happy to ask any questions that the commission may have after the public hearing has been discussed.
Name's Jerry Yono, one eight three three eight West Twelve Mile Road, I own the Southfield Funeral Home. I'm here asking for the zoning because I think that, um, everyone in here has seen the problems we have there and the parking situation we have. Uh, it would eliminate a lot of the problems for the neighbors and the business people that are around there for the parking. I think everyone has seen for the last thirty-two years that we've taken care of the property, kept it clean, kept it, and for many years, we're getting plaques every year for the way we've kept it. This will add, the total, total parking spaces will be approximately a hundred and forty-eight, I believe, from what we have right now. Sixty-five is what we have that we own. And for the last thirty-two years, it's been reciprocal parking with church. They use our parking lot, we use theirs. Um, see if the, the church is torn down and there's stone to grow commercial, then we will be out of parking. That's all my answer.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone has any questions or concerns, please raise your hand.
Panel is your appeal by three fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. Mr. Yono, I like you. Uh, you have a beautiful funeral home, you've been there for a long time, um, and normally I would be in favor... that are around there for the parking. I think everyone has seen for the last 32 years that we've taken care of the property, kept it clean, kept it. For many years, we're getting plaques every year for the way we've kept it. This will add, the total parking spaces will be approximately 148, I believe, from what we have right now. 65 is what we have that we own. And for the last 32 years, it's been reciprocal parking with insurance. They use our parking lot, we use theirs. See if the church is torn down and there's stone-to-bro commercial, then we will be out of parking. That's all my answer.
Okay, this time I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone who has any questions, please raise your hand.
Panel is your appeal by 355, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. Mr. Yono, I like you. You have a beautiful funeral home. You've been there for a long time, and normally I would be in favor of such zoning. But because Walmart will benefit from this rezoning, and there's going to be an agreement between the two entities to share the parking, I'm not in favor of it. It was different when it was a church, but when you talk about a business busy like Walmart, I'm not in favor of it. If you could benefit just from funeral home parking and Walmart not be a beneficiary of your rezoning request, I would be in favor of it. But because they're going to be sharing the parking with you, I am not in favor of this, and I cannot support it.
Okay, thank you.
I have met you before, the Village Club team. My biggest concern about parking, you seem to tell a lot about Guy Street and how it attracts. I have been here since 1962, so I know very well what Guy Street is and the neighborhood, and I know how it's been all over the years.
Can you please state your name and address for later?
My name is Lynn Falm, 80. Everybody calls me Lily. I live on Winchester in Evergreen Trail. I won't call you by street, without. Anyway, it's wonderful. You are buffering yourself and all the houses to me. Questionably, then you talk about the house in front of you in the parking lot. You never once say how high is the wall behind your car, and how high is the tree. You don't tell how Walmart lacks that in your parking lot. Especially if you're talking and using your parking lot, you're not really nice. You know, the coming out, house is so narrow. I don't talk about that when you get to Walmart. If you can reassure me that there will be a 16-foot wall between you and Walmart, no question, and they are cut off from you, then I would say yes. Mr. Yono, you've been there forever. I've been there forever. I still don't know why you today, there's only so many hours on the weekend, and you have a procession leaving there. I do not know how you handle your funerals, because I'm very active in other areas. But I would like to know, how is your schedule during the week? How will you be using that? I know your neighbors know, but we don't know, because I was not even told with this meeting until the week ended before. I mean, we people who do not live right in the neighborhood, we are sort of cut off right now. Unless we go online and look you up, which I did. Thank you. I looked back later at Walmart. Okay. It's late in the morning, which means close up. You want to see the diaphragm?
Ah, yes, they will.
Yeah, what you mean, be honest, right in the middle. I can give it to you later.
Okay.
I'm the Shinton. Anyway, with her, with Pam, and how much she made, but I think this is kind of pretty short. Two and three that are on your agendas of the home, like the fish is complete, that Walmart is going to be here, so let's discuss zoning. And I think that, you know, to me, the way that my mind looks at it, maybe too linear, but I think that you would discuss zoning after something has been approved, not what is the zoning, and then, you know, say, well, we've got these agendas, we've got this kind of motion you want, and we're going to head to Walmart. So, I mean, to me, that, you know, either this is a little bit backwards, or there's something, like I'm showing my kids sometimes, I've got the food, you know, I'm here, you know.
Hey, I have somebody in the back there.
Thank you, this is Chairman of the Commission. My name is Travis Gibson, I live at 29648 Somerset Drive. And I listened to the comments by the commissioner, and I did hear what was happening with traffic coming out of the parking lot onto Guy Street. Obviously Somerset runs into Guy Street, and I don't know if it's been considered that perhaps that should be no left turn if there is access to that parking lot coming off Guy Street and going into the right into the parking lot. There's a lot of traffic problems when there are funerals at funeral homes. When I try to access Guy Street, it gets to Somerset. So I think there shouldn't be any left turn parking coming out of the parking lot onto Guy Street, back towards 12 Mile Road. And I don't see a hint.
Okay, we'll get it. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
I live at 29435 Guy Street. I'm right on the cusp of where the funeral home is located.
I am in awe and agreement that he should have more parking. However, I have difficulty supporting it, knowing that Walmart has been sick from that way. And in fact, as soon as I fled last year, the Walmart was considering, we started thinking about selling. Otherwise, we're a family and business for a number of years. Our children have gone to the Facebook, the village, and we were figuring that we're going to be old here, but I'm not so sure anymore. Thank you.
My name's Matt Johnson, 301 Montano, Park Gate. I'm here to fully support this rezoning. As Mr. Yono said, he operates a vehicular facility, he's been there forever, keeps his property great, but he's had a parking problem forever. Also, Walmart or no Walmart, funeral home needs a reasonable self-contained parking solution. I believe this is it. Something eventually, whether it's Walmart or not, is going to happen next door. Do you take that off the table, just put wangers up there, not worry about what's happening next door to him? I think this is a great solution. Thank you.
Hi, I'm attorney Jennifer Franklin, and I'm living in Southern City. I have a very beautiful and charming mayor of Southfield, Calvin. I live in Laker Village. I have a big, good order of funeral home, you have a lovely place. You do need the parking, you need the parking, but I don't want to make a deal with the devil in order to get it. In other words, I don't, uh, I have a wonderful hand in everything that he has done for the community. He does need the parking space. So let's not say if we give him the parking spaces, we are definitely going to have a Walmart. You need to protect everyone in the community. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
29755, you're enjoying Southfield, and my concern with Walmart is, is about if some...
This isn't that on Walmarts. We talked about the funeral home right now, discussed the funeral home, not Walmart's.
Okay, because I don't want to talk about Walmart.
Can we not discuss them this time?
Yeah, we'll chat.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that the conference has now been closed. Public portion, like you're bringing, tissue your back to the microphone.
Maybe I, a few minutes ago, was concerned about, to know about the hours of our operation. From Monday to Saturday, well, Saturday, Monday to Friday, hours of 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., if I may come, 3:30 and leave at 8:30. Sundays, it's 2:00 to 6:00. Saturdays, remember, we haven't had funerals on Saturdays, this station on Saturdays for God knows how long. We do not have processions from there. Well, we have funerals, we go to the church, go to the cemetery. No one comes to the funeral homes in the holidays, just so everyone knows. Thank you.
Boy, you might as well stay. Welcome back to the front. I think we have some questions from the commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, where is the church you refer to? I'm not familiar.
Someone in the room.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Which church do you speak of, where's located? I'm not familiar with your...
The churches, one is in Southfield, which is on Bridge Road, just one block west, east of Telegram. Margaret Church. That's probably the one that we use more than any other churches. We do have eight churches that we go to, but mostly we use that.
Okay, like I said, I think you're our asset to the city of Southfield. It's always good to see us, Southfield, feel the span, and it's growing, it's doing well, and definitely need new parking. I would hate to have someone hold you hostage and tell them what Walmart may or may not do, or if they come in back on you, but we want to see your business continue to grow and do well, and I'm in full support of your parking. Mr. Copep.
Actually, well, generally, just say it very clear. This is strictly the rezoning of that area. Again, nothing has been approved with Walmart. I know you hear Walmart has made a proposal to this committee, and this committee will make a recommendation to the city council. Nothing has been stamped. I support this rezoning, simply for the fact, we know since 2009, this area needs to be rezoned. It's on our master plan. Something is going in that area, something, and that we make that clear, something. No one has rubber stamped Walmart. So hit on your head that Walmart is already there, everything has been done. This is a process that Walmart has to go through with us and then the city council. So this is strictly to tell Mr. Yono, yes, we realize you need more parking. And again, as I said, I hope you don't hold him hostage saying, well, we don't want you to have more parking, because therefore Walmart is going to get it. That's not the issue. But rest assured, that area needs to be rezoned, because it is on the master plan, and some developer, some developer needs to have it done so they have this level of one. This is not Walmart, this is him. Thank you.
Mr. Lader.
Yeah, I was hoping that you could just clarify for the audience how high that screen wall will be, is one of the concerns.
Through the chair, I can answer that. It's required to be at least 60 high, and it'd be a decorative wall, and then the additional landscaping that will be required. It's already done, partial to administrative review, because this is vehicular parking. The planning department actually does the site planning and makes sure that it's compliant with the ordinance. Ordinance does require a minimum six-foot-high decorative masonry wall.
The other thing, if I've worked on projects like this where, you know, it requires to be any experience with the service that you're providing, so it's definitely a need that you've had for a while, and I think that regardless of what happens next door, it is in fact something that your business requires, and the plan seems to be a solid plan, and I'll support it.
Mr. Bell. Yes, thank you. Since this is actually two issues that we're taking up here with one public hearing, I want to address the vacation first, if I could. The vacation of Cash Street seems to be a very logical thing to do. Mr. Yono currently owns both sides of the street. The, any, any merely proposing certain parking lot over the top of it, which is not going to interfere with the city's needs if necessary to get to the amenities that are underground underneath that street, if necessary, the city could easily do that. And of course, I presume with any vacation like this, there's always a condition that a building can go over the top of it.
Yes, if I may, and I know that I have yet to read the recommendations here, both on the vacation and on the proposed rezoning. But yes, generally, within a parking zone, and especially if we have easement, no building would be allowed to be destructed over top of it.
And so I will be supporting the vacation of part of Cash Street. And now the proposed rezoning, I need to make clear, Mr. Copep had me a little confused with his comments a minute ago. It sounded like he was referring to the rezoning of all the property.
I think you're right.
Well, that's what I understood.
I was thinking of one...
If I could just finish, I just wanted to let you know that it had me a little confused, and I wanted to make sure nobody else was, the way you phrased it, that currently we're only talking about the property Mr. Yono owns, and he's proposing to rezon this parking for his funeral home. And now that I've made that statement, I need to ask a few questions, because I'm a little confused. Are we talking about just the property that Mr. Yono owns, or are we also talking about that small piece of property that is zone R2, that is also going to be part of Mr. Yono's parking?
Yes, if I may. There is a small portion of the property that currently owned by the church, and if I have a pointer here, a portion right here, that actually this property belongs with the church property. That particular section would have to go to Greylock Split and be combined with the rest of the properties, in order, in order to make the rest of the property for what Mr. Yono would like to do.
And so we are indeed talking about that small piece of property also?
That small portion, yes. We're looking to rezon that, to square the property law.
But is or is not that piece of property going to become Mr. Yono's property as ownership?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would, through combination, yes.
And to do with that specifically, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, the truth is shared to the city. Currently, the funeral home is required to have 42 parking spaces per our ordinance, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. The Southfield Funeral is required to have 47 parking spaces.
Forty-seven. Okay, he's requiring now 47 currently, and he has 65. And it has been obvious to me, as a resident that happens to live in the area and drives past it regularly just to get home, he desperately needs more parking, as for ever. And I will be supporting this, merely because he needs more parking and he is acquiring the property to do it. And so no matter what happens with Walmart, he definitely needs the additional parking. And now, if I could, ask Mr. Yono a question, if he should come to the microphone. Mr. Yono, do you feel that this 148 parking spaces will be adequate for all of your needs?
Yes, I do.
You do? You don't anticipate actually having to share?
I don't think we'll be needing any of, right now, we have 65 car parking, and what's next door that we use, so with 148 car parking, I think would be very, very safe with that.
Okay, good. But I'm only concerned about that, because currently, without that parking that you don't have, people are using the church property, at least on the west side of the church building. And they're also, at times, literally parking on the south side of 12 Mile and walking back and forth across 12 Mile at very dangerous times of the day.
It is very dangerous, especially in the winter time.
Right. And so I will definitely be supporting this, both the vacation and the rezoning for parking for your place of business. And I just, the main thing I want to do is clarify the fact that we're actually talking about some of Mr. Yono's property and some of the property that actually is... and some of the property that actually is owned by the archivist, that he is going to be acquiring with this. Tell him this, if, maybe somebody can, I'm not sure who it should go to. If perhaps the Walmart site plan and rezoning does not get approved, would this small piece of R2 for his parking, would it, would that transaction take place?
I would definitely put on the car parking line, sir.
Okay. If you intend to follow through with that, about what happened to the Walmart. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, there are no other comments from the commissioners. I would at least like to read the recommendations into the record, please. Oh, we have one more.
Couple of quick comments. Generally, I feel our zoning ordinance is excessive with the amount of parking required. However, in this situation, you've been in business for thirty two years. I think you know better than a couple pieces of paper what makes sense. And I'm in favor of you continuing on in business, improving your business. And I think parking is going to help you with that. It's going to mitigate some of the other problems that everybody else has had. If there's a residential property that's going to have to be demolished as a result, or if you do proceed, I strongly suggest that you look into recycling, reusing, donating as much of the material as possible. There's some other recent projects that we suggested this to. Instead of just throwing them in the landfill, try and make the best use of what resources left there. It'll actually save you money potentially with the tax credit. So I'd just like to make you aware of that, and ask you information if you're interested. And strongly. And then the other point too is, no matter who the neighbor is next door, I encourage this site has a mixed-use development. And I think it makes sense to not alienate yourself. You know, be free to potential, and work together with whoever your neighbor may be, to be sensible, and I support your project. You have a comment?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to V three ninety eight, the planning department recommends favorable consideration for vacation requests for Jerry Yono, Southfield Funeral Home, the vacated portion of Cash Avenue, sixty feet by one hundred eighty nine, twenty nine, eight feet, point two six acres, abiding civil parcels, twenty four eleven, four seventy nine, dash zero two five, dash zero six two, dash zero six five, and dash zero six nine, in section eleven of the city with the purposes of following conditions. City council approved petitions containing the zoning request, VR thirteen fifteen, retention easements for maintenance of the facility lines, and the master plan being amended to support the rezoning request. Thank you. Now with regard to VR thirteen fifteen, planning department recommends favorable consideration for rezoning requests of Jerry Yono, Southfield Funeral Home, civil parcel two four eleven, four seventy nine, zero two five, dash zero six two, dash zero six five, property located at one eight two nine zero, West Twelve Mile Road, and one eight three two zero, and one eight three seven zero, Cash Avenue, on the northeast corner of Cash and Guide Street, just north of West Twelve Mile Road, in section eleven of the city with the following reasons. Proposed rezoning will be in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan that indicates local mixed-use and modern density single-family residential for this parcel. Proposed rezoning meets rezoning standards, including consistency with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, compatibility with site issues, compatibility with uses, reasonable return, capacity of infrastructure, community access stations, lawful land use, desirable zoning trend, reasonable boundaries, appropriate sub-district, no spot zoning in old previous requests to rezon. Proposed rezoning to be the type of parking will allow the petitioner to redevelop the case of property with new land uses compatible with funding existing developments, and in accordance with the comprehensive master plan. The proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects upon adjoining zonings or land uses. Through the chair, I just want to also add that we recommend that the master plan be amended to be consistent with the request of rezoning for this specific.
Does that make sense?
I'd like to recommend favorable recommendations for V three ninety eight and VR three thirteen fifteen for the planning department.
A motion by Commissioner Laidner, supported by Commissioner Copepeter, all with a favor, three five by ten nine.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, the motion passes, I'll state it. Thank you, good luck to you in future.
Thank you, gentlemen, ma'am.
We're going to take a five minute break, and we'll set up for the.
Maybe after the rezoning, we can take a short break before we get into the site management issues. But we are ready to move forward, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have the seventeen fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to your next items, VR thirteen fourteen, rezoning request of Charles Parks, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, on behalf of the owners, Michael Moran, Roman Catholic Archbishop of Archdiocese of Detroit, and Nick and Lorna Abraham, owners of Southfield Commons Shopping Center, to rezon fourteen point nine three acres of R2 single-family residential, OS office service, and B2 neighborhood business land to B3 general business. Property located at one eight two nine zero, on Twelve Mile Road, two nine two five five, and two nine two six seven, Southfield Road, on the west side of Southfield Road between Twelve Mile and Webster, civil parcel two four eleven, four seventy nine, zero six five, and dash zero six seven, and part of dash zero two two zero. If I may, I have a short video presentation for you sometime. I would like to note though, before I go on, legal notice advertising standard for public hearing on November twenty eighth, two thousand twelve, published in the Southland Eccentric newspaper on November eleventh, two thousand twelve. Legal notice is also sent by First Class Mail, all property owners within seven hundred feet of the subject property. The Betsor Woods Association, by the Neighbourhood Association, Hayburg Village Association, Canterbury Gardens Association, Cranbrook Village Associations, one, three, four, and five, Cranbrook Village number six, Cranbrook Village number seven, Cranbrook Village number ten, Green Trees North Civic Association, Heritage Trail, Oakland Hills, Parkwood Oakland Hills, Pinewood Manor Association, Spring Haven Point, Anglerwood Association, Wildterre McDonald Court, Valmore Club, Kingswood Place, Twelve Pines, and the Villa Point Association, the City of Laser Village, and all public facilities.
VR thirteen fourteen, SP twelve ninety one, is a rezoning and site plan review request of Charles Parks of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, to rezon from R2 single-family residential, OS office service, and B2 planned business to B3 general business, and with the construction of a new Walmart Supercenter on properties located at one eight two nine zero, West Twelve Mile Road, and two nine two five five, and two nine two six seven, Southfield Road, on the northwest corner of Twelve Mile Road and Southfield Road, in section eleven of the city. The subject property is zoned R2 single-family residential, OS office service, and B2 planned business. The property to the north is zoned B1 neighborhood business. The property to the west is zoned RA single-family residential, P vehicular parking, and OS office service. The properties to the south across Twelve Mile Road are within the City of Laser Village, and are zoned for office and commercial use. The property to the east across Southfield Road is zoned B3 general business, P vehicular parking, and OS office service. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject properties are developed with a vacant St. Pete's Church, and the southern portion of the Southfield Commons Shopping Center. The property to the north is developed with the northern portion of Southfield Commons Shopping Center, and Dunkin' Donuts. The properties to the west are developed with single-family homes fronting out Guide Street, and the Southfield Funeral Home. The properties to the south across Twelve Mile Road are developed with office and commercial uses in the City of Laser Village. The properties to the east across Southfield Road are developed with a gas station, a shopping center, an office building, and a bank. The proposed site contains eleven point nine four acres of land, with six hundred feet of frontage on Twelve Mile Road, and a depth of eight hundred and sixty four feet. The petitioner has submitted a request to rezon the property to B3 general business. The proposed site plan review request is to demolish the existing St. Pete's Church and shopping center, and to construct a new one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty four gross square foot Walmart Supercenter with associated parking. The parking required for the Walmart, Southfield Commons, and Southfield Funeral Home Development is nine hundred and ninety five spaces, with nine hundred and twenty one provided on all three sites. The landscape provided conforms to ordinance requirements. The elevations show a mix of brick, evis, and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the rezoning and site plan were: The proposed rezoning will be in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan that indicates north-Southfield Road subarea for this parcel. The proposed rezoning to B3 general business will allow the petitioner to redevelop the property with a new land use compatible with the abiding existing developments, and in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan. The proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects upon any of the adjoining zonings or land uses. Site plan review standards of the zoning ordinance. The petitioner is to enter into a cross-access and parking agreement with the owner of the Southfield Funeral Home, and the owner of the Southfield Commons Shopping Center, for all three to share parking spaces on the three properties. Waiver of seventy four parking spaces from the zoning board of appeals. Nine hundred and ninety five required, nine hundred and twenty one provided on all three properties. The petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Department of Prime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
Through the chair, I'd like to make some initial comments. First of all, I just want to clarify, there was a misstatement or misquote in the Southfield sign that said that his proposal was subject to approval by the council and/or the planning commission. And just to make it clear to everybody, the planning commission is the recommended body only. And the final, the final approval is subject to city councils for both the rezoning request and the site plan. We're here to consider, this specific public hearing is on the rezoning request, and then we will talk about the site plan. There are, the site plan itself does not require a public hearing. But I'm going to try to attempt to address the zoning issues first, and only because we have to consider all the potential uses within the requested district, not a particular use. Also, our department received approximately thirty letters up until five P M. today. After, after the public has been given a chance to verbally address the commission, Mr. Spence and I will, will read those letters into the record, if they're not repetitive. So that if, if somebody has submitted their, a letter or email, they, their concerns will be shared for your consideration tonight, even if they aren't here. So with that behind you is the existing zoning, R2, B2, and B1. And again, one of the first tests that we look at is consistency with the master plan, which was adopted on April thirteenth, two thousand nine. The future land use map designates the corridor of the subject site as north-Southfield Subroad Subarea. Southfield Road is running north-south here, Twelve Mile is running eastward over the south property line. This area has been identified as a neat area that contains a mixture of multicultural retail and services. Further, the City of Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan designates the subject site for potential large-scale and mixed-use development. The existing site was primarily developed or used by St. Pete's Church, which is now vacant and underutilized. One objective of the subarea is to encourage the acquisition, demolition, and reuse of those properties that by virtue of their location, condition, or value, no longer function at their highest economical, economic potential. Specifically, the master plan states, the St. Pete's Church and Southfield Plaza Retail Center are two large sites that could be redeveloped in the future. Because of their size and location on the corridor, these sites have the ability to be redeveloped as a mixed-use center if desired by the city. Thus, the request to rezon from R1 OS to B2 to B3 is consistent with the master plan's goals, policies, and future land use map. Compatibility, site issues. Are the sites physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features compatible with the host of uses permitted in the proposed zoning district? The subject site was previously developed in an urban setting, and there are no significant environmental features remaining on the site. Thirdly, compatibility with uses. Are all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district compatible with surrounding uses in terms of land suitability, density of use, environmental impacts, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, maintenance of property? Uses permitted in the proposed B3 district include, but are not limited to, the following: Medical offices, including clinics and medical laboratories, banks and similar financial institutions, post offices, private clubs or lodges, nursery schools, photographic and interior decorating studios, photographic reproduction, blue printing, and print shops, funeral homes, establishments that perform personal services on premises, stores of a generally recognized retail nature, veterinary clinics and hospitals, publicly owned buildings and utilities, establishments of professional or similar trade, assembly halls and similar places of assembly, open-air retail sales of plant materials, and sales of lawn furniture, playgrounds with insurance plans, hotels, restaurants, including bar lounge and carryout, accessory buildings used customarily instead of the any of the above permitted uses. Uses permitted subject to special approval in the proposed B3 district include, but are not limited to, the following: Recreation centers, motor vehicle washing facilities, gasoline stations, automobile repair and service facilities, automotive and truck sales and showrooms, freestanding restaurants, including bar lounge and carryout restaurants, drive-in and fast food restaurants, open-air displaying sales of vehicles, specialty retail sales, arcades, executive administrative and professional office hotels and theaters. We take the time to read all of these uses, because the commission needs to consider all the potential uses, not one particular use. Land suitability. The general business B3 district is designed to provide sites for diversified business types, and is often located so as to serve passerby traffic. This district will generally be used adjacent to high-volume major thoroughfares. The density of use will be dictated by meeting the dimensional and parking requirements of the B3 district. Environmental impacts. There are no significant environmental features that will be impacted on the subject site. Detention will be required upon a year's storm event. The planning department will recommend low-impact design measures to incorporate where applicable. Nature of use. The permitted uses in the proposed B3 district are compatible with surrounding uses in the Southfield Road corridor. Traffic impacts. A traffic impact study dated September two thousand twelve was prepared as part of the request of zoning amendment, a summary of findings listed before. Five existing full-access driveways will be closed, three on Route Southfield Road and two on Twelve Mile Road. Access to the proposed A box development is proposed in an existing signal-controlled access at Southfield Road at Edwards Dam, and a sheer driveway with the funeral home on Twelve Mile Road. The Twelve Mile Road driveway will be limited to a right-in, right-out, left-in, outbound left-turn movement is prohibited. The weekday peak hours were determined to occur between seven thirty and eight thirty A M., noon to one P M., and five to six P M. The Southfield Edwards intersection will operate at level of service B or better. The Southfield Twelve Mile intersection will operate at level of service E during weekday A M., midday, and P M. peak hour time period. However, the eastbound to northbound left-turn lane during. However, the eastbound to northbound left turn lane during certain timeframes experiences delays reaching level of service F condition. Based on the traffic impact study, the proposed big box development with improvements will not increase the overall delay at the two-study intersection. Site-
Knock them! Knock them! We're not in a joke, man!
Let him finish. Site access driveways will operate at level of service A, D conditions. These are part of the traffic impact study. Recommendations: Replace the existing traffic signals at Southfield Twelve Mile and Southfield-Edwards Intersections and revise signal timing. Provide right turn overlaps on all four approaches of the Southfield Twelve Mile intersection. Construct a three-lane driveway servicing the subject site and the remaining shopping center development at Southfield-Edwards intersection. Construct a right-in, right-out, left-in sheer driveway on Twelve Mile Road and a proposed big box Southfield Funeral Home entrance. Planning department further recommends decorative mask arms to be installed at Southfield and Twelve Mile and Southfield-Edwards intersection. D L Z Consulting Engineers to the Road Commission of Oakland County for the Southfield Road corridor study after review of the traffic impact study concluded the following: The increase in traffic volumes related to the proposed big box development at the Southfield Twelve Mile intersection is consistent with the growth rate already used in D L Z analysis. There do not appear to be any traffic movements that show substantially concentrated increase due to the proposed development. The delays predicted by D L Z analysis compare reasonably to the analysis performed in the traffic impact study. With regards to aesthetics. The aesthetics of the proposed building and the site will be compatible with surrounding uses. Quality building materials, architectural elements, landscaping, and pedestrian amenities will be required. Infrastructure. Water service. There is an existing sixteen-inch water main in the north half of Twelve Mile Road and a twelve-inch water main available on the west side of Southfield Road. Sanitary sewers. There is an existing twelve-inch sanitary sewer available on the west side of Southfield Road and an eighteen-inch Oakland County sanitary sewer on the north side of Twelve Mile Road. Stormwater management. Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner has a seventy-two-inch Snyder Drain on the north side of Twelve Mile available for discharge of stormwater. Maintenance of property values will be compatible with existing and proposed uses in the requested B3 district. Reasonable return. Uses permitted in existing districts include but are not limited to the following uses: R1 single-family residential. One-family dwellings, farms and related buildings, accessory buildings, and family childcare homes. Office service. Executive administrative and professional offices, medical offices, including clinics and medical laboratories, facilities for human care, banks and similar financial institutions, libraries and government buildings, and public utility offices, but not including storage yards and post offices. Private social clubs or lodges, religious institutions, public or private schools, nursery schools, photographic and interior decorating schools, funeral homes, establishments that perform personal services on premises, veterinary clinics and hospitals, and accessory building and uses customarily in accordance with any of the above permitted uses. Existing B2 planned business district allows: Medical offices and clinics, banks and similar financial institutions, libraries and government buildings, and public utility offices, but not including storage yards, post offices, private clubs and lodges, nursery school and daycare centers, photographic and interior decorating studios, establishments that perform personal service on premises, stores of a generally recognized retail nature, restaurants and carryout restaurants when attached to and located with a shopping center building complex, and accessory building and uses customarily in accordance with any of the above permitted uses. Market trends in the recent past and near future indicate that residential office development is very unlikely. Southfield Road currently serves and is designed to handle uses consistent with the requested B3 district. Compatibility of the infrastructure. The capacity of the infrastructure is sufficient to accommodate all the uses in the requested zoning district, an underground detention base, and a proposed install under the paved parking lot. Increases in utilities, water, sanitary sewers, storm, gas, and electric are located adjacent to the subject site. A community impact statement was submitted as part of this proposal. Is a zoning map amendment necessary to avoid exclusion of a lot of the land use that is kind of applicable in this case? Desirable zoning trend. If the requested zoning amendment is granted, then a desirable zoning trend of redevelopment along Southfield Road corridor between Twelve and Thirteen Mile Roads is likely. One recommendation of the North-Southfield Road corridor sub-area of the master plan is to expand the economic base of the corridor by retaining existing jobs while creating new diverse employment opportunities. Improvements that advance traffic safety and efficiency, pedestrian access, and enhance the character of the area will help accomplish this task. Reasonable boundaries. The boundaries are consistent with the area identified as potential large-scale retail and mixed-use development within the North-Southfield Road corridor sub-area. Appropriate district. Yes, the B3 general business district is designed to revise sites for diversified business types and is often located so as to serve classified traffic. The district will generally be used adjacent to high-volume major thoroughfares such as Southfield Road, which is designated as a principal arterial, which has a capacity of twenty thousand to ninety-three thousand average vehicles per day. Finally, the request to B3 district is consistent with the comprehensive master plan. And has this request been submitted previously within the past one year? No. So again, my review is based on all of the potential uses, not one single particular use. And with that, I'd like to ask the applicant's representative to just speak on the zoning request itself before we open the public hearing. And I'll be happy to answer the questions the petitioner asks during the hearing.
Mr. Members, my name is Eric Hicks, from the Walmart Public Affairs and Urban Management. Based on the request for B3, we think the zoning request has been works well with the master plan that's already been approved by the city. Is there a specific question that your commissioners or staff have regarding actual zoning requests under the previous survey?
Paneler, P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four zero three seven dash zero one five five. Again, my telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one six two eight eight. And everybody here pretty much knows we are the center of voice of Southfield, so I'm just a home call away. We cannot allow this rezoning. I don't know if you guys are paying attention, but look at how big that section of R2 is. The home values are already down in the city of Southfield, and to rezone that area, the people that are in that R2, they're gonna lose even more so on the value of their homes. Now, I wanna make the point that myself and I think Walmart, everybody knew, we're not getting Walmart coming to the city of Southfield now. We're getting Walmart here at Twelve Mile and Southfield Road. We think that Walmart would be better served at Northland Mall to revitalize it. We think that Walmart would be better suited at Home Depot, which is already zoned for that area on J. L. Hudson Drive near Eight Mile. Walmart would also be better suited on the old park side of Greenfield in that strip that's already there, and it's already rezoned for that. I'm sick and tired of developers with big money coming to this city trying to squeeze these projects into residential areas where they don't go. We want you to put your development and your business where we need revitalization. Now, in all these studies, you said you were committed to Southfield, you're about community outreach. If you're about community outreach and you're committed to Southfield, revitalize where we need it. Don't cram it where we don't need it and we don't want it. We don't want it there where I would start to work. Potential problem. The traffic is already a potential problem. I read your study, and I don't care what you say about forty-five thousand passive buyers doubling it to ninety thousand, it's a problem now, and it's gonna be an even bigger problem when you attempt to put that store there, that again, we don't want it there. It's gonna be a problem. Now, you talked about all the trees that you're going to plant. The city of Southfield had rain problems from that rain back in May of last year, and a lot of people flooded. What do you think putting a hundred and thirty thousand square foot structure is gonna do to that residential area? I don't care about twelve inch, eighteen inch rainstorm, it's not a good place for it. And a church tried to get that property and keep it as a church, and all of a sudden they got sued out of the deal. We don't want it. Now, you bragged about your community outreach. Is it true that you were fined five hundred million dollars, a half a billion, for discrimination, wealth abuse, and retaliation? If you are already treating your workers like that, how would you wanna treat Southfield? How are you gonna treat this city? And we don't want that here. Now, you only chose to get an African-American CEO female to remedy that problem. That's not a remedy. You discriminated. You abused your workers, and you retaliated against those workers. We don't want a whole race here that does that. We don't want them here. We don't want them here in that mode.
I prefer we can on alternate locations, Northland would be better served, there's already made a school over there, there's already a big parking lot there. We don't need to deal with anything. Also, the side across the line is a whole park, also the ex-home depot site. I'd like to know, these are the questions that I want the county to answer, and I'm sure that I can answer. I'd like to know what kind of tax break are they giving?
Yeah. So, how much, who offered it? What's the long-term set of whatever tax incentive that they were giving? What are the financial benefits that they're giving? I don't see any. I see none. Every community that Walmart has gone into, crime rate has gone up. There's a violation by local officers. There's an elevation, and that is in statistics, there's an elevation decline inside the store and outside. We always, you know, we have that target down at those, you know, two hundred feet down the road, and, you know, the crime probably there. Are there gonna be some guns at Walmart now? Down Street from the High Street. That is part of their history towards guns and ammunition. I don't think that's a very good idea. Also, I'd like to know, are there any city government officials or city workers involved in this transaction anyway? Financial assistance from them to follow the church way or to all the church? There has been a history of, not like I was, and people have been around twenty years or more, that there is that history here in the city. Also, the jobs that there, I know that that's gonna be the one thing, there are different jobs in the city. They're looking for twenty-one thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars a year full-time. They're not gonna spend their money there. They're not even gonna live in this community. So there's another nonincentive to bring these people in. We don't need another Frank Martin in Southfield. We already have targets, two targets. We already have home control, we've got grocery control factories, we've got a lot of this that's a parent's boy who puts out of business, because that's what Walmart does. And three, it doesn't mean to treat its employees with respect. I mean, I'm sure you've heard about all the striking over the Thanksgiving weekend. So, you know, what is the benefit to us as a community to have Walmart basically as the center of the city, down Street from the High Street, selling weapons, not really adding to it? I don't care how attractive the building is, I don't care how big the parking lot is, and how big the trees are, when criminals come in, which is one of the incentives for residents living here, is we have a low crime rate. How are you gonna justify that when it starts going up? So like I said, we don't need another Frank Martin.
Diane Abbottson again. And to those of you who might like to consider getting in touch after this meeting, you can contact me at Coast Office of Federal District, or through the Lake of Village Women's Club, or the Lake of Village Historical Society, because my roots are Lake of Village from nineteen fifty-one. I have a question for you before I begin. I saw this with discussing simply the rezoning, which includes many things, not just Walmart, but people seem to be addressing the second issue as well, so to save time, would you like those of us that seek to do it all together?
The issue is really on the rezoning of the property. Mr. Chairman, as I said, the public hearing is only on the rezoning, but since there is no public hearing on the site plan issues, and we want to give everyone an opportunity to speak, you may make comments on the site plan during your five minutes.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to be sure. Well, I'm opposed, first of all, to the rezoning, because I would point out to you, aside from what everybody in this room, these people seem to understand, it's already a traffic nightmare both on Southfield and on Twelve Mile Road, and Twelve Mile and Southfield along with Thirteen Mile and Southfield have historically continued to be two of the most dangerous intersections in the state of Michigan, as the automobile swell of New York has pointed out. I'm also opposed to simply getting rid of the church structure. That's been around since, I think, about sixty-two, was designed by Otteck, I believe it was Huber Birchhurst. It's a good example of mid-century modern, and he trained with Eliot Stannan, and he trained with Yamazaki, who did one Woodward, which then became the prototype for the World Trade Center, so it's a credential. And I'm also appalled at the behavior of the Archdiocese even considering this, because we should be there now. They sold their eyes to another church, they could've done that easily with St. Michael's, and this could've happened to Dick Parish Church, but they spent millions on the J.P. Two Center in Washington while they closed parishes in Detroit. All right, having said that, I want to address the specific issue of Walmart itself, and I want to address it as a moral question to you gentlemen, because if someone who's been in politics for forty-four years, and who's pretty well-educated, up to forty degrees, he's acquired at eight universities back in three countries, four countries, three countries, every university I've gone to shares of views I've put to you, so they're not just mine. Joseph Obol was the propagandist for the Third Reich. He told us, "Tell the first lie I lost, and often enough, and people will believe you." And you're gonna hear some of those lies tonight, ladies and gentlemen, but Walmart is considered the company that brought him plantation capitalism, and their own rights come with the blood of millions of people, or metaphorical and literal on their hands. People have said that they destroyed jobs, let me give you natural statistics, they drive down retail wages by three billion every year in America, destroying three jobs related to what creates, and the jobs it destroys are better jobs with better wages and conditions. That's an average of a destruction of two-point-seven percent of employment in retail in every country they enter. Their wages are roughly less than seventy percent of poverty, like, we already know we can't live on poverty wages. They slash their meter healthcare benefits, and they encourage their employer to go and meditate on their public benefits. An example, in Alabama, there's thirty-eight hundred-plus children that are medicated. Arizona, twenty-seven hundred workers are medicated. Arkansas, sixty-nine seventy-one public officials, they won't wait times, they're a law on this, and you want to get in detail. The usage of California, Berkeley, California, is applicable to other areas. That Walmart, in its subsidy, costs taxpayers of California eighty-six million a year and compi taxpayers twenty-five million a year. Across the country, the subsidies that they get, the concessions, the U.S. public subsidies for healthcare and- for healthcare and stuff, total one billion, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven million dollars cost to the taxpayer. That's not what it's for.
You have about thirty seconds, you might wanna wrap it up.
We know the rest of the unionists. We know the crime, I'll bring you the list of murders, homicides, assaults, all the things that these people have done in their pocket lots, because their security cameras are used to go after unionists, not to go after criminals in the car park. We know they use Playboy World Reseeds and shine, and you saw the fire in Amladash that street cat, even if they're not in that lock factory, those girls work, uh, from nine to seven a.m. to ten p.m. to thirteen to seventeen cents an hour. That's where their money comes from.
Okay.
They have ten, uh...
If you go to Walmart, you have enjoyed their practices and it's a moral decision on your shoulders, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Victor Sette. I live at two-three-one-six-zero, Nowood Drive in Southfield. I grew up in Lake of Village, I've lived in this area for most of my life. I know that the St. Beast's property, as it now stands, is of little use to anyone, and it needs redevelopment. I hope to see that property reused in ways that benefit our community, but locating a Walmart store on that property would be detrimental to Southfield, as well as to our neighbors in Lake of Village. The proposed store, with more than a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, plus parking and other ancillary services, would be a very unwise redevelopment of that property, and our city needs to find a better use for it. The intersection of Twelve Mile and Southfield Road is already one of the busiest and most dangerous intersections in Oakland County. Very much today, traffic at that intersection, and in particular on Twelve Mile Road, is very congested. It often takes three or four cycles and traffic signals for Twelve Mile traffic to get through the intersection. Adding a store this large to that intersection will only make our traffic problems worse. I don't care what anybody's purported traffic study sounds, but that's the Walmart corner that only makes it worse. I think you can take your traffic study and put it in with top hat. In addition, the property runs home to the neighborhood church that I attended as a boy, is immediately adjacent to residential areas that would suffer both economically and aesthetically if a store that large were built there. The noise, traffic, litter, light pollution, and other issues associated with any development on that scale would make life in those neighborhoods much less pleasant. I moved to Southfield in two thousand and four, in large part because of the quality of life that its neighborhoods afforded me. Putting such a store so close to a residential area harms the very quality of life that brought me to the city in the first place. It will also diminish property values in a city that has already been devastated by the downturn in the residential real estate market, just ask any of us who own homes in Southfield what shape we're in now. Walmart's not going to improve that, it's going to make it worse. I have no issues with a Walmart store being located elsewhere in our community. I welcome such a store, and I welcome the jobs that break the Southfield. If the store were located in a spot that were better equipped to handle the traffic and the other issues that store would create, there are other areas of the city, especially near the Northland Wall and along Telegraph Road, where a Walmart store would be much less disruptive than it would be at Twelve Mile and Southfield. Therefore, I asked the planning commission and the other governmental bodies charged with planning and zoning issues to reject Walmart's proposed use for this property. Instead, I think it would be better for our community to find another Southfield location to put that Walmart store up, perhaps near, uh, Northland or other areas in the city, maybe along Telegraph Road. And I also think the planning commission and the city council should work with the Archdiocese of Detroit to find a more suitable use and a better buyer for this former St. Beast's property. Thanks.
Billy Hearn, seventeen-five-zero, Evans Avenue, Southfield. I have a question for the mission. Am I correct, if this site is rezoned as a B3, that means it is zoned as B3 regardless of the success or failure of Walmart at that site? So now, we heard earlier the kinds of businesses that could be placed in a B3 rezoned area. And to me, those kinds of businesses, many of them are not appropriate for a residential area that is surrounded by that site. So that's one point. I heard Terry Crowden mention that the traffic studies have been done, and that Southfield Road is built to accommodate up to, I think you said, ninety thousand, ninety-three thousand cars per day. And I imagine that when you do the traffic study, the numbers are much lower, because I've seen the rubber scissors across the road, so you did the study, and, and the traffic is less than that right now, so that is the reason why you're saying it will accommodate the growth. But can you really predict what the growth would be if a Walmart was located at that site? I don't think you can. And so, those numbers don't really mean anything in terms of what the capacity would be versus what your studies have shown, versus the reality of what will happen if that site is being approved or rezoned and at construction. Now, I live at, I've heard comments about the corner there at Twelve Mile and Southfield Road, and I know how bad the traffic is there, because I live up at Edward and Southfield Road in that area. So I see the traffic every day, and especially in the evenings, five days a week, it's really heavy. Now, there was a plan once to put and go to ground at the corner of Edward and Southfield Road, and a lot of the community came forth to express their concern about the traffic problems that would be brought forth on the community. Walmart would bring those same problems, and that, am I correct, would that be a twenty-four-hour shop operation? Is this a twenty-four-hour operation? Seven days a week? Seven days a week? Okay. And that is those holidays. So it's not, issue's never to be major, impacting not only Southfield Road and Twelve Mile Road, but the residential access for Edward, and of course Guy over here, but Edward in particular, since Edward is the only through street going east and west between Reed Field and Southfield Road, between Twelve Mile and Thirteen Mile Road. So right now, Edward, the street that I live on, is a through street for all of the folks coming from east of Southfield Road and feeding through to get to Southfield Road, so from Reed Field, from Berkeley, all through there. By the way, Edward is also a cut-through street for the folks who are not happy with waiting at Twelve Mile and Southfield Road, the traffic for the next hour, Lake of Street and cut over on Edward Street to bypass it. If Walmart is rezoned, if the site is rezoned for Walmart, the traffic on Edward would be unbearable. I didn't hear anything mentioned about what are you gonna do to accommodate the problems of Edward Street? I only heard that you're gonna have an access entrance off of Edward to the parking lot for Walmart's rezoned area, and an access off of Twelve Mile for, so. Where do you think that traffic's gonna come from? Where do you think that traffic's gonna go when it's in Walmart? It's gonna go to the residential area along Edward. So what are you gonna do about that? That is not a good plan, okay? And, and I suspect that Edward would be significantly more impacted than Guy, even though Guy was...
You have about thirty seconds, you might wanna wrap it up.
All right. So, as of this, we have people with handicaps, there's a gentleman who is using a wheelchair. By the way, for him, there are no sidewalks along Edward. Right now, he is often in danger of being hit by cars. But if you wanna talk about lawsuits later on for the city, that could happen as well. But let's be concerned about the safety of the people who live in the area. Plan obsolescence, people talk about the decrease in property value. There's a term that real estate folks use called plan obsolescence.
Okay, I'm sorry, good times, though.
Plan obsolescence says, your property value would down twenty-five percent if this construction is done.
Okay, sue me, good times, though.
Make it. By the way, come to the city council meeting. Go to the council website. Call the council.
Sir, sir. Please, council division.
Write to your family, your council member. Call your council member, let them know your...
Please say your name and address.
I am Robert Barrett, on two-high-eight-four-eight, Rambling Road, just a couple of blocks west where Guy is. My biggest concern is right now, there's a lot of traffic going up our street as a cut through between Twelve Mile Road and Thirteen Mile. And that also happens on a couple of the other streets that are through the street, and the traffic is bad now. And if you gotta self-exit there out of Walmart, or whatever goes in there and they're turning right, they have to, they're either gonna go up Guy Street, and make a couple of street jogs over to Twelve Mile, uh, Live Street from Ambling, or go over to the car door in the next street. And they can do that also on Twelve Mile Road, it turned up. And come to something, we already got problems there with kids and other people cutting through there and running whales and stings, and there's a lot of kids, some kids in that neighborhood, and there's some handicap kids in that neighborhood. Just that one fact alone started against the whole rezoning of areas, and I'm also against Walmart.
Good evening, I'm Kim Cott, I wrote my turn of town for the brief, and thanks to my time limitation. I actually sent a column that's recent, neighbors have come up and want to consult you. I'm gonna read my letter for Bena. First, I'd like to say that I chose visiting areas to help the tranquil park-like setting of the neighborhood of Southfield and Lake of Village. Secondly, because of the county's dilemma, it is clear that its downturn has brought unfavorable changes to our neighborhoods. Southfield Road between Twelve and Thirteen is saturated with remnants of the nineteen-seventy strip mall boom. Due to the strip mall president's struggle for tenants, some nearly abandoned, for example, House of Sport of Evergreen and Twelve Mile, only two tenants remain. The St. Beast location has been vacant for some time, becoming the eyes of interest of the community. Therefore, the St. Beast location presently isn't a tax revenue generator for the city of Southfield. However, I do not believe that twenty-four-hour supercenter Walmart is a sound lifestyle entity to occupy the St. Beast location for the following reasons. Walmart will provide two new virgin services that the new store community already provided: Target Home Depot, Market Express, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, premier pet supply, Kroger, twenty-four-hour wires, and twenty-four-hour PBS, neighborhood here. These stores are direct competitors of Walmart, and some stores on a small scale providing terms to Walmart's shop on the neighborhood quarter. Due to downturn in prices, we have written us a large supermarket chain, Farmer Jack's Bakery and Neighborhood Strip Mall, and Royal Ford Bookstore. The cycle of Farmer Jack's won resigns only fifteen people that occupy our planning systems. Some of the stores may be located in Brooklyn Hills, or as Brooklyn Jones' south community that we support. Should the county number returns from Canada, can or will be continuing small or large scale stores, particularly on the Southfield Road corner, continue to stay in area. No one knows what the other corporations' plans are if their current revenues are jeopardized. Maybe we shouldn't be as concerned, but competition is good, but if these corporations vacant and closed their stores, how long will we have to find tenants for several locations in the quarter? Walmart is free for the people who have worked at the campus and available. So the jobs that they extended would be bringing in here are ones that you, are those that you want for yourself, for your family. Walmart's waiting to afford its own more type on its meaning. Does Walmart care how it would affect the other stores? I think not, if they were planning a twenty-four, twenty-four-hour store system. Walmart is attempting to make this quarter of choice any time of the day. We as a community have to ensure the sustainability of the current writing stores in our neighborhoods. Furthermore, how many more twenty-four-hour stores do we need? Our neighborhoods are becoming transformed with efforts to rent us and make us home. Sustainability in the neighborhood keeps the same current home owners as well as the goals of this community, but at what cost? This is a challenging issue, and any old one tries that twenty-four-hour supercenter would call, additional large town in two or one twenty-two neighborhood streets. The rental subdivision has always been a great area of water dogs in the neighborhood. However, it is changing in an unfavorable way. Cars zoom into the neighborhood, neighbors changing every six months, the cost of the community as a whole. Addition of the twenty-four Walmart or townhouse are current neighborhood issues that we are attempting to build. I am certain that the city of Southfield can entertain other entities that would be better suited for the St. Beast location to support the workers and will provide a positive addition to the Southfield Board. Thank you.
My name is Mark Corran, I'm up in the middle of Southfield, ready to start the bridge. We need to do a point of mileage, but our time is short, but we wanna make a point of direction, maybe. We have two hours of traffic, uh, the cultural heritage of the public stop of the century modern aspect of Southfield, really block size, the walkable neighborhoods. I mean, we don't have to repeat all these things, of course, it would be negatively effective, but what I wanna say has led you to with the facts, with the traffic, with the factual impact, I mean, obvious factual impact on property values, it's really just a pretentious kind of thing, because I'm pretentious. How do you live in a neighborhood without Walmart? And you are dealing with the future of Southfield, you should be presenting, or you should be reviewing proposals about how to leverage the cultural heritage of Southfield, in the century end, how do you get people that are too tired of the mud clapping to this community? Because the city of Southfield needs to be looking into the future, and Walmart is not about the future, it's a failed concept today. No matter how successful the company is, it represents values and business practices that are headed for nowhere of failure, and that have already negatively affected every community that it has touched. So, going back to the point I made earlier, which is a very subjective point, how do we live in down the street from that Walmart? I think I'll consider moving, because that is about the fact. That is the thing that the city of the neighborhood would difficult, it can happen. I'd rather see a newly bar, a strip club put up there. The Jerry's trailer show, a great job, Charlie. But I want you to consider the future of Southfield, I want you to consider viable cultural alternatives that are reflective of the heritage of Southfield, and the context of further planning, it's a special significance that everyone's had, and Walmart is not part of that. And by the way, whoever you paid for that architect, I saw the architectural drawings, I'm in that life business, Walmart paid too much for them, because it's about the majority of the city, and the Southfield city motto is the center of it all, will be the center of the majority. Thank you very much.
My name is Frank Viper, at three-oh-eight-three-five Vernon Drive. My comments will be brief, but thank you, everyone. You are our friends and neighbors, and I'm glad you guys are taking this with a thick skin, and not personally. Walmart is the worst possible thing that we can have in our neighborhood, especially a twenty-four-hour Walmart. I enjoy Southfield being a beautiful town, and I'd like it to stay that way, I don't want it to become a Walmart town, where people are paying eight dollars and change an hour, instead of fifteen dollars you can get at Costco. Walmart is the largest recipient of public aid in the country. On average, a Walmart store takes in four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars per year in taxpayer assistance to its workers, because they have to be on financial aid, they have to be on taxpayer aid, because they can't make a living wage at Walmart. None of the people in this community are going to take those jobs, they're going to be taken by people from outside this community, and the people who shop there will be from outside this community. So why would we host this? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Marie Parkes, and I live at one-eight-six-eight, West Over in Southfield, which puts me on the teacher ladder of Southfield, so to speak. The thing about living here in Southfield, I shop at that area, even though most people have been up here, in India, Twelve Mile and Southfield, I shop in that area. And it's the beauty of living in a country like this. I live further back, but I shop in this area, and it's a freedom that I enjoy. And I know, I think you're against Walmart, because I do travel Southfield and South, Twelve Mile and Southfield, I know I'm just there again, and so, I feel... And so, I feel that, we don't speak that, I would like, I see Walmart as a poor neighbor. It's poor to the businesses. I'm not alive at Walmart, but I experienced it in Ohio, Central Ohio, where I go visit my family and shop during the holidays. There was a, I think, as we have one right here, and there was a car shop, a nice strip mall, but Walmart came in, and the place was almost like a ghost town. And that is what Walmart, as is said by everybody else, is what Walmart does to neighborhoods. So, you, the commissioners, the leaders, I'd like you to keep in mind integrity when you vote for businesses to come in. Now, I didn't speak to the, the other issue, uh, that, the one pertaining to the, the uh, no, not to the, the one, um, the first one. But you said that this is competition, and that's why we need to have integrity when you consider. Because I don't think permits should be given out and let people flood that out, and whoever can stand up and survive. If we have, as pointed out, there's three horns in this area. And so you said it's competition, which means the bad man, the best man, wins. And I, I think we need to have a little more information on that. We owe something to our businesses, so that when we allow them to come in, that the other businesses that are there can survive and not, well, you know, not cutthroat. And that's what we need here, I guess, all this cutthroat going on, so that all the businesses, particularly the ones that you've already allowed in, can survive and not go on out there to eat and survive. And Walmart, we know what it's done to the workers, we know what it's done to our various communities, and I would like to say that whether it's placed anywhere else in Southfield that you take into consideration the practices of Walmart, so that our workers and our people are not subjected to what Walmart generally subjects its workers to. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Berchler. I live at three thousand five Berkshire in Bullfield Township. I own business property at two eight zero two one Southfield Road in Lakewood Village, and I'm president of two companies that are located at that address. I'm here this evening, however, as vice chair of the Lakewood Village Downtown Development Authority. I'd like to offer my perspective on the rezoning application before you as a professional community planner, as a business owner, and as an appointed official in your neighboring city. Southfield and its neighbors have a unique, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to reimagine Southfield Road as we work with the Road Commission of Brooklyn County to upgrade its important regional transportation corridor. We not only have the opportunity to improve access management, traffic flow, transit options, pedestrian and non-motorized facilities, we also have the chance to jumpstart placemaking for the next generation of residents of the four communities in this corridor. Rather than grasping the first development proposal that comes through our doors, we should be holding fast to our vision of a new future where neighborhoods and business nodes are linked together as one community. For Southfield and Lakewood Village, our shared school district should be an example of how we approach the future of our shared Southfield Road corridor. Both communities have a vision for the corridor that is much bigger than the proposal before you tonight. I would like to share with you a few highlights from your home Southfield Comprehensive Plan that speak directly to the importance of the St. Beat site. The Southfield Comprehensive Plan refers to Southfield Road between Twelve and Thirteen Mile Roads as a vibrant, colorful, diverse, multicultural, exciting, and attractive corridor with a variety of quality places to work, shop, learn, live, and be entertained. Two, two of the principal objectives for the corridor include: establish a land use pattern that characterizes the corridor as a unique destination consisting of compatible yet diversified uses, and enhance the visual and aesthetic qualities of the corridor through streets, through streetscape, landscape, roadway improvements, and corridors. The corridor will consist of concentrated nodes of activity, primarily commercial and office, compact enough to create critical mass of business activity with ancillary multiple family residential uses similar to the local mixed-use designation. In general, the maximum size of retail should be limited to seventy-five thousand square feet. You're looking at a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. I'm reading from your master book. Or mid-box uses, or mid-box uses such as groceries. Big box uses should not be permitted. That's a direct quote. The St. Beat church has the ability to be redeveloped as a mixed-use center. Such mixed-use centers provide convenient and easy, easily accessible businesses and services along with alternative housing options in a concentrated area. These nodes are intended to include uses that support nearby residential neighborhoods without adversely impacting residents. The configuration of these nodes promotes local trips and walkability, something that I heard one of the commissioners talk about earlier. The southern entry to the North Southfield Road corridor is identified as a portal and an important link into the city. New technologies and changing market trends are affecting the demand for the design of our commercial spaces. The market trend has been to develop large, single-stop big-box retailers. In the future, communities must respond to their residents' desires to venture up, interact and socialize in a multi-store district node where they feel they can be part of a larger, diverse community. The following questions help to frame the challenges and issues related to community innovation. How can the commercial corridors be visually improved? How can the sense of place be enhanced? How can the entrance portals to Southfield be more clearly identified?
You have about thirty seconds, you might want to wrap it up.
I ask the planning commission to consider this basic question. Does this rezoning application for a super Walmart and its accompanying site plan respond to these important goals of your comprehensive plan to enhance the corridor's entrance portal and create a mixed-use node that is connected to support of the nearby neighborhoods? Believe it or not, that summary, as quick as I could go, of eleven pages that I will leave with you, and with regard to the site plan, I'd just like to say that the list of these three uses that was read in excruciating detail is meaningless when your planning department is recommending approval of the rezoning and approval of the requested land use.
Okay, I'm sorry, time is up.
My name is Mel Bowden, and I live at two nine five six six Southfield Road, with a couple of streets from where the proposed Walmart is to go. And I read that, and just left one in my stomach, because I'm here in Southfield because of how it is now, and with Walmart being there, it's gonna, I'm gonna entertain the idea of leaving. And as far as the traffic is concerned, Twelve Mile is a mess. I go from Jump Court to Twelve Mile to get to Southfield, and it's gotten so bad, now I go Webster to Southfield, go where I want to go. And I hope that, planning commission, look at the big picture and not allow this. Walmart is a train wreck waiting to happen.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Say, and I moved in Southfield in nineteen seventy-three. And every issue that I was going to bring out to you, and I also wrote a letter to you, which you'll get by mail, every issue has been addressed by these people. And I'm so proud to see so many people to attend to, because this is what it means. This is what Southfield means. But just let me share with you, the reason I've moved to Southfield is now coming to haunt, because it looks like Southfield is going to become a north of choice. Because the thing that you're encouraging, in Target or Walmart, for example, that's going to encourage crimes of opportunity. When you have a twenty-four hour network, you have people roaming around after, after hours. And when I say crimes of opportunity, I mean, driving along toward our community and decides to, as one would say, check this out. So it's becoming increasingly uncomfortable. I'm not enjoying Southfield as I used to. I used to walk Twelve Mile every morning. I stopped, because so many people, young boys, were walking pitbulls. And so I no longer walk in Southfield. I leave it to me to relax and walk. I wrote a letter to you, and I can't remember everything I added along, but another thing I'd like you to realize, and that is, within a one-mile radius, we have many families, because we have many lives, we have clothing stores. Why would Walmart? Again, all you're doing is bringing crimes of opportunity. Another thing, the Walmart, I understand, they pay their employees very little. They don't give them full-time, keep them on part-time, because that way they don't have full benefits. And those persons are on A and we love that. We don't need that. So, think about this. The gentleman spoke before, just before the lady before him, I'm not gonna say his name, but he raised an issue, and that is, he's thinking in terms of the ways that companies in Southfield want people to come here to live comfortable, quiet, safe life. One other issue I'd like to raise, and that is, I heard that because of some market, we now have restaurants in Southfield. So, as I said, it just seems that I'm more than a spacey, Chris Toddfield, and that is, we're going to come north of choice. Walmart, if you want to shop at Walmart, it's less than ten minutes from this area. So we don't need one on the corner. And I'd like to remember everyone to be back here December the third, to, uh, please to work. December the third, the council will be here, and that's the time to come, and voice, uh, issue, pay issue with it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Marie Parkes. I'm a Southfield resident. I, um, I've never shopped at a Walmart store, and I don't plan to shop at one any time in the future. And I have a lot of reasons for it, there are many, many reasons for it, not shop here and my opposition is the project. However, I will speak on just three reasons. One, job, job, job. Walmart will bring jobs, but those jobs are not the kind of jobs that we want in the city of Southfield. Eventually, those workers will prove to join the Walmart workers in over one hundred six that were not struck over the, um, weekend, the past weekend, uh, for nothing else, to be treated with dignity and respect. All they were trying to do was protest, like sexual harassment. They were protesting the discrimination against women and minorities, and no paying jobs without benefits. In other words, they were really protesting the Walmart culture. That's the culture of Walmart. Number two, we get down to low prices. Am I supposed to know the low prices? Of course not. However, do you wonder how Walmart can afford those low, low prices? Walmart tells its suppliers, if you wanted to business with us, you better beat your competition. Walmart hits its suppliers against suppliers, against each other. This forces its suppliers to outsource overseas good-paying American jobs to other, other countries, under country competitors. But again, what does Walmart care about good-paying jobs? It's the Walmart culture. Which brings me to my third and final point. Walmart will destroy the surrounding business for many, many miles. There's Lamp Shop on the corner, Dallas Tech Center, those small businessmen, even Target and Kroger and, and other CBS and Walgreens, they all pay good-paying jobs with good wages and, uh, good wages with benefits. And there are many, many others which would be heavily impacted by this project. But right now, we here in the city of Southfield, we do have choices. We have a lot of politics, and we can go to them. But when Walmart comes in, they are going to put the other businesses out of their business. And I and other people like me will have no choice but to shop outside of Southfield, because Walmart will destroy all of the competition. It destroys entrepreneurial care. But again, that's the Walmart culture. Those are just, excuse me, those are just three of the many, many, many reasons why I oppose Walmart. And I don't, I didn't talk about the traffic congestion or the parking issues, I'll just tell it off, talk about that. But in closing, I'd like to leave you with a, just one final thought, you know? As, as public officials, you know, making decisions that impact the lives of citizens here in the city of, uh, Southfield, there will always be opposing views. There'll always be people that, you know, filthy decisions that you make will make some people happy, and they'll make some people unhappy. You'll hurt some people, and you'll help some people. However, if you go through the decision-making process on this project, I ask you to ask yourself two questions. Number one, is my decision based on the neighborhood's community? And number two, if I approve this project, who is going to help us, and who is going to hurt the most? Thank you.
Stephanie English, two eight seven three five San Carlos, Southfield, four zero seven six. Standing in the line is kinda hard to figure what you're gonna say when you get to the podium, because so many people are eloquent in giving their concerns that bear in mind. So I'm gonna try to bring a little bit different weight. Um, one point, though, I do want to concur, everyone that came to this podium protesting the, uh, traffic report, I concur with that. Um, I believe that that report is nothing but a good service, because Twelve Mile is the little I ninety-six. Uh, my husband works for General Motors at the tech center, and whenever there's a traffic problem on six ninety-six, they send a blast email to you, Twelve Mile, and people come from probably Haggerty Road all the way to Mound and Van Dyke. So that's what Twelve Mile is nicknamed at the tech center. So at this point, whatever traffic pattern report, I, I don't think it's, uh, of value. I think it's grossly understated just to push the pa, uh, project through. The other thing I'd like to mention very quickly is return of benefit. And my neighbors and fellow residents have said, what is the return on investment? What's the benefit? I don't care about a fee to the Walmart proposition. I, uh, asked Eric, the community relations person that was at the pre-Walmart meeting, to email me the data of the reports that there's going to be a benefit to the homeowner in terms of evaluation of their property. I tried to contact the Lansing office to try to follow up and get those reports, because in the marketing report, the residents need to know, there was a blurb that said that every Walmart that comes into a community, the home values go up. Now, I'm a smart person, everybody here, I can tell is smart. So my thing in terms of business, when you make that kind of assertion, I want to see the data. Show me the pre-values, your project coming in, then the post-data. Otherwise, you're destroying out a, a statement that you think were not intelligent enough to discern is not valid, because you have to provide benefit for the residents. That should be your first goal, protect the integrity of the neighborhood, and, to protect the integrity of the community at large, but also to protect every single homeowner. And if there is any potential that this particular project is going to be, I'm sorry, be weak, the values that are already low, then to me, you have a duty to protect us. You have a, a duty to protect any neighbor who actually is a taxpayer and a homeowner. That should be, in my opinion, your first result. I am quickly gonna piggyback on everyone that talks about the corporate social responsibility of Walmart. Ms. Gerald is right, and facts are not off. Uh, less than a decade ago, Walmart was hit with government fines of discrimination to the tune of just under a half a billion dollars, I think it was four hundred and ninety-five million dollars. Sometimes when you get sucker punched by someone, or they step on your toes, and they say, excuse me, you think that they're saying, excuse me, 'cause they don't mean to hurt you again. When that same discrimination hit that Walmart had to pay fines for, that would basically human rights or human employee rights... human rights or human employee rights, it's coming to fruition again. So that means you didn't accidentally step on employee toes. You're repeating that same pattern, otherwise you wouldn't have the same, uh, uh, raising up of employees to say, I need to have some dignity and I need to have proper rights as an employee. The same issues that they got fined, uh, less than a decade ago, was manifesting itself, as the woman said, over the Thanksgiving holiday. There was national support from other, uh, unions, but just individuals who aren't even impacted by the Indian environment. So I really like to say that the last lady, she is correct. We have a moral obligation to determine what type of image we have this, uh, city and what corporate culture we want, what, what do we want our brand identity to be? And unfortunately, if, if the gentleman at Walmart had gotten back with me, perhaps I could support it. I mean, everybody knows that I support most business entities, but this one I will not. Based on what the lady said before me, the corpor, the corporate culture is offensive to me. And it should be offensive to anybody that just respects the rights of he, or human dignity rights and things that the employment, um, environment. But let me, not digress.
Give him about thirty seconds.
Let me not digress. Your first obligation is to protect the integrity of the neighborhood, home values, and I have not heard any benefit. If this gentleman has that report that can substantiate their claim that moving into neighborhoods accelerates home values and the, and the integrity of the neighborhoods around us, I'm talking value, value, then I'd like to see it.
Okay, your time is up.
Ms. Delkan. I have all this stuff, this movement here, whatever it comes to say. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I came to Southfield in the fall of sixty-two because of the schools. I raised three children. I have a diverse background, almost as impressive as that lady from Nathan Village. I was enrolled in the corporate series piano school. So I know where those are in Walmart, it's just not Walmart that does it. Okay? The economy goes up and it goes down. The economy is now sort of fighting its way up. I'm also learned marketing. I can, I think for schools are better, that's another story. Anyway, the economy will eventually struggle up. And why people like Mr. Yono are investing in something that will go up in value, they will come flipping. That's a bad word. And we have a lot of flippers in Southfield. I should have left here. I have a beautiful condo in Troy I couldn't move to, but now there's trouble there too. There is no place to run. When I go on my walk, and I do walk, I have a metal hip, I do cry, I touch you guys down. And I, I learn how to dance because you know I can big walk. I go to the council center, I'm a tan yellow kid. Would you believe I was tan yellow right in front of Southfield's house? Just two weeks ago. I learned to look them in the eyes 'cause I don't look like what I am, okay? I'm a powerful person. But the economy will go up eventually. It's a struggle. And I know there are a lot of homeless, I work with the homeless too. Did you know that Southfield is sheltered? I know how it's structured. I know there are the homeless that walk among us, drive among us, they're wonderful people, but here and there is a troublemaker. And I give them out and I try to help them, so I'm, I'm clearing them. I volunteer at CIO, that's blah, blah, blah. Anyway, cut to the chase. Traffic in Southfield is a lot here from the city college. Southfield, I moved to Louisville. Where I lived, on Winchester, which is now, cut through the street, which flights on both sides, you know? Kids have been run over there, dogs have been killed there, no kids in six sites, it's all residential. That's my next focus, watch out, city hall, coming after you, you get chased after. But as long as I express my heart, I will fight on. Why do I still have to stop here? Because it's a wonderful city. Unfortunately, it's not what it was. I would work with it and I hope you guys do the same thing. Don't just jump at Walmart and pick up this, what is it, $500,000? Big deal, I got more of that in my, my case. If you take that, you're gonna make four, I'm gonna make four of a million, half a million. If you know how to use your money, you said before, that will come. Nobody mentioned taxes. You know where it impacts me? I go to, I used to go to AAA. Now I go to State Farm and they're, well, it's the cheapest, ten, two inches penny, they go, oh, I'm a six income. And three pensions, they're still a six income. When I get my car insurance and I get my house insurance with all this discount and everything, it is going through the roof. You know why? Because crime is here. I have friends east of Eastfield, they all set foot in here. We have a wonderful theater. I go to, I have to go alone because they won't come here. We are received in a very dangerous area. I go down the side, I graze, and I do volunteer there too. And I volunteer in reports and all that stuff. When I drive down Coolish, we become shake her, I see Southfield. I see the pawn shop. And believe it or not, I drive down Wood with it. Don't anybody touch me, I can kill them. But seriously, we here is coming this way, it is coming this way. Now let me talk to the people.
Now please, uh...
City Council, no, I'm gonna finish with that. Tell everybody, next Monday, City Council will be discussing this, that is a very short time. If you want to talk to a congressman, email him. First initial, last thing, run together, at citiofsouthfield.com. Let's get in on data with emails.
Hey, I'm sorry, your time is up.
They told me to shut up, I know. Good evening. My name is Ms. Delkan, President of Southfield Home and Recreation, uh, field box forty-two twenty-one, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. I am going to echo the same sentiment from most of the people that have spoken. Uh, location, location, location. Well, Southfield is not the correct location, there are places. Uh, Ms. Delkan mentioned small businesses and we have to talk about the impact on small businesses. And, uh, Walmart's reputation precedes itself. I personally have never been a shopper at Walmart and I never will be. But I do love my small businesses in Southfield and I do patronize them as much as I possibly can. Uh, items of operation are of a concern relative to public safety. Again, Walmart's reputation in parking lots precedes itself. So we talk about the resources that we have here. While we want tax dollars, we need it desperately. Uh, in exchange, do we pay public safety to police the parking lot of Walmart? Uh, the other item is, um, let's see, small business, this is pretty much about it. I hope that through the chair, the, uh, people who are attending the meeting, make sure that they attend the City Council meeting. And that will be the final decision that will be made, and I thank you for your attention.
Good evening again. My name is Thomas Nussler, and I, I just want to along with me, through and from top of you. Listening to, I have a sheet here that I wrote out before I died. And it seems that everything that I have down here, I mentioned before, except that while the gentleman, uh, from Lincoln Village, said about a helping entrance to the master plan, this meeting would not be necessary if Mr. Crowe had followed the master plan. The limit that the site has to, uh, turn on a fifty, uh, seventy-five thousand feet, Walmart couldn't be able to make. You know, if the chief manager would have looked at the town plan and had the plan, at what is available, what is wanted from the city that's at site, we wouldn't be here. I wouldn't have had to set out five hundred cars together, residents, to come down here for this important fight. Now, the dean works asked me to mention that, please give it down. The dean works asked me to mention that I'm gonna have a whole meeting this Monday and they will be discussing Walmart. That hasn't been publicized yet. And the dean works hasn't come here.
He won this year.
He's in his way. You know, so I, anybody that, you know, from my homeowners association that has come here, please spread the word, we gotta be here again on Monday night. And the meeting will be in this room. Now, the safety concerns that my homeowners have with twenty-four hours, in the site manual, please, that they're going to put three entries and exits into Mr. Yono's little apartment lot. It's very simple for people coming in in the middle of the night, to shop at Walmart, to use those exits to go into our neighborhood called Old Ford Square. The tra, uh, no left turn onto Eastbound 12 Mile Road. Everybody's going, has to make a right-hand turn. The closest street is Sky Street, the next street over is Rock Street. People are gonna go down those streets, go in somewhere, drive, return around, disrupt everybody else's traffic. People are trying to, they're living in an area to move, go in and out of it. They wouldn't have to access public sites, let alone 12 Mile and Southfield Road. So like I say, if Mr. Crowe had looked at the master plan, none of us would have been there. Thank you.
Through the chair. I, I just wanna, I just wanna respond to a couple comments, just so everybody's aware. Um, December third, the City Council will be having a preliminary presentation on the proposed Walmart. There is no public hearing scheduled at this time yet. They will have to come back to City Council at least in January and notifications will be posted at the time that the meetings are scheduled. There will be a preliminary discussion, no action will be taken Monday night. With respect to some of the comments about the master plan, um, that my, uh, fellow planner made, um, some of the things we're taking out of contacts, I'd be happy to address those when, when the commission and the program is done. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Philip Jackson from the Seventh Temple Church of God in Christ located in Ninety-eight Forty-One Dundee in the city of Troy. This is the oldest church of God in Christ in the state of Michigan, founded in nineteen fourteen. I've been pastoring for the last twenty-five years. Many of our members which have, uh, live in Southfield, in fact, many of them that are here even this evening, live in the city of Southfield. I shop in Southfield. I travel up and down Southfield Road, I travel up and down 12 Mile, very familiar with the city. Many, as I said, many of our members or the parishioners live here in the city. We wasn't bothering anyone. We got a call that there's a church on 12 Mile and Southfield Road, and all you need to do is come by, take a look at it, and make an offer. I brought four hundred members from my church. On a Sunday afternoon, we walked through the building, we were told to make an offer. We made the offer. We went to Monday and Lewis Law Firm. We prepared a wonderful, uh, presentation, and met with, got an appraisal, presented it to Mike Moran, and was told that we hear that Walmart has an interest and their cost, what they're gonna pay, is gonna be far more than what you could ever pay. I met with the Archbishop, I met with Cardinal Maida, and they told me, Cardinal Maida, that they were gonna get us the church. For four and a half years, my congregation had been waiting to see what we're gonna do, are they going to accept it? We were told we were close, it looks like you're gonna get it. In fact, we made the timing to you, that's giving it to me. And, uh, but they allow, they are allowing the property to go down in the way it looked with the, uh, paid, with the paid parking lot with grass growing all through. That is a beautiful facility. It do not have to be destroyed. Uh, I have, uh, three landscapers that, in my church, I have carpenters, I have painters, I have electricians, I have plumbers, I have people that can take that property and make it look like Buckingham Palace, or make it look like a private palace. It needs to remain at the church. It was built for a church. It is a church. Too many prayers have gone up in that building to, for it to be met with a wrecking ball. I talked with Jerry Yono, you don't know me, but I talked to you on the phone, and told you that I was willing to continue to share after the, uh, receiving the property, however we would receive it, I was willing to share with you all the parking that you would need to make it comfortable for you. And, uh, I told the archdiets, the building in the back where, uh, the seniors go every day, senior daycare, and I would even look that way for over six months. I told them the school where the artistic students are studying, they can stay there for a year, I would not even disturb them. And we were on focus to get this property until Walmart came in and said they wanted it. And all of a sudden, the little fella gets swiped out and knocked out of the proposal so that a giant can come in. But I got news for Walmart, giants do fall.
I don't know if we should play after that.
I am Diane T. B. Thompson. I live at one seven zero four one Edwards Avenue, upper right-hand corner on the diet road and the proposed dummy. I'm a twenty-year resident of Southfield. I represent not only my interests, but the interests of several residents on Edwards Avenue. It is one of the streets in Southfield with very old residents, many of whom could not be here today because of medical problems, because of age. We also have disabled, uh, gentlemen on our street. Um, let me tell you a little bit about Edwards Avenue and the environment, the culture, and how we found out about the proposed Walmart, which is a little dismay for residents who have been there for twenty, thirty, and fifty years on Edwards Avenue. The Southfield sun started an email and phone calls among residents. And I'm dismayed because we were before you before with the Golden Corral restaurant, where everyone resided, never having received notice from Golden Corral. And here we are again with Walmart, we received notice from a newspaper article. Yes, a funeral home was notified, perhaps there's a business interest there, I don't know. But I'd like the council members to keep in the first, foremost part of your mind, what about the residents? Twenty, thirty, and fifty-year residents of the city of Southfield, how will Walmart impact our everyday life in the city of Southfield? Edwards Avenue does not have sidewalks, you see people walking. Edwards Avenue would become Highway Edwards because it is the holy street between Greenfield and Southfield Road. Right now, it is a main thoroughfare during school hours where people go between fifty and seventy miles an hour down our street. That's, the police officers know my driveway, they use it as a hidden venue to catch the speed of, like, fifty and sixty and seventy miles an hour down the street. It will enhance an already existing traffic problem. A twenty-four-hour venue provides an opportunity for fine, driving, uh, property values, all the, the points that have already been made by residents and the city of Southfield. But again, I want to make a point, what about the residents? Why have we not been approached by Walmart with a preliminary plan? Why haven't we not had input into, what concerns do you have as residents, twenty, thirty, fifty year residents of the city of Southfield? How can we live together in Southfield? We have not been approached with that. And for that reason alone, this is how you do business. You approach one business in the city of Southfield. One business did not create the city. These residents have paid taxes in this city for twenty, thirty, fifty years. What about the residents in Southfield that have elected you to these offices? What about the residents? How will this Walmart can affect our everyday life? What about the residents in Southfield that have elected you to these offices? What about the residents? How will this Walmart affect our everyday life in terms of traffic, in terms of crime, in terms of odor? We moved to Southfield on Edwards Avenue, everyone living there has a lot of its own expenses. We live there, we moved there because of the tranquility that it affords us. Walmart will not enhance the tranquility of our neighborhood. The two are not compatible. Granted, it will be, bring a lot of revenue to the city, and I encourage you to, to go after a Walmart for the city, perhaps in another location that is already zoned for that purpose, in a business area, not in that particular business, for all of the reasons that it already has faced. What about the residents? Please keep that in mind. That is primary. Thank you.
My name is Allen Hitzke, I live at one ninety five five zero Elton. I'm a little less than a mile north and a mile west of this site, but I walk by it almost every day. I also drive by it, unfortunately. Mr. Yono, I go past your property, I ride my bike across your parking lot. You deserve a better parking lot, but not if it's connected to Walmart. Not if traffic will go down Cash Avenue to avoid a traffic jam that already exists on Twelve Mile Road. People are going to go through that neighborhood. And ladies and gentlemen, if you live in that neighborhood, I can't see you voting for this. And if you don't live in that neighborhood, you have the duty to those of us who do that, not to vote for this issue.
Colleen Bassett, two zero six four five Woodburne. A thirty-five-year resident. I support the rebuilding of Twelve Mile and Southfield Road and building Walmart. There's been so much unfairness here tonight, so much undue fear because of misunderstandings. There has been a lapse of communication with your, your study planning sessions, but so many people were unable to attend those. Um, I do want to address the question of selling the property. If you were selling your home, wouldn't you try to find the best buyer? Is there something that lacks integrity in doing that? You have a right to sell where you can get the best price. That's always fair. We have all residents who are communities where the towns appear to have frozen in a time warp thirty years ago. David structures, neglected landscaping, and weeding parking lots shall be declining condition of the city. Welcome to Southfield and Twelve Mile Road in our city. Such untouched, undoing sites announce the cities that will not be viable communities of future. Such sites are like a cancer, spreading and devaluing commercial and residential properties around them. That's what the residents aren't addressing. That site does not improve the value of their property. Southfield tends and should do whatever is possible to change this decaying within. We are now present with a thousand companies. Walmart offering to upgrade and build a state-of-the-art property on such a quarter. Without its development, this city cannot survive it. We cannot keep saying no, no, no. We're not going to be here. No, we can't. We have a willing client. We have a willing seller and a plan for that commercial property. I need commissioners, let tolerance proceed, that's why I do that. Let's build. Let's Southfield move forward. This property has that vision for five years. What are we waiting for? Be there, support it. We've got a buyer and a seller, let's go. And I also ask for integrity, but in quite another direction from each of you. It's hard to handle this, but I'm asking you to do it. Do what's right. I also ask you to respect the recommendations from the planning department. Their expertise is why that department exists and why they're on the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Janice, I live at three zero two two six North East Drive, Southfield, forty zero seven six. I think it's important for us to all remember, um, what Walmart is known for worldwide. What are they known for? They're known for unethical, immoral, socially unjust, despicable practices. They've been criticized worldwide by labor unions, political organizations, community groups, grassroots organizations, environmental groups, and their own employees and customers. And one of some of these criticisms, some of which we have already heard tonight, but I think they are worth repeating and summarizing. First of all, poor treatment of their own employees in terms of low wages, lack of healthcare coverage, denial of overtime pay and, and reasonable breaks, inadequate healthcare, and poor working conditions. In addition, poor customer relations, use of sweatshops and slave labor worldwide, environmental issues, predatory pricing, which of course means selling at low prices to drive out smaller businesses in the area. In addition, they're known for gender discrimination and racial discrimination. I myself have lived in Southfield since nineteen ninety, and I, like most everyone here tonight, really love this community, and I believe that it holds incredible untapped potential. I shudder to think that the city of Southfield would stoop to literally deal with the devil, which would be disaster, I am convinced, and many of us might are, disaster for our neighborhood and for our existing residents. So I ask you to please remember again what is Walmart known for worldwide? Unethical, immoral, unjust, and despicable practices. That's not what Southfield needs or wants, that's not our image, that's not who we are. And I have confidence in you have this body tonight and the wider city council today, you will make the right decision for all of us in Southfield. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Donald Zudwindai. I am UAW. I was one of those out protesting, um, trying to assist our brothers and sisters at Walmart to get a control, to be treated fairly. Um, I am a resident of Southfield, my address is two eight one four three Marshall, Southfield, Michigan. I am one of those residents that cuts through Edwards because there's too much traffic, trying to get to Target, or to Burlington, or to Home Depot. I am requesting of this council to deny the zoning until we get a suitable company, organization, facility that will complement Southfield. I moved here from general Michigan, which is a small town, which I'm sure everybody knows because they passed through it going to Ohio. I moved here because it was similar. It was a place that I wanted to raise my children, and I did so. Three wonderful children graduated from Southfield Laker and Southfield High. I am very proud of Southfield, but I despise Walmart. They will eliminate jobs. They say they will bring two hundred and seventy odd jobs. Am I correct? Yes, no?
About that.
About that. But how many, how many jobs will they eliminate because they have undercut, undercut the prices of the other businesses? We are known for our small businesses here in Southfield, entrepreneurship. Those small businesses down here at Kroger, where Kroger is, those businesses will be gone. The businesses over here in, uh, with Burlington, those businesses will be gone. They have a hard time, hard times to keep their revenue up. You bring Walmart in to undercut them, I'm sorry, you will lose more than two hundred and seventy-two jobs. And these are the people that live in Southfield, that work in Southfield, that pay taxes in Is this what we want? That's what I want to know. Is this what we want? How many jobs do we want to eliminate to get two hundred and seventy-two jobs? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Tyler, two nine seven five five, Redwood Drive. This is, um, the fact that Walmart has given, have ever heard of a group called ALICE, A-L-B-C. Well, Walmart contributes to this company, and this is the company's ally, which was the, the next pair, was putting out funds to fight against people owning rights. And for myself, I don't want to give my money to Walmart, but then to contribute to a group like ALICE to fight against me and the rights that I have.
Thank you.
My name is Lord Hill, I live at three nine two two one Sucker's Drive, which is directly behind the facility where we're speaking of. I think we have two issues. One, we're talking about rezoning. If the archdiocese has decided that they don't want to sell to another church, that's not the archdiocese's decision. We can't enforce that. However, if they choose to sell, Pastor, I'm supporting you having that church, and I feel that we should not rezonate. If the archdiocese is choosing not to sell to this church, and they decide, which is their decision, to sell to a company like Walmart, then yes, we should rezonate. And then we need to move forward. We're too, too long to we sit here and dish upon what happened in the nineteen fifty's. We're not there anymore. We have to be more progressive. We have to look at the needs of the people in the neighborhood. Currently, within a mile, there's no pharmacy, there's no grocery store, and there's no restaurants. If you ever have to walk in, I defy you to walk that in the winter time. They don't show us no on Twelve Mile. There is no sidewalk on Southfield until you get beyond Edwards. So for people who live in that, in that area, if you don't have transportation, it's a nightmare trying to get any services. So I ask you to consider, when you look at making the decision, consider number one, what do the people in the area require? They require food, they require shelter, they require a safe neighborhood, and they require services. Also require safety. To cross any of those intersections right now, Twelve Mile or Southfield are dangerous. The lights are not timed correctly, and people have all been run over. And if you have children, I defy you to send them to a store without having to cross any of those busy streets. So when you make your decision, I ask you to consider the services of the neighborhood, consider the decision that the archdiocese has to make, which is beyond their control, and please consider the people who live in that neighborhood and the services that are required. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to make my statement shortly, technically I'm not a Southfield resident, I'm a pastor of Lake Village, but my daughter is graduated from St. Dean, and I know what a beautiful facility, what a beautiful church it is. Not sure about what the condition is now, that was seven years ago, but I am handsome of the zoning, the zoning of that area, took a hot, a hot, uh, area for the family, and that, uh, there's some, uh, association person has dated, but time out.
Thank you.
Well, my sugar, I just talked here a little bit earlier, speaking about Tim Hortons, three six zero three side North East, and I was concerned about Tim Hortons before being unsafe for, you know, a twenty-four-hour facility, about it, which is, you know, attract, you know, kids from the schools, you know, just hanging out there. I'm even more concerned about, you know, what Walmart would do to, you know, the Cranbrook Village neighborhood, as well as Kingswood Place, where, you know, my family and others were, and I live in Cranbrook Village. I've been a resident of Southfield for thirty-one years, and what attracted me here initially was that it was a nice, safe community. And it has changed over the years, and very sad to see, and with, you know, Walmart coming in, it's going to change you more for the worse because of, you know, all the reasons that this has been stated, you know, connected property values, traffic congestion, crime, you know, the, uh, the more aggressive system Walmart, and frankly, you know, after thirty-one years, now if this store goes in, I think myself and my family will probably lose. That's all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Meyer, and I live at eight seven eighty Chicago Road in Warren. I'm, um, an employee of Transfiguration Church at two five two two five Cove Road in Southfield. I'm their business manager. Um, I have been managing the property at St. Dean for over five years now, since we had our other closing and merger of the, um, four parishes in Southfield. And what you may not understand, when the archdiocese closes parishes and merges them into a single parish, the single parish that has responsibility for those four parishes takes the financial responsibility of that property. Their property has caused us in excess of over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain. It has been a struggle for our parish, it has been, we have filed police reports for damage to their property, we have had vandalism on their property, and no church is safe from vandalism. We just filed five police reports in the last two months for our property at Transfiguration. We had two police stakeouts on our property at Transfiguration. No property is safe from vandalism. We've had many, many schools and churches, um, interested in the property over the past five years. Some of them have given us offers, some of them, um, we've facilitated washrooms, you know, for different charter schools that have come through, but the Walmart offer has been the only viable offer that we've had. I can't change your offer, I was not present in your meetings with the cardinal or the Archbishop, but I do know that if there is a valid offer that comes through, the pastor of Transfiguration Church must approve that. He must have had his son of him to approve it because even though the Archbishop owns the property, the parish that is responsible for it must approve that property, and we do not get anything in front of us for that.
Please be respectful.
I'd like to address that portion of it. Um, but this property has been an extreme hardship on our parish, it's kept our parish from moving forward and growing, and, um, I do hope that you support the reasons of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lenny Henderson, and I live at twenty-nine nine four zero North West in Southfield. I've lived there for over thirty years, and when I moved here, it was the ideal place for my family. My daughter was in Southfield Laker High School, and it was wonderful. Uh, home people came in, and I was displaced. They took one of my homes, I was, had to relocate. Uh, party came in, uh, all of these large, uh, establishments came in, and here comes Walmart. We don't need another all-night burger here, Miles, clear, CBS here, now Walmart. We don't need, uh, I'd like to echo many things that others have said. In addition... In addition to that, I'd like to talk about, uh, the environmental aspect, pollution, these large trucks that are through, these stores are, um, industry, roads, parks, all of that, that has not been mentioned. That, that's one to happen, when you start getting more large trucks, pollution. Also, I'd like to address that. I live just across the street from Edwards, and that traffic, I hear it's all night long, of traffic going through there. Now, if it's bad now, can you imagine what it's going to be like when it's all night, here, in Southfield, Walmart? I oppose to Walmart, I do not want it in my neighborhood.
Thank you. No, we really don't need to clap, because we're afraid we clap and appreciate it.
I'm Tom Bassett, I live in Southfield, uh, two zero six four five Leburne, I've been there for thirty-five years. Uh, and as I look at what we have at twelve mile and Southfield Road, it draws me to looking at the comprehensive master plan. And it's not just something you worked on, the city council approved it. We have a pattern, and this property eventually is going to become the three. It is only a question of when. Right now, we have an organization, we have purchase agreements in place, that are ready to put substantial investment in our community, in construction and upgrades. Traffic, I heard in your study meetings, quarter million dollar investment in upgrading to life at both Edwards and Walmart. Quarter million dollars. No money out of the city, no money out of the company, this is money coming into our community. Two hundred and fifty jobs better than zero jobs. And someone who wants to make claim that jobs by this organization necessarily wipe out jobs by everybody else doesn't believe that there is a free marketplace in which people present their skills.
Thirteen percent of our labor?
Okay, we have had here, Steve, a work for a little while, we have had here this evening, a discussion that has D-volved into name calling. It has D-volved into claims that government officials in this city, including you honorable commissioners, are subject to bribery and influence, that we're going to become North Detroit. My God, we might serve the area. What's the matter, that we can't deal with this as a zoning issue, get this property into B-three where it belongs, and then get into the next debate about what kind of facility will be on that site?
It's a moral question.
Thank you.
A moral question.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ken Peterson, I live at five thousand Towne Center. I'm president of my condo association of two hundred and fifty families. I'm also seated among the city center advisory board, and so I work with the planning commission and the planners. Yeah, I'm here to add my voice to support the rezoning, and get this to B-three. And the reason is tax revenue. Something we haven't really talked all that much about, and I know that Walmart proposal promises three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional tax revenue for the city. Now, whether you believe that or not, uh, the city, you should believe, is going through a budget crunch. We call it a budget crisis, but with what's going on with personal properties, accident planning, and, uh, the fact that our city's taxable values, as we've heard here, are down. Your property values are down eleven percent this year, and on top of a thirteen percent drop last year. The total tax base of the city has taken what was a dollar four years ago, down to sixty-four cents currently. If the city could put all of the proposed Walmart three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into its general fund, that would, in effect, pay the three smart consultants. Or it would put a library back in full-time operation. The other, let me just tell you a good story. The other day, I spoke with a resident who said that she'd rather have another tax-exempt facility institution take over St. Dean property. And I talked about Walmart adding to Southfield's tax revenue. And we really need funds. In the course of our conversation, I came to realize that she did not recognize just how mutually pressured our city is. Why? Because our city management's done such a good job of doing more with less. The city's budget crunch hasn't touched individual residents personally. We are doing more with less, and we have hidden the less. The crunch is out of sight, and therefore out of mind. Our streetlights are on, our police officers and firefighters show up, our roads are being repaired, but the budget crunch leaves Walmart's tax revenue out of sight, out of mind. For that resident, it was only a reduction of the library hours that touched her personally, a cutback that affected her life, and hinted, just hinted at the bigger budget crunch in Southfield. I see that budget crunch and the need for revenue as a overriding issue that trumps the others. Now, I ask you to approve the rezoning.
Thank you.
Travis Gibson, two nine six four eight Somerset Drive, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Um, I just had a few things, I won't belabor the points, I concur with a lot of what was said, and I'm not gonna talk about the moral and ethical issues, but we're gonna talk about, um, we don't know what kind of neighborhood Walmart's gonna be. Um, talking about communication, found out about the public hearing in the sun, um, I was at the town hall, they did the presentation, found out about that the day of. If we're gonna, we have to know what kind of neighborhood Walmart's gonna be, and if that's the type of communication that we're getting, I, I have some concerns about what kind of neighborhoods are gonna be. I'm concerned about the traffic, we talked about that at nauseam, the traffic on twelve mile and Southfield Road is ridiculous, at the time of the day of I get home, and that's the crime shot in time. Um, the crime is, is a big concern for me. Um, we asked at the town hall, they had, what, what are the, what are the numbers? What's the crime impact when Walmart comes up in the community? And we were told they don't, Walmart doesn't have those numbers, that goes with the local community. Do we know that that looks like admission? There have been several Walmarts that opened in Michigan? Do we know what the crime impact has been to those communities? We don't have streetlights on Somerset Drive, I don't want streetlights on Somerset Drive, but we all know predators hunt in the dark and in the night. I've left my brother, we honestly take several times, and, you know, I don't want crime increase, and go outside, and, you know, I buy motion detectors and close search cameras just for my house. So we need a great degree of communication, we need to understand what kind of neighborhood Walmart's gonna be. They wanna put up a, put the Walmart sign on one of these industrial pillars that you see off the highway. We don't need that in the community. Whether or not the zoning is approved, whether or not Walmart is approved to build there, that sign is terrible, and we asked them not to put that sign up when we went to the town hall, and there was resistance to our recommendation not to put that sign up. It's not industrial area, we don't want that pillar sign in our neighborhood. So commissioners, you know, I would, I would hope that you consider everything I've said here tonight, and we will certainly, as, as the public hearing, when the city council hears about, uh, presents this or hears this in a public hearing. But my concern is what kind of neighborhood is Walmart gonna be? Do, we hear about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax revenue, and that's great, but is that gonna be offset by the increase in need, police presence? By the need for streetlights on Somerset Drive in the area where I live in? By the need for increased emergency responders because of incidents happening in Walmart? You know, I, I don't know, and we haven't seen the data, it's about the data, someone has, can we see it, or do we have no chance of citizens in the community? Thank you.
My name is Barbara Padley, and I'm, I, what have I been doing, my problems lies in the city of Southfield. I am a former city councilwoman, and I can remember in, in nineteen eighty, when we helped Edwards Street and that area around there to be safe. And I remember walking there, and walking that area, and working with the people to do that. I would not want Edwards Street or any other street in Southfield to be damaged, definitely not. Number two was that I live in the southern part of Southfield, I mean, the Southfield development area. And we have, over the last, I think, five, six years, been watching some retail companies in that area, not necessarily Walmart, but some retailers in that area. Now Walmart has come in. What I ask the question is, has Walmart considered another area in Southfield? In that downtown development area around North Land Ball, doesn't have to be North Land Ball, but there are other areas down that way. It is your job as planners of Southfield to look at all of Southfield, not just twelve mile road in Southfield. You'll let Walmart come in, and who knows? We want to have Walmart, but we want it in an area where it will support itself and also have customers. And also, this question about crime and the question about Walmart's morale, have you ever stopped to think that all this city has been supporting Firestone? Firestone in Africa was the same thing as what you're talking about Walmart here. And we had to petition Walmart in Africa to stop with its demonization of, of people, of youth. And we made it happen. We made it happen as far as the union contract. I think as a community activist, we can do anything to make Walmart stand up to their standards. We can make Walmart stand up to anything that we want if we combine ourselves and we tell Walmart that that's what we want. As far as, uh, crime is concerned, it doesn't have to be Southfield's business, we can, we, Walmart has their own community to do that. I'm just saying that I don't care anything about community activism to make Walmart do something, or to make the city do something. Uh, Royal, you've been, you have been on the planning commission for a long time, and I would expect you to listen to, to all of the people here. It was the time that we would never, never go through a, a hearing without having the neighbor's input before you got here. And so we have to just read in the paper that this is going to happen. We would never have done that. And I'm just saying that from experience, and from the history of Southfield, that no, I would not want it as Southfield and twelve mile road, but there are alternatives in this city, and we can make Walmart do what they're supposed to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Amber Lee Ha, and I live at three zero three two zero Old Street Road in Southfield. This proposal comes as a pretty sharp stick in the eye, and real simple, big picture. All you have to do is compare what good old St. Dean stood for, and what Walmart stands for, it hurts, and, thank you.
I'm Patricia Martin, and I've been in Hampton Court for the last twenty-two or so years. And, uh, as a planning department and planning commission, uh, the functional planning is to set up a long-term plan for the city of Southfield. And in this area, I would expect the planning commissioners and the planning department to look at the area and try to encourage and solicit businesses and services that we don't have available in that area. Now, in this area, twelve in Southfield, we have those services already there. When I looked at the paper, it said that Walmart expects to offer a door merchandise, groceries, and a garden center. Well, we have Kroger a mile away at two two nine five five twelve mile road in Edwards sells groceries. We have Home Depot that's less than a half a mile on twenty-nine eight one Southfield Road that sells going-to-planning tools. We have Target less than a mile away at three zero three 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 Southfield Road that sells general merchandise and groceries. We have Miss Block, Marshes, Burlington, and other businesses in the twenty-nine thousand seven hundred block of Southfield Road that sell the same thing. We have Myers, it's two miles away, on twenty-eight eight hundred telegraph at twelve mile, that's general merchandise and groceries. We have Lowe's, that's two miles away, at two eight six five oh telegraph at twelve mile, that sells going-to, supplies and tools. We have Fruitage's Market less than a mile away, on three zero six zero zero Southfield Road that sells groceries. And all the other small businesses on twelve mile and Southfield Road. We have these services. As I said, a planning department should have a long-range, range plan for the city, that offers businesses, goods, and services that's not available for the residents in that area and will benefit the cities. And I don't think Walmart in this area will offer any new businesses, any new services that we don't already have available.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing the weather, it's gonna include our public portion of the meeting, and I'm gonna turn it over to the commissioner. Um, just, just to remind the commissioner, we have some letters we'd like to read them to the director first, if that's okay. Um, I, I do wanna just make a brief comment that the, um, planning commission has held three study sessions prior to this meeting. State law requires notification of all residents within three hundred feet of the proposed property. It's been the past practice of the city to extend that to three hundred and fifty feet. Because of the potential impact of the proposed rezoning, the planning department has doubled that effort to seven hundred feet. So we, um, we sent out over six hundred letters to personal residents within seven hundred feet. Mr. Spence read all of the homeowners associations that were notified. This was in addition to four separate neighborhood town meetings that Walmart held before it came to planning commission. Part of our outreach has also been to work with the local newspapers, and I, I would imagine that many of the, many of the residents are here because of the article recommending. We encourage public input, it's important for the planning department and the planning commission to hear all the views and comments before we make a final decision. And although sometimes it may be a long evening, it's important for the process that the commissioners hear from residents, so that we don't overlook any particular issues. With that, I think Mr. Spence and I will try to, as, as quickly as we can, recognize all the people that have submitted letters. Dear city council members, this is a letter dated, I'm gonna read them in chronological order, from the oldest to the most recent, and the commissioners all have a copy of this packet. We're right to express our strong support for the proposed Walmart development plan at the above reference site. We currently own the property on the southeast corner of twelve mile and Southfield Road, and have felt that the site has been a huge drawback to the area. It has been our experience that an abandoned lot with no business on intends to give a general state conceit to the entire area, and we were pleased to learn of the proposed Walmart. Development of the site will not just help revitalize this area, but complete the look and feel of the commercial retail corridor. We also support the rezoning of the site to the, um, B-three designation. The master plan and future land use map reflect the original intent of the area around the site being designated as retail and commercial, and we expect that the city will stay committed to this plan. It is our understanding that this development will not just be developed as a Walmart, but a Walmart supercenter. We completely support this. We completely support this plan. A Walmart development will have a positive impact on surrounding commercial properties, provide employment opportunities for citizens, and increase the tax base for the city. We also note that Walmart developments are a long-term commitment to the community and being a supercenter only adds to the idea that it will strengthen this area economically, aesthetically, and financially. Sincerely, Sincerely, Kojorian Management Corporation, Anthony G. Anton, Esquire's First Vice President Development. Our next letter is dated August twenty eighth, two thousand and twelve. Dear Mayor Lawrence and City Council Members, this letter is sent to you to voice support for the proposed Walmart development of the site. As a business owner in Southfield, I am very concerned about light and vacant commercial property. These conditions reduce tax revenues and also harm nearby businesses. The recent economic downturn has caused many area businesses to either leave or close, and we are concerned that this, that the site, if continued to be unused, will add to the continued degradation to this vital commercial corridor. There are few investors willing to inject capital into the area and are subject to these conditions. Excuse me, Mr. Jerome. The area around the site is designated as a retail and commercial area on the master plan and on the future land use map. We would expect the city follow its prior decisions, memorialize in these documents. As a result, we support the rezoning of the site to B3 zoning designation. We believe that this decision will benefit all citizens of the city of Southfield. Also, we support the plans of Walmart to develop the site into a supercenter. Based on its history in Michigan, Walmart developments have positive financial impacts on nearby commercial properties and businesses and have provided clear benefits to the entire community. As an example, a new store in Lebonia. Michigan has attracted many new tenants to an otherwise struggling commercial shopping center. We also had the same experience with the Walmart supercenter we developed in Lebonia. A Walmart supercenter will be a welcome member to the business community in the area because it will increase the financial viability of nearby businesses and much-needed jobs for our citizens, will increase the tax base for the city, and will be an investment into the long-term strength of the city and its business community. Yours very truly, David Choestat. Next letter is dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve. Hello, Terry. Thank you for meeting with me today to review our concerns regarding the subject property. As discussed, our business is located on the north side of Twelve Mile Road and on the west side of Guy Street, adjacent to the funeral home. Based on our long history at this location, we are very concerned about the parking situation as a result of the proposed new Walmart store in combination with the existing funeral home. I've attached a couple items to illustrate the significant parking issues and our neighbors' are currently experiencing which are caused by the funeral home. The first is a letter we had written to the city of Southfield back in August of two thousand and five. The second is a picture I took last month. All the cars shown in the picture are from the funeral home. As you can see, there has not been much progress made in the past seven years. There are times when we have to park in our neighbor's lot and there were no spaces in ours. I understand that the Walmart proposal allows for additional parking spaces to the north of the funeral home. However, remain unconvinced that this will eliminate our problem as people will continue to use the parking lot for convenience purposes. It is closer to their building entrance. Our thought is that the best way to eliminate the issue would be to remove the entrance to the funeral home off of Guy Street. We ask that you consider this as a yes alternative if not feel feasible. We greatly appreciate your focus on this issue as you finalize your plans, and we will be happy to meet directly with you in the future. Sincerely, Terry Thomas, Vice President, Thomason Jones Group. The next letter is dated November first, two thousand and twelve. Dear Mr. Spence, I am writing a responsible letter I received from Walmart informing of their desire to locate a new twenty-four hour supercenter at the northwest corner of Southfield Road and West Twelve Mile Road, offering a full grocery and many other convenient amenities. I was unable to attend their ten twenty-five meeting, but hope to attend your meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the eleventh, on November seventh at six thirty P.M. Should I be unable to attend, I would appreciate you entering my letter into the minutes of your meeting. I have been a proud Southfield resident for thirty-six years, graduated in nineteen sixty-eight with honors from Southfield High School, crowned in Southfield nineteen sixty-eight, and graduated with Hopewood Writing Award honors with a BA from the University of Michigan. I returned to Southfield after a broadcast journalism career in Los Angeles and Salt Lake City to raise my children and intended to make Southfield my final home. However, the incursion of Walmart into our quiet peaceful subdivision may necessitate me leaving my beloved community. A twenty-four hour Walmart supercenter offers more negatives than positives: traffic safety. Our subdivision entrance at Twelve Mile and Guy Street would be constantly congested with Walmart traffic competing our deep breaths to our subdivision. There would be an increased safety hazard from congestion traffic in and out of Walmart, from cross-traffic including semi-trucks at Southfield Road and Twelve Mile Road, increasing accidents, especially in the winter, where snow piles, blocked corner sightlines, and traffic light may be required at Guy Street and Twelve Mile Road. Road damage. We just had Twelve Mile Road resurface. Additional heavy truck and customer traffic in and out of Walmart would increase pothole damage and necessitate constant resurfacing costing more taxpayer expense. Neighborhood saving. An adverse criminal element drawn to Walmart from other neighboring cities would have access to our subdivision at all hours of the day and night, compromising our neighborhood saving security. Twenty-four hour lights. Bright lights surrounding Walmart parking lot would disturb the peace of our community and keeping residents awake at night. Noise pollution. Twenty-four hour customer truck noise would create noise pollution day and night, disturbing the peace of our community. Property value decline. Homeowners would lose the equity in their homes. Our property resale value would decline an additional forty percent in addition to the current depreciation. We already suffer from the economic recession increase foreclosures in our city. Prevalence of megamarks. The addition of twenty-four hour Walmart would create three megamarks within two blocks of Southfield Road, Target, Home Depot, and Walmart. Walmart will push out the remaining small business presence upon which Southfield residents have come to rely on over the years. Example, House of Watchbands, Einstein Bagels, and other local shops, as Home Depot did with Damon's House of Land. The increased commercialization of this area requires traffic lights at almost every block along Southfield Road to control the increased traffic congestion, delaying the traffic flow on Southfield Road. Walmart would only increase traffic congestion at Twelve Mile and Southfield and increase traffic backup eight times at this intersection. We have a twenty-four hour C V S on the corner of Southfield and Thirteen Mile Road and a Provers on Twelve and Evergreen. We don't need another one-stop megashop in this area. Basement flooding. Building contractors may cause basement flooding, as Home Depot did when Home Depot failed to install a drain along the rear of Miller Park as required, violating building codes in its construction on Southfield Road. All our houses that backed up to the park had flooding in our basement. Low-paying jobs. Jobs created by Walmart would be low-paying, non-union jobs, and diminish the area instead of improving it. I have invested a great deal in renovations of my home over the years and strongly feel that allowing Walmart to permit a, to build a twenty-four hour megamark on the corner of Southfield Road and Twelve Mile would additionally reduce our property values, compromise our saving, threaten the integrity of our community. My neighbors all agree that Walmart would be highly detrimental to our city and subdivision. Please do not allow Walmart a permit to move into this site respectfully yours, Barbara Seiden. Next one is addressed to the Southfield Planning Commission and Mr. Crowe. Mr. Crowe, Southfield Planning Commission. My name is, my name is Clyde Fostick and I reside at two six six nine zero Evergreen Meadows Court here in Southfield. And I'm sending this message of support for myself, my family, and many of my neighbors here in Evergreen Meadows condo complex. For the approval of the intentions of Walmart's order to opening Walmart Supercenter at the northwest corner of Southfield Road and Twelve Mile Road. I feel this intended operation is the very best news we have received in a long time. And ask that you and the entire commission give your presentation careful and positive consideration. It's regarded, Clyde Fostick, two six six nine zero, Evergreen Meadows. Next one dated November seventh, uh, to Southfield Planning Commission. Unfortunately, due to a death of my family, I'm unable to attend a planning commission study meeting to be held this evening, Wednesday, November seventh, two thousand and twelve. Since it's too late for me to send a letter by in the U.S. mail, I hope this email will serve as a written communication to voice my concerns and questions regarding the following issue. On Saturday, November third, as president of the Pinewood Manor Association, thirteen mile east of Southfield Road, I received a legal notice of public hearing scheduled by the city in Southfield from the city clerk's office in Nancy Banks regarding the rezoning and site planner view of Walmart's superstore. Dates of the study meetings of the planning commission were specified. As a forum to voice opinions regarding this matter. In support and concern from several residents in our association below are a few questions. Is Walmart coming to Southfield a done deal? I recall earlier this year was a rumor of Walmarts being located in a specific site began circulating. City of Southfield denied that was happening. What has changed? Concerns regarding traffic congestion. Has there been, has there ever been traffic studies performed in Twelve Mile and Southfield Road? What was the outcome? The intersection of one of the busiest and most congested areas in the city. For logistics purposes, this location would be good for Walmart due to traffic flow, but what about residents trying to commute back and forth? Driving north from six ninety-six to Southfield Road toward Twelve Mile Road, driving south on Southfield Road from Thirteen Mile Road, driving on Twelve Mile Road toward Southfield Road east in west directions. Concerns regarding traffic safety. According to SNCOG, nearby areas such as Eleven Mile Road West, Southfield Road as well as Twelve Mile Road West and Telegraph Road are two of the worst southeast Michigan intersections during each of the last five years. But Walmart is at Twelve Mile and Southfield, traffic would increase. Therefore, what is being proposed for traffic safety? Is there another site within the city of Southfield that would be more viable with less congested traffic? What happened to the site where Super Kmart was located, Eight Mile and Beach? Are there subsidies being offered to Walmart? In any instances, in many instances, state and local government reduced interest on construction loans, reduction of sales tax with specified number of years, et cetera. Is there certainly a mile radius on how close Walmarts are located to each other? Not within a community of location less than ten miles from Walmart facility? Is there, is there an opportunity to voice concerns about the future next scheduled meeting? Your response and results of studying means would be appreciated. Sincerely, Marilyn Grifer, President, Pinewood Manor Manor Homeowners Association. Next one is dated November twelfth. This is from Barb Newman. Dear Planning Commission, I received your letter yesterday regarding the proposed rezoning change. Requests allow Walmart and Southfield Funeral Homes to adjust changes in the corner of Twelve Mile and Southfield. Please consider all of the, some of the following suggestions. Limit access to Guy Street from Twelve Mile Road by either A, blocking off the street at the edge of the proposed parking lot for Southfield Funeral Room, Funeral Home. There are other access routes into the subdivision that would eliminate people from traveling into subdivision, thinking that there was a shortcut around the intersection. We already get a lot of that blocking off the street, of being added level of security for the neighborhood. Or B, restricting access to the street during certain hours, which is only as good as a patrol setup to stop people from using it anyway. Additionally, with regard to suggestion A one, or I'm sorry, one A, above, there would be one lone house on Guy Street prior to the block dump point. You could change the drive to cash and change their address if necessary. That, that may, that way, all Guy Street would be behind the block dump point. Consider a light bulb height we wanted to allow. No one wants a glaring light shining in their home throughout the evening or night, especially in a twenty-four hour business. Consider raising the wall height between the neighborhood and project. Add high berms and trees at the edge of the project that will reduce sound noise, noise levels, and also aforementioned lighting issues. Make sure that garbage pickup and all deliveries are only during normal daytime working hours. Consider not allowing it to be a supercenter twenty-four hour. We already have Target and Meyer. Is Walmart really even necessary, much less twenty-four hours? I have spoken to people who have developed and managed other Walmart projects, properties, and a list of problems it brought them with unending. I have done research online in other communities around the country where Walmarts have been placed, problems that have ensued. I'm afraid the city is looking solely at the tax base this business may bring in, in, bring in and not the negative aspects that will accompany it. The additional resources, cost of the city in terms of crime, suggestion location, et cetera. However, in talking with the real estate agents in the area, it appears that your minds are made up and therefore I'm requesting some consideration for more realistic changes you can incorporate to make this upsetting addition more palatable. Thanks in advance for your consideration and any of all of this is suggestions. That's Barbara Newman. There was an additional email sent by Ms. Newman, Dear Planning Commission Members. My husband and I were out of town this summer when Walmart offered a meeting to explain the situation concerning St. Bees Lot. I wish we would have been there. We are not looking forward to the possibility of such a large retail enterprise at the corner of our neighborhood. I've been doing research about crime in the areas surrounding Walmart stores across the country and it's quite enlightening, our, and frightening. Our neighborhood has undergone change in the past few years, as many have, but it's still a good place to live, aside from the complete desecration of our values. Most of the neighborhood has been stable for many, many years, with turnover most recently in the past four or five. However, most of us still improve our properties and care about the neighborhood. A Walmart on the corner could do nothing but further decrease our home values and there are a number of people struggling to maintain their homes who may decide to just vacate due to anticipated traffic, crime, noise, et cetera. I would hate to see them go. I would hate to see the city lose more residents. Personally, I'm very afraid of the crime and traffic, the noise that we feel that will invade an already very busy corner, especially if it's to be twenty-four hour store. I know that the present situation at St. Bees is unacceptable, rundown lot, overgrown crack pavement, et cetera. However, do you really want to impose such a looming enterprise on that corner? Yes, there is a retail on Southfield Road, but none as massive as Walmart. Even Target is setback and discreet. I picture Walmart looking like another Meyer, and we already know the crime statistics for that area parking lot store. Meyer lots are not patrolled well, and I find in my readings that Walmart is actually known for the same thing. If Walmart were setback like Target, incoming trucks, deliveries, garbage would be a noise nuisance to the neighborhood. Again, especially in the twenty-four hours. Yes, I know Walmart would bring jobs, would bring people to the area, and would bring money, but at what cost to the existing area? Small businesses in the area would end up folding because it's easier to go to Walmart. So many small enterprise, entrepreneurial enterprises cannot compete with such a behemoth. Is there truly a large enough customer base to sustain all three stores, Meyer, Walmart, and Target in such close proximity? How would that impact our taxes because I am sure they are getting incentives? I know you have done your homework and I'm sure that you're trying to look at the greater good for the city. However, in doing so, please do not forget about the little guy, the people that actually live in the city, those that care about the love of this city, not just the entrepreneurs, but put in the city. People who visit or work at Walmart won't move to Southfield simply because it's in Southfield. Honestly, is that how you brought your, bought your last home? No, like most people, you would run in the opposite direction from buying close to such places, but if your commission and our studies decide to move forward with this decision, we won't have the option to not buy here. We'll be stuck with homes worth next to nothing already that will be worth even less. Please take this humble opinion into consideration. My apologies for not being able to note my opinion at this meeting. Barbara J. Newman, two four nine five six Guy Street. Mr. Commission, um, Chair, would you care to read the next couple?
Actually, Commissioner Dillard.
Okay, thank you.
That's one dated November sixteen.
That's correct. Ms. Hambrun.
November sixteenth, Planning Commission, Terry Crowe, City of Southfield, twenty-six hundred, or twenty-six thousand, Evergreen Road, south of Michigan. I'm a longtime resident of Southfield. I moved from Lebonia in nineteen seventy-three. I live on Guy Street and raised four children here for my life, who is now deceased. My children have grown up and moved and have children of their own. I attended St. Bees Parish and I do like the neighborhood. I'm very much interested in the St. Bees property being developed and put to good use. I believe the Walmart store will be a great asset for our neighborhood. It will provide the type of retail business that is needed for this area of Southfield. I attended the presentation made by Walmart on September twelfth with the now closed St. Bees Church. I believe this use of the property is best for our immediate neighborhood as well as for the city of Southfield. I really do not anticipate any significant negative effect to our neighborhood with the proximity of this store. I believe it will leave a very positive effect on our neighborhood. I would hope the planning commission will come to the same conclusion. Gerard Rattenberg, two nine four one one, Gray Street, and Southfield four eight three oh seven six.
If I could, I just want to note that, um, a similar letter was written to the council as well. We don't need to read that one. It's a duplicate. Thank you.
Another November sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, this is to the Planning Commission. As a lifelong Southfield resident, I feel compelled to express my support of the proposed plan to have Walmart purchase the former St. Bees property. It is an eyesore now and a waste of valuable land. From renewing the proposed plan, I feel that this site will promote more business in Southfield, increase property taxes, and benefit the residents all the way around. Southfield, increase property taxes and benefit the residents all the way around. I encourage the Planning Commission to support this plan. Regards to Laura Dutton. That's 19520 Albany.
November 16th, 2012, against the City Council, Chair of Terry Crowe. As a lifelong Southfield resident, I feel compelled to express my support of the proposed plan to have Walmart purchase the former St. Beat property. It is an eyesore now and a waste of valuable land. From renewing the proposed plan, I feel that the new site will promote more business in Southfield, increase property taxes and benefit the residents all the way around. I encourage the City Council to support this plan. And this is from George Dutton, 19520 Albany.
November 17th, 2012, this is from Diana D., I don't know what that is. Can you say that?
I think it's Gus.
Gus. That's 23384 Ranch Hill in Southfield. This is to Terry Crowe, the Planning Commission, the City of Southfield. Dear Mr. Crowe, I understand that a decision will be made on the property at 12 Mile and Southfield Road, the northwest corner. I hope you will be positive because that corner gives a very core impression of our city. I would welcome a Walmart store. I find I'm going there more frequently for food products and staples because the prices are cheaper than supermarkets. There are many brand products that I find. Now I have to go to LaBona to shop and I would rather keep my business in my city. From renderings of the lot, it looks like a well thought out plan. I say go for it. It may take some getting used to, traffic patterns, though we are adaptable. The east side of Southfield Road is what be good as this should improve the west side. It will show the city is looking out for our needs. Thank you sincerely, Diana D. Doug.
November 17th, 2012, this is from Colleen Bassett at 20645 Woodburn, regarding the Walmart proposal to the Planning Commission and Terry Crowe. Dear Commission Members, I support the approval of the rezoning and site plan for Walmart. I ask that each of you as Planning Commissioners be visionary for the city and view this proposal through the eyes of the city's master plan, addressing the needs of the entire city of Southfield. This proposal is an opportunity for our city to welcome a new, innovative and responsible development. Thank you respectfully, Colleen Bassett.
And for the chair, there's a new letter addressed to the City Council.
That's the one from Mr. Bassett? Yes.
This is November 19th, 2012, this is to Mr. Terry Crowe, the Planning Commission. Dear Mr. Crowe, as a longtime property owner in the City of Southfield, I take great interest in the proposal to rezone and build a Walmart store at 12 Mile and Southfield. It seems to me to be a very prime piece of property. This will be a very visible corner location and will be an asset to the community by approving the curb appeal. Sincerely, Mike and Peggy O'Day, property owners at 23712 Parkson.
November 20th, 2012, dear Planning Commissioners, we are glad to hear of the business Walmart is interested in developing the corner of 12 Mile and Southfield Road. Please approve the Walmart store proposal. We need the influx of additional tax dollars for traffic improvement and a much needed base lift for that area. We understand the development fits nicely with the city's master plan concept created in 2009 for the 12 Mile and Southfield Road area. This is the reason the city had a master plan, so we know where we are heading with developing Southfield. If we do not follow the, the rest of our master plan, why bother developing such a plan? We understand Walmart is a good stick to the direction of the master plan. We like Walmart, great sales and involvement with their communities and potential employment for numerous Southfield residents. We certainly hope you go forward with their proposal. And this is Thomas and Suzanne Irvin, residents for over 20 years at 25154 Acacia.
Mr. Dillard, we have one that was skipped over. Mr. Spencer's got it. Thank you.
Uh, Planning Commission Terry Crowe, dear Planning Commission members, Walmart's, the Walmart Southfield development needs to be approved for the benefit of all residents of Southfield. This development will bring modern retail operation to our city, like the abandoned church school site that has been in chronic decay. Daily lives of residents of Southfield will be improved through the access to this modern development. Proposed rezoning to be three general business will bring several tangible benefits needed in our community. First, the development proposal includes major upgrades to traffic control systems on 12 Mile and on Southfield Road. The Observer Eccentric has reported that the road commission for Oakland County has found traffic problems would be reduced under the Walmart proposal. Second, Walmart will create eight over 250 new retail jobs in Southfield. Third, Walmart will pay about $350,000 in annual taxes to the city of Southfield. The current rent use provides no tax revenue to the city. Fourth, this will be one of the largest construction projects in the city of Southfield as seen in years, providing needed construction employment in our area. Finally, since the proposed rezoning is consistent with the city of Southfield master plan for the area, Southfield community development will be advanced through favorable action by the Southfield Planning Commission. Representatives of Walmart have worked diligently, diligently with city staff and the Planning Commission to produce a highly refined plan that addresses each concern identified during the planning process. It is now time for the City of Southfield Planning Commission to recommend to the City of Southfield City Council favorable action granting the involved rezoning and site plan approvals. That's respectively, Thomas Bassett, 20645 Woodburn. Next one is to Planning Commission Terry Crowe. Dear Planning Commissioners, I totally support the proposed rezoning of the property for the development of Walmart. I understand this development fits nicely with the city's master plan concept created in 2009 for this 12 Mile and Southfield Road area. I understand that this will involve a major investment by Walmart, state, in the state of the art traffic control systems at the corner and will finally result in much needed traffic improvements. Additionally, the tax income to the city of Southfield of $350,000 annually and the 210 jobs it will create should be all the incentive needed for approval of the project. Overlook the politics involved in this decision and do what is best for the city of Southfield. That's signed Ronald Pardon, 23754 Brazil. Next one dated November 21st. Dear Planning Commissioners, I totally support the proposed rezoning of the property for the development of Walmart. I understand this development fits nicely with the city's master plan concept created in 2009 for, for this 12 Mile and Southfield Road area. I understand this will involve major investment by Walmart, state of art traffic control systems at the corner and will finally result in much needed traffic improvements. Additionally, the tax income to the city of Southfield of $350,000 annually and the 200 jobs, 210 jobs it will create should be all the incentive needed for approval of this project. Overlook the politics involved in this decision and do what is best for the city of Southfield. That's signed Elizabeth Pardon, 23754 Brazil. Next one is dated November 23rd, 2012, from Canyon Barber Smith. Dear members of the Planning Commission and the City Council, we are sending the following comments to be read as part of a public hearing of the rezoning site plan, street vacation related to the Walmart proposal. We are residents at 28770 Summers Place, Laker Village, located two blocks from the proposed site. We strongly urge to dial these requests for the following reasons. Number one, concerns related to traffic flow and congestion. We have occasioned a drive through the intersection of 12 Mile and Southfield Road several, several times, most every day. This intersection is inadequate to handle current traffic, i.e., it frequently takes several changes of the light, traffic light to move either north or south on Southfield Road. It often takes more than one light change to turn left from 12 Mile Road on to Southfield Road. The opening of the superstore at this location will increase traffic and make an overloaded intersection that much more difficult. Is there any exploration of redesigning, expanding this intersection to handle current increased traffic flow? This will probably result in considerable additional expense to the city, state. Number two, negative impact on the city of Southfield and Laker Village existing retail businesses. As Walmart has opened stores all over the nation, there has been a repeated pattern of the closing of many previously existing local businesses due to price competition from Walmart. Southfield has worked hard to create the business friendly environment. Why create this threat to potential loss of the many already existing retail businesses? Number three, poor employment practices. Walmart also has a history of low pay, inadequate benefits, oppressive employee scheduling practices and retaliation against employees involved in labor organization. Why would Southfield want to encourage such labor practices in the city? Number four, impact on the city of South, city of Laker Village planning process. City of Laker Village has spent much effort on plans for redevelopment to reduce traffic flow along Southfield corridor within Laker Village. The introduction of this Walmart store is likely to hinder many of its plans. Number five, lack of the need for additional big box stores in Southfield. Southfield residents' retail shopping needs are already served by Meyer, Best Buy, Lowe's, two Target stores, Northland Mall, Home Depot and Sam's Club. There's no need for additional retail shopping opportunities in Southfield. If in spite of all these concerns, the Planning Commission and the council should decide Walmart store to be a desirable addition to the Southfield community, there's a large site already prepared for development at the city's expense, at the city's expense on 8 Mile Road between Greenfields and Southfield Road that could be considered. Thank you for your consideration. That's Canyon Barber Smith.
This next letter is dated November 26th, to Mr. Crowe. It is understandable that the city of Southfield would want to increase its tax base with new business construction creation in 12 Mile and Southfield Road's former site, St. Beat's. However, Walmart does not seem to be the solution. First, Walmart does not pay its workers a decent wage or provide adequate healthcare. Those policies ultimately cost all taxpayers. Eighty-six million in California alone. Second, traffic patterns at the 12, 12 Southfield areas are already overloaded. There, what will be the impact on neighboring businesses? Will force them out there by losing, not increasing Southfield city revenue? Think about it. In a one-mile radius, we already have two CVS stores, Walgreens, Kroger's with a pharmacy, Market Fresh and Frootage. Then there are the already existing discount stores, Target, with still another pharmacy, Big Lots, TJ Maxx, Marshalls and Burlington Coat Factory. At a Walmart, there will be even more duplication of commercial properties and the potential for all other business failures which would deplete the city tax base. Why not redevelop and revitalize Northland area instead? Locate the Walmart there. That would be a central location for metro area customers, offering more parking and traffic control. I will be tending this week's public hearing about the matter with great interest. Hope you give the issue much thought and consideration. Yours truly, Joe Hen March, 20220 V8 Street, Southfield. This is an email dated November 26th, 10 a.m. I just read about the proposal to develop a Walmart at the corner of 12 Mile and Southfield. This is a terrible idea. I live between Evergreen and Southfield and 12 Mile and 13 Mile. According to the article in the paper, Southfield can handle 90,000 cars and it is only at 48,000 cars. I did not know where someone got the idea that 90,000 cars could be managed. This intersection is terrible to get through in time around rush hour. Southfield northbound from 11 Mile backs up almost to 11 Mile, certainly to a few blocks north of 11 Mile. Trying to turn left from either Southfield or 12 Mile Road during any busy, busy period generally requires several cycles of the left turn light, too many cars to get through on the first light. If Walmart moves in it, will encourage people to bypass Southfield and cut through the Laker Village and Southfield residence streets? I do not want to spend 15 minutes or more trying to get from 11 Mile and 12 Mile. Adding Target north to west there has already increased traffic. Walmart will probably generate even more traffic. I would be far better to move Walmart, it would be far better to move Walmart to Northland area where there is plenty of space and many access routes. I strongly urge a no vote on this proposal. Susan Van Dyke, 30163 Spring River Drive. Next one is dated November 26th, to the City of Southfield Planning Commission, from Ken Peterson. I am adding my voice to others raised in support of the proposal to bring Walmart to Southfield. There are four reasons why I'm supporting the Walmart proposal. Number one, Walmart will provide an answer to pent up market demand. Walmart has been aggressive in resolving neighboring residents' concerns. Walmart will boost to our overall economy and aid our business development efforts. Walmart will bring jobs and add much needed real property tax revenue to the city. Earlier this year, the City Center Advisory Board commissioned a retail market study by Bob Gibbs Planning Group. Their analysis showed that Southfield could support over half a million square feet of additional general merchandise and retail stores. Walmart is proposing to fill about one quarter of that need. Over the past months, Walmart has conducted several town hall meetings to solicit input for resident, residents neighboring the vacant property. As a direct result of these meetings, Walmart has augmented their plans, affecting lighting, signage, automobile traffic flow and more to resolve residents' concerns. Walmart's customer activity will attract other retailers to fill neighboring sites and increase their sales, providing a so-called rub-off effect. Success breeds success. Lastly, we must be mindful of the economic benefit Walmart will provide for Southfield residents. Walmart is proposing to bring 300 new jobs to the city and add 350,000 in annual real property tax revenue, valuable for a city caught in a continuing reduced revenue budget crunch. We are currently working with 43% fewer revenue dollars than we had four years ago. If Southfield were able to retain all the additional 350,000 in the city coffers, it would pay for three sworn police officers, for example, or put the Southfield Public Library back into full-time operation. The other day, I spoke with a resident who would rather have another tax exempt institution take over the vacant property. I talked about Walmart adding to the Southfield's tax revenue at a time while we are in budget crunch. In the course of our conversation, I came to realize that she did not recognize just how financially pressured, pressured our city is. Why? Because our city management has done such a good job of doing more with less, the city budget crunch hasn't touched individuals personally. We are doing more with less and we have hidden the less, out of sight and therefore out of mind. Our streetlights are on, our police officers and firefighters show up, our roads are being repaired. What budget crunch? Who needs Walmart tax revenue? Out of sight, out of mind. For that one resident, it was only the reduction of library hours that touched her personally, a comeback that affected her life and hinted at the bigger budget crunch in Southfield. Our city's budget crunch is the overriding issue that trumps all orders around Walmart. In your decision-making commissioners, I'm asking that you support the Walmart proposal for the greater good. The city as a whole, residents and businesses, everyone who lives, works in place in Southfield. Respectfully submitted, Ken Peterson. Uh, there's Pete Postscript. I live at 5000 Town Center, the high-rise condo tower across city hall that overlooks the city center district. I am president of my condo association of more than 200 families and I sit on the City Center Advisory Board. I am a 20-year resident of Southfield and I'm very interested in our city and vitally concerned about its future.
Next one is dated November 27th. After careful consideration, I advise you to support the new Walmart. While I am a half a mile away near 12 Mile and Pierce, 28764 Southern Street, I do not feel that the presence of a Walmart would impact me greatly. I would open up options for, it would open up options for shopping in the area and get rid of current eyesore. Stretch of 12 Mile Road is full of empty office buildings and perhaps this would encourage businesses to move back into the area. Not to mention that the increased tax revenue and creation of jobs would help the city railing. Perhaps this, perhaps they will hire teenagers that would rather work than walk the streets aimlessly all summer. My biggest concern would be the amount of traffic. Once on my way to work, I had to wade through seven changes of the light at that intersection just to make a left turn. Assuming if the traffic light changes help mitigate that issue, it would be fine. I do not mind the store fee is open 24 hours. There's a 24-hour CVS at 13 in Southfield and a 24-hour Walgreens at 13 Woodward. Some are concerned that 24 hours would increase crime. I don't see that as an issue. Meyer 12 Mile and Telegraph does not seem to have that issue. I do not mind, I do not mind the product at Walmart. Those who complain about the flooding in the area, cheap Chinese goods, forgot the Dollar, Castle, Dollar Tree, Kmart, Family Dollar, Target, Big Lots, CVS, Walgreens and Burlington Coat Factory, all within a square mile, all stocked cheap Chinese goods. Not to mention the Dollar General that used to be at that intersection. Some are worried about the displacement of Einstein Beatles. If the area is good for them, they'll move within the area and stay open. Next one, also November 27th. Says, please take a moment of your time to review our support for the future plans in building Walmart. We've been residents of the Cranbrook Village for over 25 years. Since then, we've heard enough of the negative responses of having a Walmart at 12 Mile and Southfield Road. We've heard about the traffic issues, 24-hour accidents, numerous surrounding grocers and the lies of, why didn't they build in Northland or the recently suggested Tamara off? Traffic. Walmart is doing everything to invest and investigate how to reroute traffic reasonably. They have come up with excellent plans by converting exits, Southfield Road, by using traffic signals Edwards and the 12 Mile exit would be a right turn only. They also have traffic monitored by computers so there won't be manual congestion. As far as neighborhood traffic, I don't care what neighborhood you live in, if there's a grocer of gasoline, Target, McDonald's, Meyer, there'll be traffic and these responses are all blown out of proportion. Example, given Meyer's, Meyer's back faces an apartment complex with residents going in and out. 13 in Southfield where Market Fresh has, has a complex behind them. Burlington and Pine Fitness have condos behind them. Kroger's shopping at 12 Mile and Evergreen has residential apartments with vacant restaurants next to the apartments. Businesses, you have two McDonald's and two Starbucks within a mile of one another. And Arby's, two Tim Hortons, one at 12 in Greenfields, one at 10 in Evergreen and there's talk about building a
there's talk about building a third Tim Hortons in the Uptown Cafe. Talk about an overabundance of the same, these definitely are. If you're fearful of Walmart causing additional traffic, putting up another McDonald's just north of Webster, it's caused nothing but problems getting into the neighborhood as customers whizz through the lane for right-hand turns onto Webster and then continue on through the light. With a third Tim Hortons in the planning stage, that's going to create problems with the teens from high school. Shopping center currently has their hands full with the teens. Where's your security patrolling? There isn't any, and gives rise to some shoplifters, I'm sorry, shopkeepers having to, having an adult standing at the door inviting customers. Just with Meyer and Target, we would hope that Walmart would have security patrolling the outside perimeter as well as in-store. Vacancy at twelve and Southfield has been, has been ten years, and for those years, nothing has been improved. It's an eyesore and hasn't happened, and if hasn't happened already, can cause vacancy and vandalism. Walmart doesn't build. Do we really know what we'll, who will and when? We should be concerned about that more than negativism that has been presented thus far. With Walmart on the corner, their plans will significantly improve and benefit the area. The elderly who live within a few blocks will be able to walk to the store instead of getting to their car and driving a few miles to shop. Gas is high enough to make people think twice about going those miles, and seniors are living on very tight budgets these days. Twenty-four-hour access to the pharmacy and shopping for those customers who are on the night shift or parents with young children who would rather stop at night without them having positive moves. I know because I loved it when I, I know because, I know because I loved it when I raised my own, it was peace of mind. These are not negative proposals, but give way to the advantages. Additional taxes paid to the city benefits everyone, possibly increases the value of our homes and having attractive shopping. We don't see Birmingham or Royal Oak struggling or encouraging their communities to turn down progress and healthy competition. Not only do they have poor parking and excessive traffic, they have store after store within residential streets, and some even live above the store and across theaters. Walmart just happens to be on a large scale. At this juncture, we feel this is a positive improvement for our city. We certainly hope that this will go forward, and we can work in harmony with the citizens. Thank you, Barbara and Hansel Adler. We're down to the last page here, and I asked Ms. Dillard if you wouldn't mind helping out, and then I received two additional letters after our meeting began.
This is dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, from Pat Watson, an email to Terry Crowe. Hi, Terry, I live near the area of the proposed Walgreens store. I am right in the area of Southfield Road and twelve mile, where the past eight years, the area where the St. Beat's rundown really is, has been quite the eyesore. I agree, traffic is bad, but not as bad as looking at this place. I also see a positive with the city receiving some property tax now for this site, a plus for the city, so yes, I am in favor of Walmart. This is Pat Watson, CBA Association Board of Directors.
Wednesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve. As a retired university professor, I represent a faction of communities that interest in corporate levels and personal income and what kind of activity it takes to gain this income. These people in vacant communities mismatched by those who mismanage with their social crimes and greed and criminal labor practices. This one is the largest and worst. If I had enough money, I would move to Bloomfield Hills, or even worse, Rose Point. No Walmart's within walking distance, but I fear my new neighbors might be chain store and empire managers, not the good happy people of Lake of Village. There is no point to their economy for us. I don't need a cheap tee shirt or any other jumps they sell. Really nice clothing can be found at Purple Park or our local store Encore. My property values will be endangered by the tasteless pablum of their dishonesty, and that's Tom Parish. This is a telephone message dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve at three forty-five P.M. It was from Irene Cutler at one six nine four three Crescent regarding the proposed Walmart. She's concerned about the twenty-four-hour store, recommends eight a.m. to eleven P.M., similar to Target. Wednesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, an email from Gloria Armstead. My name is Gloria Armstead, one eight three zero one West thirteen mile road, unit A twenty-two. I am unable to attend the public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, eleven twenty-eight twelve regarding Walmart building a store at the old St. Beat's site at twelve mile and Southfield Road. I strongly object to this project. There is an abundance of unused retail space at Northland Center, and the traffic congestion and sheer nuisance of a Walmart at twelve mile and Southfield are simply insufficient to property values. If you require this objection under format or if you have any other questions, I can reach by phone. Your consideration is appreciated, and that's Gloria Armstead. This is Wednesday, November twenty-eighth at five ten P.M. from France Goldstein, an email to Judge Pence. Dear members of the Planning Commission, I was unable to attend the night hearing, so I wanted to make my opinions known to you regarding the possibility of a Walmart at twelve and Southfield Road. I am utterly opposed to it several counts. One, Walmart is a non-union corporation that does not want women, does not pay women to relieve equal salaries to women, and refuses to allow a union despite the employee's wishes. Southfield has a city that found itself if we pursue this. Number two, this location is already overly congested with traffic, and an anchor store of that size would be a detriment to the still residential feel of twelve mile as well as traffic flow. Number three, I will not shop there. I have never been in a Walmart, and I will discourage others from shopping there if I feel they are politically incorrect for our city. Thank you for your time, France Goldstein at two zero one six five no.
I have two final letters that were handed to me after the public hearing began. Bringing Walmart into the Southfield area would put immediate strain on existing businesses. We already have a Target, Myers, Kroger, CVS, Walgreens, then back and beyond, and various other hardware, lumber, and grocery stores within a two-mile radius of twelve mile Southfield Roads. Studies by Loyola and other universities have noted an average mean drop of forty percent in business to those stores offering similar services to a Walmart after a Walmart store enters their market. For all the employment gains and yield gains of a new Walmart, one-half that number of employees are laid off to those pre-existing stores as a result of inability to compete with the deeply undercut pricing of cheaply bought and sold Chinese goods. Walmart also has a poor record when it comes to worker protections and rights, minimum wage, and part-time work is dominant practice. As a result, Walmart has a high work turnover. Our area will be much better served perhaps by one or two fine restaurants and the space vacated at twelve mile Southfield Roads rather than a company that will contribute little towards reduced health and growth. Kristi Hamps, Negrick, two seventy two eight, the Layford Boulevard, Layford Village. And this is in postscript, others suggest the businesses, Kohl's Computer Store. And finally, again handed to me after the public hearing, there are Southfield City Committee Council members. We are sorry that we cannot attend the city council meeting tonight. However, we are very concerned and frankly disappointed that the Southfield City Council is considering a Walmart on the corner of twelve mile Southfield Road. Years ago, when St. Beat was still an active church, Walgreens was interested in affording that land and parking lot. Southfield City Council turned it down in part because of the traffic issues that would develop. Since then, the traffic on Southfield twelve mile roads has become more congested, adding a new Walmart. Adding a new Walmart there will create a traffic nightmare. We are against any big box store on that corner for many reasons, but we are appalled that the Southfield City Council thinks that Walmart is good for the cities of Southfield and Layford Village. Walmart is the worst of the big box stores. Most products are imported from China, not U.S. or Michigan products. Additionally, Walmart does the minimum required by law for their employees and actively seeks ways to circumvent such requirements. Walmart is not a company that our cities should promote. We do not believe that Walmart will do anything to improve our cities or help those of us who live in Southfield and Lake of Village. On the contrary, we believe it will contribute to the decay of our communities. And this economy is very difficult for our families, for families and cities to make ends meet. This proposed action seems to be an easy and quick fix for the city. We need to always keep in mind, they want our cities to be for us and our children both now and the future. Sincerely, Debbie Holtland Dunn and Michael Dunn. And this officially, I would ask the chair to officially close the public hearing, and since we've been antlers for four and a half consecutive hours, I would ask for a brief recess so that we can prepare for our discussion and our next item.
Okay, thank you. So I declare the public portion meeting closed at five minutes.
I'm totally a member of the Southfield Council. People have been exiting the room to have mixed ideas about what Monday's council meeting is. And I just want to clarify about the council here. It is a Sunday meeting, seven o'clock, when it's our first preview of this plan as a group. It's highly illegal in this room because so many people have said they want to come. But that's the purpose of it. And some people can come, and the chair, if they so choose, will allow some to speak. But it's not a public hearing, so I just want to make that clear for the people that are here. And also, one point that needs to be made, I keep hearing about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes that will come to the city. The city will only realize one hundred thousand of that, of that amount. That is according to our I N. Budget Director. The other, we have other jurisdictions that we have to pay, that's cool with the council. The city will then realize one hundred thousand dollars, and that will save the one hundred thousand. Thank you, I appreciate that time.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Good. Okay, we're still discussing the rezoning. I'd like the petitioner to step to the microphone to answer our questions.
Okay, uh, do you have anything else to add that you heard a lot of residents? Yes, sir. I guess I would like to make the statement that, uh, I think it's important that this property does get rezoned, right down to residential and office. Nobody's doing housing developments right now in the city of Southfield. And you know, we have abundance of empty office buildings right now. That probably could sit vacant for years. Rezoning is going to go right in line with our master plan, and it will give opportunity for development, whether it's Walmart or whoever, it will give opportunity for development. And also, you know, we talked about the traffic problems, whatever, you know, there's still going to be traffic problems. It's traffic problems now, there's going to be traffic problems wherever comes. It's an old inadequate system there with the rezoning and new site plans there is going to create new, uh, traffic signals, traffic flow, the whole system's going to be changed. You look at sidewalks going in, walking trails going in. So the issue with the traffic is not so much who's there, it's what's happening right now. It's an old inadequate system, the traffic is bad, now it's going to continue to be bad. Uh, it needs to be updated very badly, and I think that will help mitigate a lot of the traffic situation that you have there right now. Is, uh, who else has anything to say? Commissioner Dillard.
I just have a question through the chair for Mr. Crowe. Mr. Crowe, you mentioned earlier about something being taken out of context with respect to the master plan. Can you reiterate what you meant by that? I know it was a resident that commented on some issues with the master plan.
I believe it was Mr. Burschler. In his, one of his comments, it says, "In general, the maximum size of retail uses should be limited to seventy-five thousand square feet or mid-box uses such as grocers. Big box uses should not be permitted, period." But the actual text of the zoning ordinance says, "In general, the maximum size of retail uses should be limited to seventy-five thousand square feet or mid-box uses such as grocers, electronics, office, and clothing stores. Big box uses should not be permitted," and then it's comma, "except as described below, due to shallow lot depths, proximity of residential uses, and the need to create a synergy of uses." Where it references below is the statement that I read in my opening review, that the St. Beat Church and Southfield Plaza Retail Center are two large sites that could be redeveloped in the future. Because of their size and location on the corner, these sites have the ability to be redeveloped as mixed-use center if desired by the city. Design of any new mid-box retail and any redevelopment of the two existing Targets and Home Depot, and it goes on. But it was clear that big box uses should not be permitted except, and it specifically references the St. Beat Church and Southfield Plaza Retail Center. I just wanted to correct that for the record.
Excuse me, did I hear you say it should be redeveloped as mixed-use?
That's what it goes on to say.
Well, that's not, I don't define that as big box.
Well, again, it says, "Big box uses should not be permitted except as described below," where it references the St. Beat Church and Southfield Plaza Retail Center.
Okay, well, can I, um, with respect to that, what Mr. Crowe just read, and basically looking at what the master plan considered when it was formulated in April of two thousand and nine, I would be in favor of rezoning as well. However, that is not to say that I'm in favor of Walmart specifically. What it means is that we have to look at this property and its future land use, and this, the manner in which it now is not conducive to a growing Southfield. I'm a fairly new resident of Southfield, I would admit that. However, I do know that if our forefathers didn't have foresight to redevelop or rezone, we still wouldn't have forced in Southfield. So frankly, rezoning to this type of usage is conducive with the master plan. It's also conducive with the needs of the city. It's conducive with the needs of the surrounding suburban area. It's also conducive of this city, which is the center of it all, is a state, and which is located near freeway, near Main Doral Fair, and it's a city that's situated where it is. I mean, we have to think about that in future land use and not just focus on what we think today is just a Walmart, but we have to look at whoever may come to that location in that area and the next individual that may bring a proposed rezoning. I think tackling the rezoning at this stage is a smart thing to do, even if Walmart does not get this property, another business that comes through, they won't have to go through this process again, and we can move forward that way. So I'm in favor of the rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crowe?
Uh, my sentiments exactly. But I think people are getting the quote-unquote thing in their head, that this is Walmart's baby. As I said, this is not rubber stamps. And council people are just saying to you, they have to go before the city council is put on a presentation. Then we send in a recommendation to them. So all we do is recommend to the city council. But we know that that area needs to go. It needs to be a B three. The archdiocese may decide not to go to Walmart. He may go back and go with the church. That is his responsibility to who he sells that property to, but we know the property needs to be prepared for whatever developer that wants to come in there and do business. And that's why I'm saying a rezoning. I am not saying we're going to rezone and give it to Walmart to do their thing. That has not been decided. What needs to be done is we do the upfront work, we rezone the area, so what other developer comes in there does not have to sit before us and you and go through this process. That's what I'm in favor of, for future development. Thank you. Yeah, I know it's a lady from St. Beat Church. She looked at, she mentioned that possibly a charter school, a charter school's interested. And you can you imagine the type of traffic that a charter school brings? I mean, I think it could be a lot worse than, you know. No, no. I could just say eight to five. Everybody has to have their opinion. They have their opinion that you speak. You have to speak. Nor that it runs on weekends. And you're out of order, sir. Okay, you're out of order. Uh, but let me voice my opinion. Uh, you know, whatever goes there is not trade traffic. Other cities, they're growing, they're building, and they adapt to traffic. If you know traffic's going to be heavy between four and six at a certain location, you've got another round to go. But other cities have learned to adapt to traffic, uh, and grow. More people, hopefully get more people walking, riding bikes, but that's not goal here in Southfield, is to get more activity, more business, and more walkable communities, more bike ready. But you have to be vigilant. Something's going here, and it's going to create traffic.
Commissioner Bill. Uh, once again, we sat here really quietly, listening to every one of you that wanted to talk. Can we talk now without being interrupted? Please? Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, something I brought up with the funeral home rezoning portion, the legal description that send this proposal for the Walmart properties, does it include that part that's going to become part of the funeral home parking? It does not. I just wanted to clarify that, because I don't know if it does or not, and I just, I'm wanting somebody to see what they were reading when they read this again.
Yeah, that small piece that is currently owned by the church would be incorporated into the Southfield Funeral Home property, not this piece.
Okay, so it's not included in this leave, right? It's right in the mask. Because if it does, it needs to be removed. And speaking specifically to the rezoning of the properties being looked at here, it's been our practice for the last twenty-five years that I'm aware of, in doing a rezoning on this scale, that we always have an approvable site plan before us, before, along with the rezoning, which we have one that's being presented with this. I don't personally think that the B3 is appropriate for this site, for the entire site, until major road improvements are made. Having lived in the vicinity of that for the last thirty-six years, I'm more than well aware of just how severe it is. And I don't really care what national guidelines, traffic guidelines and so forth say, they're very deceptive as towards what reality is when you're trying to drive and get home, or drive and go to work, or go get groceries, or anything else. The traffic situation there on both Twelve Mile Road and on Southfield Road is absolutely atrocious. And until major road improvements, I don't mean changing the traffic lights or the timing on the lights, I don't care if it costs two hundred million dollars to do that, it isn't sufficient to correct the traffic problem that currently exists, let alone what it's going to be when you intensify the use on that property. And I have, I just have a feeling that B3 is going to be way too intense a use for that entire corner. And so I can't justify myself without seeing some, something in the near foreseeable future, even along with the rezoning in fact, of major improvements to the traffic situation. So, that's my opinion.
Okay, you have any comments? Commissioner Lake, there.
You know, there are a lot of good points raised and from the community, thank you for all coming out. And I'd just like the commissioner to talk about a few, what I think are key points and how they relate to the public. And Walmart, one, property values, two, safety, traffic and growth, future, and what Walmart typically brings with it.
Well, I think it's important since Mr. Chairman took it easy, you brought it up, Commissioner, to address the concern that was brought up by one of the residents earlier, that we've somehow failed to share the appropriate study that was requested from us on what we feel our company does, how we copy does, and that is not accurate. I personally sent an email to the resident that requested the study that was sent on November sixth. In addition to what I had posted there with her email was a very, I thought, appropriate note to her sent, and I was apologizing for the delay of getting to her on November sixth, that I had fully expected to see her the week before on Thursday, I believe it was Thursday night before, when we had actually the fourth, or third or fourth of our resident, local resident meetings, to actually hand her a hard copy of the study. She was not available, she was not at the meeting, so I took it by myself. So when I got in the next week, I sent it to her on Tuesday morning. So I apologize that, I don't know if it went to her junk inbox, I don't know where it went. I sent it to her, she perused it tonight, she saw it with the appropriate email address, and then she left this evening with the same hard copy of the study that I gave to her. The studies are published publicly, you can Google them, they're all over the place. There are four significant studies that we utilized, the one that I gave them this English this evening, talks about the raises and anywhere from one percent as you trigger out to three percent as you get here to Walmart. The data presents itself, it's provided to her, and we're happy to provide that to other residents that request it. Those are the numbers that we see. Similar to the comments, based on facts, some based on fiction, I don't think we need to spend all of these good people in here rehashing all of those comments that were made. I can, you know, take specific questions that you have, that you would like me to address, and take as much time as you would like.
Property values, those have certain variables. And just safety, real quick, I mean, are there any, is there any data, any information about what happens in the neighborhoods?
We have, and those of you that were the residents that were there stumbling, we have our asset protection teams that work with our stores directly. We have a very specific formula that's utilized on how we come up with the assessment for each individual store. I have the documentation, and I'm happy to provide it to staff, share with commissioners directly. I have hard copies with me with you all. That being said, each of our stores operates differently. For this location, we expect no impact on crime or load statistics in this area that any other major retailer would have in here.
And what are those?
Mr. Chairman, to the commissioner's question, I think that question is better directed towards your chief of police.
But it's your experience, then.
We don't have a location in Southfield, Commissioner.
What is your average experience? You're just avoiding my question, sir.
Because we have ninety stores in the state of Michigan with over thirty-two thousand employees.
Did you have any of those? Any that's in a metropolitan area, there's similar circumstances to this, that you could give us a figure?
If the chairman would like us to provide.
You don't want to give it to us, just tell us you don't want to give it to us.
If the chairman would like me to provide that to staff, to distribute to commissioners, I'm happy to try again for you.
Through the chair, if I could just add in, I did speak with Chief Hawkins today and asked him with regards to any additional patrols or security. He indicated that he did not foresee any additional change in patrolling or securing in this area, no different than any other retail store that they service in Southfield or northern part of the city. But he did not indicate that he would have to put on any additional patrols or officers to deal with this, unlike any other larger retailer in this northern part of the city.
Okay, I should go back to that one. And lastly, just a group, I was going to add that I'd like to talk to you about, or have you respond to, when a Walmart comes into a community, it seems like, you know, the off-spur growth comes along with it. What have you experienced in other locations when Walmart comes to town?
Well, I'm sure that what's been stated earlier has some residents, when Walmart does come to town, you do see growth. When Walmart leaves town, you have problems. And there's no more shining example of that than what happened with the city of Warren. When we as a company had an old discount store located at Twelve Mile and Van Dyke, because of the restrictions on that particular property and our plans to expand that old formatted discount store to a fully-blown supercenter, we chose as a company to vacate that property to continue to pay our lease obligations to that landlord, and moved and built a brand-new supercenter just two miles up the road off Van Dyke and the neighboring community of Sterling Heights. At present, I think if you were to reach out directly to planning commissioners in City Warren, Mayor of City Warren, you will see that those elected officials are very happy to hear that we are now working with them, in fact, we'll be with them on Monday at twelve, while we're hoping to be in for your city council, on rebuilding a new supercenter at that location at the lot. And we, just to get to some of the chatter that I hear back here that so rudely interrupts many of us as we communicate and sit quietly as they have been presenting, I will say to you that what's going to happen in Sterling Heights, Mr. Chairman, is that that fully-operational supercenter will continue to service our clients, our customers, and our associates in the same manner, if not more, as the additional supercenter just two miles up the road. It would be two fully-functioning, operating supercenters to service the customer demand that we see in that region. The other example that I can give you recently for growth is to talk specifically about the brand-new store that was opened to nobody, and I will refer to you all and your staff to communicate with that particular city on what they saw on the development. Some of that was alluded to earlier this evening, I don't need to rehash those comments.
Right, thank you. That being said, you know, it sounds like the major components of this, what I'm seeing and hearing, are satisfied. And I think that, you know, Walmart could be a good neighbor, and you've been great in having all these additional meetings up front, reaching out to the community, and I hope that continues throughout this process. And I'm excited about it, and I'll be in favor of the rezoning.
Mr. Coe, back there, you have a question?
Yeah, question. Going back to the safety issue, I'd like to the residents to put their opinion, if, you know, rephrase it, if this proposal is approved, and if Walmart goes there, the safety issue about being open twenty-four hours and your security. At one of the study sessions, the question was asked, and I didn't write my notes, about the security in the parking lot. You addressed the issue with the lights, the lights would not be shining into the neighborhood, the lights would be shining out. You also addressed the issue with you have, I know you call yourself a security person, but you have them inside, and you brought a young lady to the next meeting, and if I'm not mistaken, she gave an analysis of maybe there would be security in the parking lot if there was a quote-unquote report of crime. Would you fill me in on that? But I didn't write my notes, I apologize. But we talked about security in the parking lot for residents. If this proposal is approved, are you going to protect the citizens if they come there?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to the commissioner, to this point, our customers and our associates and their safety is top priority for us. We can't operate a thriving retail establishment without customers. If our customers don't feel safe, the business and the investment that we put into the community doesn't thrive. So with that in mind, our stores operate, again, in multiple communities throughout the states, throughout the United States and foreign countries. Some of those communities, we have very little crime in that. We don't have issues that are reported on a regular basis. We don't feel that there's a need in those locations to provide security force, if you will, directly inside the parking lot of the facility. In other communities that we operate, including some communities here in Michigan, where we have seen spikes or long-term effects of crime, we do provide security services that contract to the company to patrol the particular parking lot question. Part of my reluctance, if you will, to answer commissioner questions regarding this specific subject is, to my knowledge, this subject has not been made a condition of your approval tonight with the zoning, or the site plan that is supposed to be on the agenda next. If there are specific conditions that this body would like to see, I would like to get those from the body and take that to the home office so that they can determine whether those conditions would allow us to continue to move forward with the project or not. Similarly, if this body were to approve those things, and the city council, as a condition of our final approval, would have a condition of providing full-time security or nighttime security from a private company in our parking lot, or if the city council would like to respond to some of the questions that these residents have raised regarding our hours of operations, and those are conditions of our approvals, I will absolutely take those conditions back to the home office, and they will make the determinations whether we would like to continue to move forward or not. I think those are reasonable things for me to ask.
I'd be like, Councilman Roar, you can answer the question. Okay, not trying to be facetious. You brought in a female, your security person, and I will break your notes to the next meeting, because she couldn't answer the question then, like it is now. Okay, no disrespect. She came in, and I, again, you know, I do keep a note, she said to us, same thing was saying similar, if there was a spike or if there was crime, that they would go out and get and have police patrolling in the parking lot. Am I correct in assuming that? This, you don't have to learn, this is a zoning thing number one, it's not, you don't have it. So we talk about conditions, that may come when it gets to something else. But that wasn't a condition, that was a question that some neighbors asked, and he's gone, about security. And she came in, and she made the statement that based on the crime rate, there are, and maybe patrols in the parking lot. And that's all I was getting to, protection of our citizens, if this thing is proposed, and if it goes through, and people are coming out late at night, can they feel safe going into the store and coming out? That's all I wanted to know.
Mr. Chairman, to the commissioner's question, the direct answer is, we were approved and built this store. Store will have, again, our folks that are inside the physical store, along with the camera systems that are inside the store, and camera systems outside of the store that monitor the parking lot. If there's an incident on our property, we respond, we wait to the local police department. If that's an isolated incident, it's a one-time event, again, we don't see this as a high-crime community, nor do you all see this as a high-crime community. So we are not anticipating having to move forward with our location to have armed escorts all over the property or the open county sheriff, the deputies, individuals. We don't see that. We're telling you that we see our impact to be the exact same thing that you see with your other big-box stores here in your community. Now, having said that, if there are continued incidents in our property, I go back to my original statement, our number-one priority is our customers and their safety. If we see those spikes, we do operate stores in the state that do have security patrol that monitor their parking lot, and they're done on a case-by-case basis based on the crime statistics and what our customers are responding back to us, along with the local police department. Again, if we don't have any conditions before us, to my knowledge, if the city council is part of the condition, says you got to have secure private security in the parking lot in order to be open twenty-four hours, we'll discuss that and bring it back to the council, let them know whether that's a condition we're looking for or not. Same thing with hours of operations, or whatever may be presented to us by the city council, assuming we get to that.
And through the chair, if I could, again, we're here right at this moment discussing the rezoning, and some of those issues are more related to site plan, which would be the next item. Okay, any other questions? Ready to vote? Through the chair, I just, for the record, I'd like to read the recommendation from the planning department, recommends very low consideration of the zoning, ZR thirteen fourteen, rezoning request of Charles Park Walmart Real Estate Business Trust Sidwell Parcels two four one one dash four seven nine dash zero six five and zero six seven and par zero six zero, property located at one eight two nine zero, West Twelve Mile Road, and two nine two five five and two nine two six seven, Southfield Road on the northwest corner of West Twelve Mile Road and Southfield Road in section eleven of the city for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning will be in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan that indicates north-Southfield Road subarea for this parcel. The proposed rezoning meets the zoning standards, including consistency with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, compatibility with site issues, compatibility with uses, reasonable return, capacity of the infrastructure, community impact statement, lawful land use, desirable zoning trend, reasonable boundaries, appropriateness of district, no spot zoning and no previous request to rezon. Number three, the proposed zoning to B3 general business will allow the commissioner to redevelop the property with a new land use compatible with the abutting existing developments and in accordance with the Comprehensive Master Plan. And again, these are all the uses in the B3 district, and the proposed rezoning will not have an adverse effect upon joining zonings or land uses. uses.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? I'd like to make a favorable recommendation for SP 1291 for rezoning to Southfield.
This is just the reason, this is just ZR 1314.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to make a favorable recommendation for ZR 1314 zoning request.
We have a motion by Commissioner Leitner.
I'm taking it.
Seconded by Commissioner Dillard. Madam Secretary, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bell?
No.
Ms. Leitner?
Yes.
And Chairman Whitehead?
Yes.
Commissioner called that one?
Yes.
Ms. Barrett?
Yes, that's four.
Yes. Good job, Lord.
Okay, it's, vote is five to one.
Good job.
It passes as stated. So this is our first recommendation, the condition has passed. Thank you. Good luck. Next on the agenda.
If I may, the next item is SP 1291, that is a site plan review request of Charles Park Walmart Real Estate Business Trust to demolish the existing church and shopping center and construct a new 130,124 square foot Walmart supercenter on property located 18290 West 12 Mile Road and 29255 and 29267 Southfield Road on the northwest corner of West 12 Mile Road and Southfield Road in Sidwell Parcels 2411-479-025-062-065 and-069. Mr. Chairman, with regard to this particular item, the planning department recommends favorable consideration of the site sign or view request of Charles Park Walmart, excuse me, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust demolishing the existing St. East Church and Shopping Center and constructing new 130,124 square foot Walmart supercenter with associated parking site plan dated November 1st, 2012. Receive of the planning department on November 2nd, 2012 with the following conditions. Approval of ZR 1314 by the city council. Commisioners who enter into a cross-accessive parking agreement with the owner of Southfield Home and the owner of Southfield Common Shopping Center for sharing parking spaces on all three properties. Receipt of a waiver of 72 parking spaces from the zoning board of Fields, 993 spaces required, 921 provided for all three properties. Improvements of traffic signals at West 12 Mile Road and Southfield Road and Edwards and Southfield Road in accordance with the City of Southfield and Road Commission for Open County Standards. Installation of decorative mast arms for signals as approved by the city and per RCOC requirements. Trash and recycling pickup shall be limited to between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. per Title 11, Chapter 17, Section 2.14 of the Southfield City Code. Existing bus stops on West 12 Mile Road and on Southfield Road shall be equipped with new smart bus shelter prototype and keywoks. Building materials for the existing St. East Church shall be recycled as feasible. Electric charging stations for vehicles shall be incorporated on the site where feasible. The site shall be subject to road controls per Title 9, Chapter 111, Section 9.3, Paragraph 2 of Southfield City Code. The site plan approval, including any attached landscape plan, does not constitute landscape plan approval. File detailed landscape plan must be submitted to the planning department and be approved prior to issuance of building permits. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage and glare onto adjacent properties. Commisioners provide sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material. Commisioners to execute perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas both onsite and right-of-way, which includes maintenance of stormwater detention system. Commisioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Building is to be constructed in accordance with the submitted elevations shown on sheet 1 attached. Approval of the site plan and/or building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval of signed permits must be obtained from the building department for any proposed signs. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.29, Paragraph 12. Commisioners to submit a lots split and lot combination application to the Southfield Assessing Department for dividing combining of land associated with this proposal. Decorative measuring screen wall shall be constructed where the non-residential property and less residential properties in the west. Pedestrian platform decorative fencing on the corner of West 12 Mile Road and Southfield Road shall be installed per Sheet C 5.1. Commisioners to make sure 25-foot vision cone at the corner is kept clear from obstruction. Installation, repair and replacement of the eight-foot wide bike safety path on West 12 Mile Road and installation of a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk on Southfield Road and crosswalk to northernly shopping center. These recommendations are made for the reasons that the board has mentioned. And through the chair, we try to do, we try to have a comprehensive list of conditions based on all of the issues that have been raised over the past month and a half. You have the ability, should you move forward, to add additional conditions. I think there were some legitimate issues raised with regards to security. You also may make recommendations with regards to hours of operation to go forward. I think Mr. Matko wanted to follow up on a couple of issues that were raised at the last study session. I'm gonna queue up a couple of slides that are specific to comments that were raised to the commission and then, again, extra pleasure, staff is here to answer any questions that the commission may have on outstanding issues. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Again, my name is Robert Matko, C E S O, 8164 Executive Court Drive, Atlanta, Michigan. Thank you. For the slides to queue up here. What I'd like to do this evening is, I know there were, again, some questions at the last meeting we had, and one thing we've tried to do, I think you've seen even in the last meeting, is try to go back, look at some of your comments and adequately address those. Hopefully you saw that we did that in the last meeting. So again, we took some of your concerns, especially Commissioner Bell's and also Commissioner Leitner's, some of your concerns for the last meeting and just tried to provide a response to some of those comments or questions that you have. Specifically, I believe Commissioner Bell made a comment just to show some other sites that are very similar to this site in not only in size, but maybe in traffic volume and maybe the butt up against the residential development. What you see before you on this slide, and I believe you also have it in your packet, is a existing site in Roseville, Michigan. Now, that store right now is a existing Walmart. It will ultimately be developed into a supercenter. It was recently approved to expand to a supercenter. But as it sits right now, it is approximately 10.14 acres in size, so it's a little bit smaller than the Southfield Walmart. It is in size, slightly larger. Parking spaces, it's providing a little bit more, but the reason it's providing a little more parking is there's substantially less green space on that site as compared to the Southfield site. And one thing we really tried to do on the Southfield site is we far exceed the city's requirement for green space as it relates to parking. But as you can see with the Roseville expansion, we're actually gonna take that building up an additional 40,000 square feet, but we're only gonna add about approximately 10 parking spaces. Now, again, that site was approved by the City of Roseville and, you know, that those plans will be going out to bid under construction in the spring of next year. We skip over to another, another slide here, it's maybe in a little different order, but I believe Commissioner Leitner had a, just a comment about, just seeing a kind of a diagram or picture about the queuing that we had talked about. One of the recommendations we're making is not only with the new traffic signal, but also with right turn overlap phasing, signal phasing, which would include basically pre-modernizing the entire traffic signal. You can see here, you can see here to the left, this is what you call a signal span or diagonal span traffic signal, that's what's out there now, it's a two-pole traffic signal system. You can see the signal heads are somewhat difficult to see. To the right is what's being proposed out there, what they call a box span signal. Now, one thing we will be doing on this signal, the box span, is it will be a mast arm installation, but the signal heads will be spaced further apart. That will significantly help accidents that occur at that intersection. MDOT has recently gone with the modernization of all of their traffic signals. Any signal that gets installed now will be installed as a four-pole or box span or mast arm traffic signal to get the signal heads spaced correctly around the intersection. Again, that significantly reduces accidents. It will also improve traffic flow through the intersection. I understand, you know, Commissioner Bell does not believe that, but it, studies have been shown that it will significantly improve traffic flow through the intersection. But in addition, this slide also shows existing, without the right turn overlap, you can see the existing right turn lane goes back to approximately 300, a little over 300 feet. Vehicles will queue up because there's no right turn on red. The queue length right now is 187 feet, that's 95th percentile queue length. With the right turn overlap, that queue will actually drop down to 99 feet. So that is, is an improvement not only with the right turn volumes, but it will also get some of these right turn volumes out of the through lanes and thereby, again, increasing your flow through the intersection. So I know that was one of the questions, we tried to respond to that with just a graphic showing what that improvement would be. I also see here this right turn lane that we're gonna be installing all the way back to our driveway access point on 12 Mile Road. This again, just goes back to the first slide, I know we're kind of moving around here, but these are a couple of other sites that are somewhat similar. They back up to residential developments. The one to the left is in Chesterfield, Michigan, that is an existing supercenter. You can see here to the north, there is residential development behind the site. We have had no, no issues or complaints that we've heard of or the Walmart team has heard of in terms of the residents being located behind the store and any problems or issues with how that store has been operated. We also have an existing site down here in Taylor. You can see the residential off here to the east of the Taylor site on the parking field is actually out to the west. And this is E Corse Road right to the north there. And again, similar circumstances, we've had very, very little impact or concerns. One of the areas we're not showing here, and I actually have one of the gentlemen in the audience here with me, Mr. McGee, Dennis McGee, we had a site up in Tracker City, it was an existing Walmart store that we expanded. We had a very higher-end condominium association located to the, I believe it'd be kind of towards the north of the store there. We did install an eight-to-10-foot wall in that area and many of the residents at first were very concerned. We had a meeting out in the field. We actually, the store expanded, the wall was constructed and the residents were as happy as can be, you know, with the wall and how it was constructed. And again, we've heard no complaints at this time from that operation either. I believe again, Commissioner Leitner had a concern or just wanted to show some additional crosswalks. Right now, we kind of are proposing straying a crosswalk from the shopping center to the north across this three-lane driveway and this would line up with the signal in Edwards Avenue. And again, this would take some of the pedestrians to a cut through in the landscape island. It would then ultimately lead south to the front of the Walmart store. With that, I hope again you see that we tried to address some of your concerns and again, I'm here to try and answer any additional questions you may have. And again, I thank you for your time to see me.
Yes, I could, Mr. Chairman, we're still looking at crosswalks.
Sure.
For instance, I see the way it's currently being proposed apparently is to put a crosswalk from fairly, what is that, closed restaurant area?
I believe that would be right in about the Kenzie Restaurant.
I'm sorry.
The Kenzie Restaurant?
Right.
Yes.
I thought it was closed, I don't know if it is or not.
It is closed, yes.
And you showed a crosswalk going across to the middle of the island, which will empty out into the middle of head-on parking.
That's great. Well, in the island, what we can do also is actually have the walkway actually go to the east as well. But that was our concern last week with trying to dump pedestrians into basically a landscape area. We could certainly tie that walkway further to the east and then that would have the pedestrian into basically the drive aisle. But as far as placing a concrete walkway through the middle of the parking lot, obviously there is not sufficient room to add an eight-foot wide concrete walkway for pedestrians.
I'm sure to respect the headache of trying to do that, but what you've got here is totally non-functional as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, but I mean, it's certainly can be removed, we're just trying to work and again, it's something we can work with staff. What I had mentioned in the last meeting is, is I believe there, we do have an access point where, you know, pedestrians could eventually walk over to the sidewalk on Southfield Road, take that south.
Yeah, that'll happen more than.
It's at least a way that pedestrians can access the site.
Which from thinking, you may look good on paper, but it's reality, it's not gonna happen. What people are gonna do, they're leaving, coming across that shopping center, they're gonna walk through the parking lot and cross over that island and walk through the parking lot of Walmart, assuming they don't drive. And to presume that they're gonna do something different is deceptive, I'm sorry.
It's certainly not trying to be deceptive at all. We're truly trying to work with the planning commission and staff. Obviously, we're open to some ideas. We think we've provided at least a means to get to the front of the store, but we're certainly, you know, looking at trying to provide the best pedestrian access that we can.
I appreciate your efforts, but I walk in parking lots. I do it all the time, I don't know if you guys do or not.
And you have walked in many parking lots where they've had numerous walkways down the middle.
Absolutely not. That isn't where you walk, sir. How many people, how many times have you seen people walk 500 feet out of their way to go to a sidewalk to get somewhere they're gonna walk 500 feet back to get to the door? It just doesn't happen. No matter how much you want to design it that way, it's not gonna happen, that's not gonna work. Or at least they're not gonna use it. It doesn't mean you can't design it that way and say, well, we put it in there, they got a walkway.
I don't think we're trying to do that. We are trying to find the best way we can do that. As I stated, we can have that walkway fair enough to the east, but again, it would provide the pedestrian into, into the drive lane area.
And on the slide that shows Chesterfield Township in Taylor, I noticed, yes, they are adjacent to residence, but I noticed that the access has its own road going over there and would probably have no traffic coming whatsoever there, do you?
Well, I think those slides are mainly shown specifically just to show that Walmarts can exist next to a residential area. Specifically, you know, Roseville was kind of a similar site, if you will, Brashett and 12 Mile, they're similar sized, if anything, they're actually carry a little more traffic than Southfield and 12 Mile Road would carry.
Yes, I can appreciate that. And if we had a road going like that, that went directly to the, to the Walmart, you could, so it'd bound the traffic all day long, but it wouldn't interfere with the other traffic, just try to drive out.
As I stated, Commissioner Bell, I mean, solely the Chesterfield and Taylor were primarily just showing that Walmarts aren't located and can be located close to residential developments.
I appreciate your efforts.
And thank you.
Mr. Chair, please slide. I do have other, other questions. Commissioner Leiner?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I appreciate your response regarding safe pedestrian access to that northern site from the property, because basically what I was thinking, what exists currently is that is existing parking for that center, that is most likely where, when all of the other spaces are full, they're going to park in probably that area. So, I thought it would be a good idea to maybe provide a safer pedestrian access to that site, since we are in fact having a shared parking agreements with all locations. And I think it's a good response.
Thank you.
Also, just for the sake of residence, was that the study meetings, just give us my idea, how the size of this location compares to Home Depot or Target on Southfield Road?
Mr. Eagleheart, may be able to give a little more exact number?
Could you, could you repeat your question? I didn't.
Yeah, I just wanted to compare the size of this location to Home Depot and Target. Just to give them my idea.
You posted to the Target, but I think they're very similar, I think Target's about 130,000 feet, but I'm going to defer to Terry on that, or 132, so very similar. I think Home Depot's a little bit smaller in that I don't have square footage over 100,000 feet, but what the garden centers probably as big as we're proposing here. Again, I, it's, Target, I think is the best comparison, similar type general merchandise, they have pantry sections in their store.
Through the chair. The Target, the proposed Walmart is 130,000, 124 square feet. The existing Target is 126,398 square feet. The existing Home Depot is 129,950 square feet, and the existing Myers is 194,400 feet. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bill?
I know at one of our study sessions, you know, this has been brought in by the residents as well, most of the night, were there other sites that the Walmart looked at within the Southfield area? And if they were in fact looked at, what was the result, and why choose the area of 12 Mile and Southfield? I do know that our, at one of our study sessions, Mr. Crowe informed us about the possibilities of the Northland issue and the issues at Backing House and how that wasn't a viable site. But I would ask for you to expand upon that sort of publicly, because I don't think people attended the meetings and may have heard that information, because it keeps coming up, so.
Sure, I will defer that question again to Mr. Eagleheart.
Thank you. There's, there's a lot factors that go into site selection and communities. We look at the 2 Mile Ring of Population and well, in Southfield, there's 50,000 people. We look at median household income, we look at road patterns, we look at competitors, we look at spacing between our stores, we look at geographical barriers, things like that that don't necessarily apply here. You know, the, the 12 Mile and Southfield location is an ideal location from that perspective, from Walmart's perspective. We have looked at numerous other properties in, in the community. We've looked at the renamed Shop, Shopping Center, we looked at the Home Depot, would require us to move the Northland Drive and possibly acquire right across Office Building that's adjacent to it to fit the mass that we're looking for. We've looked at Camraw Property, it was economically unpeaceful, it's an arable site. We've looked at the trailer park at 8 Mile, Telegraph, and those are an example of several other sites. And it's not to say at some point in the future, certainly the populated basins out there will consider a second store.
Mr. Crowe, I just wanted you to, if you could, I don't know if that, that information can be shared, but as far as the Northland property, I know in our study sessions, we discussed the issues that present themselves with the Northland property. Can you just enlighten us a little bit about that?
I'll, I'll try to summarize where I can. Again, the challenge is that the Northville, the Northland Mall site is privately owned by a conglomeration of businesses that's outside of the state. The current configuration of the lots, there are several parcels where the lots themselves are owned by individuals, that, and for example, the, the four big boxes, like the former JCPenney's, they still control their airspace and they mothball the building so that competitors don't come in. They also control air rights or site, site distances from the road to those buildings, which prohibits out parcel development. The former Montgomery Ward Tire Center, for example, is a perfect example in the days before the city, where that lot is basically about a foot wider than the building itself and is an island amongst itself within a sea of parking that's controlled by Northland Mall. That site does not have access to Greenfield Road, nor does it have any cross access seats meant more parking. That limits the ability to develop that site. There are other unusual circumstances. The entire shopping center has its own physical plant, it produces energy underground, electricity and power and so forth, it's antiquated building itself, most of the, the center is, is going on 60 plus years. Due to the academic climate, similar to many residents in our homes, the property itself is upside down on its mortgage, I don't know the specifics, but in essence, the amount owed on the property far exceeds what the current value is. Therefore, they have no ability to get financing for making the necessary improvements to help revitalize that center. And many of the current businesses are, are small mom and pop businesses with month to month leases compared to the national retailers. And there's a whole host of other challenges with that site. Another site that I know that the Downtown Development Authority has looked at is near 8 Mile and Rutland for a potential big box. I believe there was the former Home Depot there that had its own set of challenges being on 8 Mile Road, security was one of them. And those sites are irregularly shaped, and a retailer similar to Walmart is going to want at least 10 acres that's squared on to rectangular enough to get the depth so they have the site visibility and the parking, along with all the other issues that we've talked about. So, for those reasons, it's not impossible that some future retailer might locate there, but there, there are significant challenges. And then finally, I think we can all agree that the specific market is a little bit different on the southern part of the city than it is on the northern part of the city. And again, we're dealing with free market enterprise capitalism and private property, private transactions between property owners. What we can do as a commission is look at sub-area plans, look at master planning, looking at areas to possibly revitalize or to, to make the land use patterns more in line with what the market trends are. But the bottom line is, we don't control the land, we don't control the private, you know, property, and, and that's what makes it challenging to have another store in that location.
A big concern also is the 24 hour operation. Do any of you guys like to answer this question? Guess what I want to know, does your Roseville store, is that 24 hours?
Roseville, yeah, the new approval. It's approved of type 1. That's, that's, we're, we're also pursuing for the Warren location that's being relocated or holding the old location.
So, what percentage of your stores are 24 hours?
I may have missed one earlier. I apologize, let me make sure I've got the exact number for you. With 82 supercenters here in the state of Michigan, now that counts the newly opened Novi location, there are nine discount stores, so my math, if I count that, there are 91 locations in this great state of Michigan, not nine. Of those 91 locations here in the state of Michigan, 17 of those locations are limited on hours. Seven of those locations are the existing old format discount stores that do not have the full complement of groceries. So, in earlier meetings, I believe Commissioner Culker asked me specifically, and I think I quoted the number in 12 to 14 range, it's actually 17 stores of the 91 that exist in the state. Again, seven of those 17 are discount stores, the old format Walmart, they do not carry the full complement grocery. For our supercenter clients, it's our preference to run 24 hour operations for multitude reasons. Whether the door's physically open or not for our customers after 12 or 1 a.m. or before 6 a.m., our employees are actually in the physical locations, because that's when the restocking of the fast food or retail establishments will take place. Whether you're a diner, Walmart, Target, most of the stocking goes through 18 hours. So, for us to maintain the store's viability and put a couple of cashiers up there to service our customers that demand that in the late 9 hours, it's an easy part of our operation to continue running them 24 hours. Having said all that, there are restrictions that we do here too. Some of them are demographic, some of them are requirements that specific municipalities have placed on us. If those are requirements that this body or the city council wants to pursue, I'm happy to take those back to the company and we'll determine whether we'd like to move forward with the project based on those restrictions.
Through the chair, just a quick calculation, if, if 17 of 91 stores are limited hours, about 18.6% of the stores have limited hours. And I think it's certainly within the prerogative of the planning commission to make a recommendation on limiting hours as, as a condition of, of if you decide to move this forward or not. It's all, it's all up for discussion at the city council ultimately.
Commissioner Leiner? What percentage of business do you do between that 12:01 and 6:00 a.m. period?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I don't have, I don't have the actual transaction numbers in front of me from store to store basis. As you can imagine, it's much more limited than we would see in a normal, you know, from say, 5 or 6 p.m. on Friday evening to midnight. Obviously, our transaction numbers at those times and on Saturday and Sunday are going to be extraordinarily higher than you would see from 12:01 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. But, and some of those numbers will vary based on the location, major employers in the area that they operate, strength shifts, you know, I can try to give you the best guess, but I'd be taking a stab at the doctor's evening.
And those other facilities, the 17, where are their hours? Are they closed from 12:01 a.m. to 6?
Again, the municipalities are different. If we are restricted by hours, our preference is to operate from 6:00 in the morning to midnight. There are some, in fact, close proximity here, there are communities that do have limitations from 12:01 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Exact same community also has a limitation on 18 hours, and there's no actual qualification in their local statute on what those 18 hours are. Those store, that store in particular that I'm describing, we choose to operate that store, just like the other store from 6:00 in the morning to midnight. Some of those stores, like you said, it, it depends on the, I'm, I'm assuming some of the other mentalist stores that don't have the massive demographics that Steve described earlier, we're probably choosing to operate those stores on limited hours based on the population or our customer demand in the area, but it, it really is a crosswalk.
So, would you be willing to look into, you know, maybe you run a 24 hour operation, but you're only open for, say, that limited hours span between 6:00 a.m. to 12?
Well, we, and, and I'm sorry if I misspoke, Mr. Big, Mr. Chairman, we would, we will operate our employees inside the physical location 24 hours. The question always comes, will we open our doors or in the late 9 hours, it's limited typically to the food side of the, the building, that we have the one entry point that's open, the other main entry point, and those hours are always closed. I guess if you're asking me to choose between 24 hours with private security or 18 hours from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, tell me which preference you all have that the city council has, and I will get an answer.
Yeah, I think it might be a good idea, maybe look at both options.
The options are on the table, again, we're under, we're operating this evening under the recognition from staff that we would respond to crime as we needed to based on, again, the exact same thing that was spelled out this evening on staff and the commission. That's where we're at now. If those conditions have changed, let me know, I'll take it back to the home office and we'll make a determination for our customers.
Commissioner Bill, you have a question?
I would like for the commission to agree that, that we won't limit the hours from 6, 6 to midnight. That, that would be, that would be part of our recommendation. I can't see a problem on doing that in addition to, with additional security, but at the very least, we should limit the hours based, if nothing else, on what, what we feel is appropriate. And, and I know for a fact that in driving home at night, such as tonight after midnight, I go, I go by that intersection and I'll, I'll be the only one standing there at the traffic light waiting for it to change. But that's about the only time. But, and, and that being the case, I can't see that we should be keeping an attractive nuisance, shall we say, open from midnight to 6:00 in the morning, just waiting for something to happen and then, then try to take care of it.
Commissioner, think about that.
I would be in agreement with limited hours.
Mr. Chair, that was, again, let me first clarify this, I think you guys have done excellent job on responding back to the community about questions and answers. Now, one of the big ones was that we had quite a few people, residents, in close proximity that did not want it to be open to the public 24 hours. And you said you got to go back and talk to who did you need to talk to, but my recommendation was going to be approval with the condition that this store does not operate 24 hours.
Mr. Chairman, if you and the commission make an unanimous request that we agree this evening to limit our hours and operations from 6 o'clock in the morning to 12:01 a.m., so that the store will physically be closed from 12:01 a.m. to 6 o'clock in the morning, I can accept terms to that right now.
That, that is our recommendation.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to make it unanimous, I disagree, I don't think they should close. You know, the market's going to bear it, if there's no business, they're not going to open. I mean, it's, to me, it's not a big of a concern, so, not unanimous, but, you know, the majority of the people feel.
You learned that being the one no folks. It's okay, you can open.
Well, it's just my opinion, it doesn't bother me being open 24 hours.
Commissioner Bill, what's your take on?
I, I would agree with the limited hours only because the Meyer does exist and the Meyer is 24 hours, and I've driven by the Meyer, I've gone to the Meyer late and the population is, is not fully there. I think with the situation of this Walmart being in a more residential neighborhood bordering Southfield and 12 Mile, limited hours would probably work. A 24 hour format may work, but is it really necessary for the residents is what my question would be. So, I would be in agree with limited hours, and I too want to echo what Commissioner Culker said as far as appreciating you coming back at least and responding to the suggestions and concerns that we have.
Commissioner Leiner? I would also like to respond to my last comment, I think there might be a couple of options. You know, the limited hours from 6:00 a.m. to midnight is one, and then maybe 24 hours with additional security during that off time.
Through the, through the chair, my suggestion is that you make a firm recommendation as a majority, that there's nothing binding because it's a recommendation. They can go back to their people, this issue can be discussed at city council, and with all respect of everybody's different opinion, I think it would be better that we have a strong recommendation on one, one item or another, just like Mr. Spence and I tried to detail all the issues. And, and again, that's, that's why we have these public hearings. And we're not going to please everybody, but I think that's a legitimate concern, it'll solve a lot of issues, the noise, the lighting, all those things, and we're, we have ordinances in place. But I, I think it's a good compromise and a strong recommendation, I think it carries a lot of weight. The city council can ultimately decide how they want to, if they want to move forward and how they want to address that, but we're here to make those recommendations based on public input and our experience and good planning principles. I think that's well within reason of the commission to make that type of recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have one suggestion that I'd like to offer the body to consider before you make a motion on limiting hours. We would request that if you are going to do that, limited hours, that you do that for 364 of the 365 days. three hundred and sixty-four of the three hundred and sixty-five days in our calendar year. As you all know, we just came through the Black Friday holiday season, and the vast majority of major retail establishments have already taken, making the choice to move their sales beginning at 8:00 p.m. on Thanksgiving evening. So that one day of the year, we would request, if you're going to go down that route, that your recommendation include the exemption for that one and only day of the year. If the recommendation is, of course, to go to maintain 24 hours and it will still address the crime that's been addressed by some citizens here and private security during the nighttime hours, it's a better way for you to choose. We can, we can work with those parameters as well. But that would be the only exemption now with requests that you consider as you make this determination.
Okay. That sounds fair enough to me.
I'm not sure which day you're talking about. Thursday night, Thanksgiving night, or Friday night?
Mr. Chairman, correct. We would, we would choose to operate beginning Thursday evening for Thanksgiving evening and continue to operate those midnight to 6:00 a.m. hours on the following Friday morning. So the exemption would technically be for Friday from midnight to 6:00 a.m. That would be the only exemption we could have. And a lot of that is based frankly on stores that we do operate that have limited hours. There are concerns as the sale hours begin, particularly with safety issues for our customers that queue in lines outside of the physical location prior to the doors opening at 6:00 a.m. By operating the late night hours, this year in particular, we are able to stagger some of our sales. So we had initial sales that started at 8:00 p.m. We have electronics that went on sale at 10:00 p.m. We had other sales that began at 2:00 a.m. and then at 4:00 a.m. Stagger that out so that we can queue our customers physically inside the store location as opposed to standing out in the sweet rain that the company does this Black Friday.
I'm going to be a bit sleepy, sir.
That is a concern. I would be wanting to bring your attention to me, and I hope you take it into consideration before you make a recommendation.
Commissioner's deal with one day, 24 hours. Mr. Griffiths?
Yeah. And actually, you know, I wish it could be 24 hours a day, and I think with the change in the auto factories, not even two or three shifts a night, and people are, you know, out there overnight looking for places to stop and grab things and, you know, things are changing. So it's probably a problem, but I don't think it was passed.
Our program is 24 hours. If this, if this body is making a recommendation or again, the City Council would like to engage it, however we all would like.
I very don't think it was likely to be 24 hours, to be honest with you. But the recommendation one day, 24 hours, I think would be, I would be good with that. Mr. Bailey, would you?
I thought I was set. I need to move on to.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that all?
It's.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. Thank you. I noticed that what I received today is, shows two, the way for this being requested is two less than what's been told here for the past couple of weeks.
Right. I, Mr. Spence and I were reviewing these items. I asked him if he had included the parking credit for bike parking. He did not. And again, the way it's written, I have the discretion of waiving up to five percent. But based on the, and I do feel that our parking standards are excessive compared to other for this type of use. But I think that's more than reasonable just to give a two, two perky space credit for the amount of bike parking that's being proposed. So it's, it's only, it's less than one percent, I think, of the total.
Okay, so that's what they.
That's what it is. And, yeah, and the video was made prior to us finding that oversight.
The intensity of this use of this size facility on this corner with very limited traffic improvements at all is my, one of my major concerns. Because I really would like to see that, that corner redeveloped commercially or some type. But, but the intensity of it is what's got me so concerned. At a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, I just cannot possibly go along with that. If it were down into eighty thousand to, eighty to a hundred thousand square feet, the parking would be less and therefore the additional traffic would be less. And it would, it would definitely not solve the things that I'm looking at, but it would be less intense on that corner. And, and it doesn't seem to be any consideration for the intensity of it from the petition. This is what we want, and up or down. There's got to be some understanding of how intense the use is already without anything being on that corner. And then to imply that the traffic isn't so bad there just shows me how little you've actually traveled it.
Mr. Chairman, let me.
Or respond to that. If I could finish my statement last. Thank you. Because if you had to travel that every day and get from point A to point B, especially when you're, when you, you're only going a mile to get groceries or a mile to go see a dentist, and it's going to take you 30 minutes to drive that mile, you learn to appreciate just how bad the traffic already is. And to pretend that changing the traffic signals is going to solve the additional problem that you're adding to it is just really not being straightforward. And if you'd like to respond to that portion of it, I have some other things I want to talk about, but.
Want to respond?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a gross misrepresentation that we're standing before this body tonight suggesting to you that traffic at that intersection is not intensive. What we are here tonight presenting to you is everything that we have the power to control to mitigate our impact on that intersection. These fine people and commissioners have issues with traffic at that intersection, whether this site plan is approved or not approved. Those are things that need to be discussed with the City Council and particularly the Open County Road Commission. To suggest that we have come here with some blinders on, that we don't understand the intensity of traffic at the intersection is a gross mistake. We have done everything we can to not only mitigate our impact for our customers, but to offset as best we can our entry points to the property to alleviate as best as we can control the impact that our customers will have on that physical intersection. We're doing everything we have control to do. I hope you take that into consideration as you make your recommendation.
If I could add one, I heard Commissioner Bailey earlier, this kind of struck me, when you indicated you were sitting there at night and you had a red indication, you had no idea why. That's one of the problems. That's where modernization, you should not be sitting there and no traffic is coming through that intersection. You're sitting there on the red indication. It should be, there are problems. That intersection is not operating correctly as it exists today. And with the modernization of the signal, that, that is not, and should not be happening. It is fully, and it should be operating right now, but it isn't properly. It should be a fully actuated traffic signal. That means if you're sitting there, you're the only car, that video camera detects you, it automatically skips or cycles through the other phases and gives you a green indication and, you know, very quickly. It skips down to your minimum green time. So if you're, you're sitting there and you're having a red indication, there's nobody on the other legs of the intersection, that signal is not operating properly. So that is one thing, certainly modernizing these signals will accomplish that. That will not happen.
I can certainly appreciate that, particularly when I'm the only one sitting here.
Yes.
It's when I'm, when I've got fifty thousand other people with me is the problem I'm concerned about. I would hope to read two sentences that are in the posed motion. The site plan thus shows that a proper relationship exists between a major thoroughfare and any proposed pedestrian pathways, service road, driveways, and parking areas thus encouraging pedestrian and vehicular safety. It does not, to me, the relationship of getting into and out of that facility on Southfield Road is not a good relationship. Of course, it's not now, and it won't, it certainly won't be merely with changing some traffic signals. To continue.
Through the chair.
Oh.
Mr. Bailey, I don't mean getting around. I, I think from our perspective, there's no sidewalk right now on Southfield Road in that portion. So by having the sidewalk there, people are not walking in the road or walking down the boulevard. And there's also a sidewalk connection from the new sidewalk to the front of the store. So that will improve pedestrian vehicular safety and eliminate those potential conflicts. The fact that some of the driveway, existing driveways will be closed and limiting in and out at Edwards and Southfield and then at the one site where on 12 Mile, again, reduces the amount of potential conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. So that's why I, I feel that that statement is, is a fair and reasonable statement to me. You may or may not agree, but I just wanted to point that out, that right now there's no sidewalks in that portion of Southfield Road, and they will be added on.
If I had to continue, all the development features, including the principal building, corporate spaces, pedestrian pathways, service roads, driveways, and parking areas are so located and related so as to minimize the possibility of any adverse effects on adjacent properties. I was talking to some business people in, in close proximity to this site over the past couple of weeks. Four different business people told me, and they were not in competitive businesses to you, four different business people within easy walking distance of that site told me that if Walmart gets approved and goes in there, they will, they will be leaving, they will be selling out and leaving if they can. Not because of competition, of being run out, but because of the traffic that's already there and it's going to intensify so much more that their customers and their employees cannot get in, cannot get to working back. And so that, to me, that they know a lot more about it than I do because they're, they're in business there. They actually have to make money. All I have to do is go to work somewhere and go to bed. But to say that the relationship between adjacent properties is good, it's just, it's just really misleading. I'm sorry. It really is.
Okay, y'all there, Mr. May?
The number fourteen of the conditions, the petitioner is to implement the recommendations of the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. What are those recommendations for this particular site? I know they're general recommendations.
Yeah, they are general recommendations. They basically deal with locked on doors, foot candles, lighting within the parking lots or entrance to their doors. They are standard conditions that the Crime Prevention Bureau.
In other words, the Crime Prevention Bureau has not looked at this site to, to determine if any additional security needs to be there? Over and above what is standard?
No, they have said standard conditions. But through the chair, if I may, again, as Mr. Spence has stated, light foot candles and crime prevention through environmental design techniques, they look at those things. So for example, where the proposed wrought iron fence and the brick, brick piers are, that we don't have a solid screen higher than thirty inches that prohibits people seeing in and out of the parking lot so that, you know, people feel comfortable and safe. I did, as I stated earlier, I did specifically speak to the Chief of Police, Eric Hawkins, and asked him, is in his opinion, would there be any additional security or policing issues that he would have to implement? And he said, indicated to me that no, not at this time, based on their experience with others similar. Obviously, they will work very closely with Walmart and their asset protection people to develop any specific responses to, to issues that may arise. But at this time, based on his knowledge of the site, based on his team's review of the site, they feel comfortable that we've adequately addressed those issues.
I apologize to the gentleman with the suit on there, but I keep forgetting your name, but if you would try to address this one for me. Both at a previous, I think, our last study session and again tonight, I think I heard you say both times that there would be security cameras in the parking lot. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I believe the site plan calls for cameras inside the actual parking lot. In addition to those cameras that we would have inside this physical store.
Okay. I did not see that on the site plan that I have.
Yes, the, the exact location isn't determined, but this site will have parking lot security camera, cameras, yes. And that will be, the exact location would be more finalized or shown during, you know, the engineering review of the plan, but it will be, cameras will be in the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. I do want to make one other quick statement. I think Mrs. Seymour tried to clarify as people were leaving during the break a while ago, but several people got up and spoke to the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes that would be brought in. And Mrs. Seymour did point out that only a hundred, approximately a hundred thousand of that would actually come to the city of Southfield. The rest of it would go to the school district and to the county and busing and things like that, the other taxing entities that feed off of, the taxes that are, that you would be paying. And I just wanted to make that somewhat clear and maybe even get it on the record. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bailey and Councilman Seymour are exactly correct. We, those are the tax numbers that we have stated publicly. Real property taxes for this site are estimated to be about three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of new revenue. And there is an existing formula that divides that revenue up with roughly one-third of that revenue coming to the city for your general fund deliberations by your City Council members.
That's all I have this time.
Okay.
Commissioner Bailey? I'd just like to make a comment in regards to traffic, which we all know is very many comments. It's a big concern, and I'm sure that all those comments were expressed when Home Depot and Target came to town and how people are dealing with it. It becomes a daily thing that, you know, you either deal with or avoid or figure out how to work around. In respect to this site, I think I can appreciate all the hard work that you did in planning this out. You know, the layout basically gives you on this, on this corner, it eliminates, I think it was what, five other curb cuts? So this, and basically what it does is pushes the curb cuts to the furthest extent of either corner, which gives you pretty much the best access that you could even, that you could ever hope for on the site, which will also hopefully.
which will also hopefully eliminate, mitigate traffic concerns that we're all talking, that we're talking about. And I think that if this were in fact, you know, some other development, if there were, you know, if it was a series of strip centers and outlet parcels, you know, and there were all these other, where all these existing curb cuts are, which probably is why, or would make it, I think, even a far worse condition than what I think is provided, which I think is a pretty great solution.
Commissioner Bell.
Thank you. Something I just remembered that someone brought up tonight, that the more I thought about it, the much better idea it seems to me. Given the traffic flow on 12 Mile Road and the design of the intersection on 12 Mile Road adjacent to the funeral home, shared by the funeral home actually, and its proximity to God Street, and the fact that going, you can't make a left-hand turn, an easterly turn coming out of Walmart on to 12 Mile, you have to go west. However, if you cut through the parking lot and go to God Street, you can go east or west. Somebody suggested it earlier, I heard it somewhere tonight anyway, of putting a traffic light at God Street. Is that not something that should be at least looked at, given the traffic situation that already exists?
Again, that's under the jurisdiction of Road Commission of Oakland County. And ultimately, they have to provide the permits for the curb cuts. And they, at that time, they look at all those issues. And if that, they felt that that was a requirement to having access to 12 Mile Road, they could indeed require that intersection. But as far as the traffic impact study and our preliminary conversations with Road Commissioner Oakland County, I don't see that as being warranted at this time. So, it certainly is an issue that we could further explore. But I, again, I think the main concerns are the intersections of 12 Mile and Southfield and Edwards and Southfield, and their proposal is consistent with what Road Commissioner Oakland County would recommend.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to get it on the record. Okay. Any other comments?
Take a way to wrap it up. Flatter, anything else? We're going to close up this Portland meeting. We're going to move to...
Make a recommendation.
Mr. Chair. I recommend SC 1291 being accepted with the conditions as long as they do not operate 24 hours. And they are only sale four hours. I guess we have the word that's right, two. They open one?
No, required. They're allowed.
Yeah, allowed. That's all.
If I could help, that they only be open from 6:00 AM to midnight 364 days a year, with the exception of the Friday after Thanksgiving, where they would be allowed to be open from midnight to midnight. I think that sums it up as a recommendation. And hopefully, that's in addition to the conditions that we already provided.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cole Pepper, supported by Commissioner Leitner. Can we have a roll call, both ways, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Bell?
No.
Mr. Cole Pepper?
Yes.
Mr. Diller?
Yes, as would be amendment covered, addition we added.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes, or...
And Chairman Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Leitner?
Yes.
Okay, we have five to one, yes, SC 1281 passing the state. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming up. Thank you.
One last item of business to take care of.
Okay, we have one item that we'll just take care of here. We have our rule of minutes to the chair.
I feel that minutes date of September 19th, October 3rd, and October 10th.
The motion supports, support my view. I would favor, I, that goes to the rule of minutes, press the debate. Where's the other meeting here? Jeff, do you have any, Mr. Williams?
Just that we do have some items for your December meeting. So, you do have a study meeting next week, which we'll discuss in the overlay development district. Again, to the chair, meeting next Wednesday at 6:30, we will be discussing the overlay development district.
Okay, that's it. Do you have anything else for the chair? Okay, meeting adjourned.